All right, today is November 1st, 2022 of our regular council meeting calling to order. Notice to the public that the council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember House, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember McCarthy, our mission statement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, and I'll be reading our land acknowledgement this evening. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home. We're now down to agenda item number four. Four A is the consideration and approval of minutes from the agendized dates. Go for it.
I move that we approve the minutes as listed in the packet.
I second that.
No changes.
Seconded by myself. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any post? That carries unanimously. We're now down to public participation, agenda number five, and I do have some cards here, and we will start with Trace Ward, who is online.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't believe he's been able to join quite yet, so maybe we can add him to the latter part.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I'll put him to the back of the block here. Stephen Per.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor.
I don't think that's on, yeah, if you want to press that button. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, as you know, I've been coming here for over two months, asking, pleading for you to fund fixing the bubbler, and then adopt your own option two. And I always come back and I hear, well, funding's a problem, Steve. I pointed out where there were some funding issues, there's a funding available to you in your own budget. And last week, the Coconino County Flood Control District got a little creative, maybe showed you a path forward. They're taking a loan out from another part of the county for 11.5 million, they're paying it back over a number of years. And they're doing that so they can help protect whatever they can for the East residents. So we're asking you, yes, we have the basins that take care of half the problem, according to Ed, your stormwater manager, and we're asking you to move forward on option two. We went forward over a week ago, just gave you a petition to adopt two, to fund it with your money, and to get it done by next monsoon season. And according to your schedule of meetings, you're not going to put it on your schedule like you have an option to do for 30 days. You can table it, which it looks like you're going to table it, which is kind of sad, 154 people in this community, 97% of the people who were asked to back that petition backed it without blinking an eye. So they're not going to get their day in court, so to speak. So let me go back to your own annual financial plan, page 391, if you would, for those listening at home. Item number five, reserve for future improvements, $21 million to spend, you're taking debt out on us, to spend for future improvements. If that covert on option two isn't a future improvement, I don't know what is. It was noted it was 5.3. Yesterday, according to your PR person, it's up to $6 million. Fine, bring it out, let's talk about it. We've been talking about the stormwater fee increase a little bit in the last two months. Why don't we talk about this? We got $21 million you're going to sit in the bank, you're taking out in debt this year for future reserve performance, your own financial plan. Pick it up. Solve the problem. For those of you who don't know what the problem is, water coming off the Schultz Creek now could come at the two inches in 45 minutes at 680 cubic feet a second. The current covert does less than 100 cubic feet a second. The new covert that you proposed to build, you proposed, your engineers, over 900 cubic feet a second. It sounds like it goes a long way to solve the problem. I ask you again to use your right and your, our money to protect our residents. I'm not doing it, not looking for money from me or anybody else. We're protected now, we spent our money, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Terry Medexa.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Terry Medexa, and I'm here tonight with Haley Reynolds from the PROS team, she's online, and we're here for two reasons. The first is we would like to personally invite you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and city leadership, to join us as we kick off the holiday season with our Winter Wonderland event. The event is scheduled for Saturday, December 3rd, beginning at 3:00 PM. As some have experienced, and others will for the first time, this event has become a signature event with more than 7,000 visitors and residents experiencing the magic of what has become Arizona's Winter Wonderland. An invitation with more details will be sent to you shortly, but we want to take a minute and set the stage for you to envision. We have crafts, activities, a hot cocoa bar, a smores station, cookie decorating, caroling, it's an all-ages and free event that results in creating lasting memories. I also want to take an opportunity to talk about the partnership in place that helps make this event the success that it has become. The DBA works hand-in-hand with Haley and the entire PROS team on every detail to pull an event of this scale together. We also have marketing expertise from the Discover Flagstaff team to help broaden our reach. This event is a great example of what we can accomplish when we support one another. So, mark your calendars, and we look forward to seeing you all on December 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Is Trace with us online now?
Mayor, Trace got held up in another event, and so he will provide comments next week. We apologize.
No problem, all right. Right along, we are down to agenda item number six, our Proclamations and Recognitions, and I would invite Council down to the front here to begin with Nation's Finest 50th Anniversary. And if Michael O'Donnell would like to come down with us, that would be wonderful. Nation's Finest celebrates the 50th Anniversary throughout the year of 2022, providing housing, health, and employment services to veterans and their families since 1972. They have served more than 150,000 veterans, 150,000, and counting, having spent $275 million on direct services to veterans in need. The agency directly supported Operation Baby Lift, the mass evacuation of orphaned children from South Vietnam, saving more than 3,300 infants. The Carter and Reagan administrations used their methods of veteran support as a model across the United States to establish many of their programs still active today. They were a leading agency in the legislative fight for exposure to Agent Orange to be recognized in veterans' benefit assessments, establishing precedent for the recent decisions regarding burn pits in the Middle East. And veterans of all eras and branches of service can access services at Nation's Finest. Nation's Finest Flagstaff has been serving Flagstaff and surrounding areas for nine years. The veteran-focused nonprofit provides case management, healthcare navigation, and financial assistance to low-income, disabled, and homeless veterans in the area. As an agency overall, they serve more than 7,000 veterans per year. Nation's Finest Flagstaff has operated a food pantry for veterans in need and maintains a supply of hygiene and housekeeping supplies for homeless and at-risk-of homelessness veteran families. Nation's Finest will serve 180 homeless and at-risk-of-homeless veterans with deposits, rent, emergency housing, and items to promote general housing stability this year. On November 6th, 2022, Nation's Finest celebrates Founder's Day, marking the beginning of a mission that continues today 50 years later. Nation's Finest has contributed to the strength of the veteran community by providing services for the last 50 years, and remains committed to continuing this mission, guiding veterans home, then, now, and always. Therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim November 6th as Nation's Finest Founder's Day. Thank you all. If you'd like to say a few words. Thank you, Mayor Deasy, and thank you, Flagstaff City Council, for the support you've given to our efforts and the efforts of our agencies in general and Flagstaff that serve the homelessness community. And I'd like to also give a special thanks to the Fire Department and the Police Department for the support they have given us in helping our homeless veterans here in Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it is also Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month in November, and would like to invite Jackie Goodwin. Oh, she's online here, okay. Well, Jackie, if you'd like to say a few words after the proclamation, you're more than welcome to. The City of Flagstaff recognizes the importance of Alzheimer's and related dementia care. And Alzheimer's and related dementias have a significant impact on the health and well-being of our residents. More than 150,000 Arizonans live with Alzheimer's, which is the fourth-leading cause of death in the state. More than 257,000 Arizonans provide 501,000 hours of unpaid care to their loved ones living with dementia. Arizonans are actively engaged in educating about the disease, advocating for a proper continuum of care, and improving the training and care of patients with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. And the City of Flagstaff supports an Arizona without Alzheimer's, addressing the public health crises. Therefore, I, Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City Flagstaff Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as Alzheimer's and Caregivers Month in this community, encourage all our residents to learn about Alzheimer's, related dementias, and patient care. And I will just say, this one personally is a big one for me, is my grandfather passed away in 93 after dealing with dementia for four years and us all being at home taking care of him, so I really appreciate all the hard work on this. So Jackie, if you'd like to chime in.
Thank you so much, and I'm so sorry to hear about your loss. This is something that's very personal to me, and I'm very grateful to the Mayor and City Council that Flagstaff is honoring those impacted by Alzheimer's and recognizing caregivers. So many people in our state are facing Alzheimer's, and this proclamation will help to raise awareness and support for them. I would like to encourage everyone, if you know someone who is living with Alzheimer's or someone who's a caregiver, please reach out to them, maybe offer your support and let them know how much you care. I know from personal experience how much it meant to me when someone would reach out to me, letting them know that they care about me, about my mother, and my family. So, thank you again so much for all your support.
Thank you so much, Jackie. This month is also Native American Heritage Month, and I would like Commissioner Weatherby and Rose Toville, if you'd like to come join us. The United States of America was founded on the cognizance that all of us are created equal and deserve equal treatment, equal dignity, and equal opportunity. However, the promise of our nation has been denied to indigenous people who have lived on this land since time immemorial. Despite a painful history made clear by unjust federal policies of assimilation and termination, indigenous peoples have preserved and claimed resiliency. During this month, the City of Flagstaff celebrates the myriad of contributions of indigenous peoples past and present, honor the influence they have had on the advancement of our community and nation, and recommit ourselves to upholding trust and responsibilities, strengthening our relationships, and advancing native self-determination. Approximately 12% of the citizens in the City of Flagstaff are members of indigenous nations and include the 14 local nations who hold this land and bordering mountains as sacred. In addition, Northern Arizona University serves students who are representative of over 100 indigenous nations. We also need to take time to honor indigenous veterans and service members who selflessly continue to serve in our military, including the brave Native American code talkers in World War I and World War II. For over two centuries, Native Americans have defended our country during every major conflict and continue to serve at a higher rate than any other ethnic group in the nation because their roots are deeply entrenched in this land. Flagstaff City Council established the Indigenous Commission to advise the City Council on issues and methods in promoting diversity, equity, and inclusive planning with indigenous perspective within the City of Flagstaff. And the Indigenous Commission supports the designation of the month of November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month in unison with all local, indigenous, state, and national observances. Now therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month, and encourage our community to learn about and appreciate the history, heritage, and contributions of Native Americans as indigenous peoples of this great land. Thank you. Commissioner Weatherby or Rose.
Yeah, eh, she eh, tet nesatni nishle, adona hithli, chikasaa chahto, missibi dant nde kayigi, boshischin, ta chinidashache, adona hithli, Cherokee Louisiana dant nde kayigi, de shanala, kiara weatherisbiyana shesh, she eh, kitlana dant no shah. I share my introduction with you in the nepazod because up until 1990, our communities were prohibited from speaking our languages, and up until 1978, we were prohibited from practicing our cultural traditions, knowledge, songs. And so I want to say, ahyeha, askwali, thank you, Mayor, City Council, for the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, and also share with you good relatives that we will be having events at Northern Arizona University, as well as with the Coconino County Indigenous Advisory Board. I think I might have misspoke on that, but one of those is actually going to be on November 28th, where I'll be talking about the impact or influence of federal boarding schools on our indigenous relatives, so I hope you all join us. Ahyeha.
Did you want to speak, Rose? We are down to agenda item number seven, this is our Council Liaison Reports, and I'll start with Councilmember House. Are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Open Spaces Commission did not meet in October, we are opting instead to combine the October and November meeting, so we'll be meeting sometime early this month. And the Housing Commission had a great review of housing policies, programs, and the beginning stages of implementing the 10-year housing plan this past Thursday. So that was a lot of good information and educating especially the new commissioners on some of those different policies and programs, and we look forward to diving into some of those implementation plans as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of.
I hear you echo. Councilmember Shimonie, you are muted.
Councilmember Shimonie, you're on mute right now. Councilmember Shimonie? You are muted currently. Councilmember Shimonie? He's still gone. Anybody know lip reading in the room? We could use some help. Councilmember Shimonie? Hold.
Oh, I think I was muted, wasn't I?
Yep. So if you want to start from the beginning, feel free.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm gonna just adjust my audio settings. Okay, I think I'm good. Okay, I was just saying that I was not able to attend the Tac Mountain Line and Board Meeting last week, but yourself, Mayor, and Vice Mayor were, and others were, and so I, Vice Mayor, speak to some of those points, but I wanted to say that Mountain Line is embarking on several key policy discussions along with our community partners. The goal is to ensure transit is recognized and prioritized in city code as part of the big shift in climate action plans. Currently, transit is discussed in plans but not required in code. So, so that's my update in regards to Mountain Line. I wanted to mention that I had a real nice meeting with Habitat and NIH last week, and there's already a parcel that's being identified to be worked with Habitat, and we can talk about that later. The Indigenous Commission, as was mentioned a moment ago, is meeting this Wednesday, tomorrow at noon, and I'm looking forward to the great agenda that we have and the discussion that we'll have. Transportation Commission meets on Wednesday at 4:00 PM, and then Bike Advisory Committee meets on Thursday at 4:30 PM. So that's my update, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I was able to attend the Mountain Line Tac Meeting, and we are working on finishing up the five-year Transit Plan Flagstaff in Motion. The plan will help form funding questions to be considered for the 2024 ballot. Service scenarios might include increased frequency, later-night service, service to NIH in the airport, and consideration of services outside of the city. It was a great meeting. And I also attended the BPAC Budget Retreat last Friday, and it was an all-day, eight-hour meeting. A lot was discussed, and more to come on the projects that we're deciding to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Since the Mountain Line was already covered, I'll just add, as part of the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living, we did discuss last Tuesday regarding sidewalks in the community, making sure they're more accessible, identifying those that are particularly difficult for others to be able to access and utilize, so that evaluation is underway, so that way recommendations can be made to the city, and we can do better on making sure wheelchair access and those with difficulty walking can utilize those public spaces to the full ability. So, I will move on to Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll just mention that on Friday, I, with several other council members, got to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers and to discuss the Rear-the-Flag Flood Control Project, and I just want to thank the Army Corps publicly for all the recent progress we've been making on that. Things are moving ahead, and good meeting, they had a new engineering manager, and he hadn't seen the project, so we did a tour of a lot of the areas that have been completed and things that need to be completed. I'll briefly mention that on Thursday, the FMPO, which is Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization, otherwise known as MetroPlan, will be having their monthly meeting, and the Bike Commission will be meeting on Thursday also, I believe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Aslan?
Nothing to report right now.
Thank you, and Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I missed the Tourism Commission last week because it coincided with a council's executive session, but kudo to our Discover Flagstaff team and our Economic Vitality Team for very successful and much-attended annual stakeholders and partners meeting held two weeks ago. Couple of announcements here, tomorrow, I mean, this is wearing my MetroPlan and Rural Transportation Advocacy Council hat, tomorrow there is, the ADOT is hosting an EV Plan Outreach, the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program, NEVI. Tomorrow at 5:00 to 7:00 at the Aquaplex, the meetings are part of a series of public engagements effort throughout the state to share details of the initial plan implementation and seek public input on which additional highways throughout the state should be added to the ADOT EV network. The meetings will be in open-house format without a formal presentation, a recorded presentation with study details will be shown throughout the meeting, and study team members will be on hand to provide information and answer questions. The goal of the federal NEVI program is to encourage adoption of electric vehicles by improving the accessibility, reliability, and equity of clean transportation options. So for more information about the EV Plan and additional ways to provide input, including an online survey, which is still open, visit azdot.gov/evplan. On November 18, I believe, that's a 18, that's a Friday, I will be speaking in front of the State Transportation Board, encouraging the State Transportation Leadership and ADOT to partner with the City of Flagstaff in funding, prioritizing funding for the 180 flood mitigation, specifically in building the covert soon. Also, I attended a Rural Transportation Advocacy Council Board Meeting last week, and the wheels are set in motion for 11, for all the 11 Metropolitan Planning Organization and councils of government representing rural Arizona, from Fidonia to Yuma, to put together a proposal for $300 million, which will be submitted to the incoming state legislature at the beginning of the year. This $300 million, if approved by the state legislator as a one-time direct funding using state budget, the surplus budget, MetroPlan Greater Flagstaff will receive 15.6 million. So we will be discussing this at the MetroPlan level in the future and identify the project that will be funded through the, by the 15.6 million. Last year, we had loan tree overpasses as a priority, and the request was for 50 million, and if approved, the MetroPlan would have received the 2.6 million. So that, now we're looking at 300 million requests, and this is a collective. And this is a collective of all organizations, Metropolitan Planning Organization and councils of government, with the mission to bring state and federal dollars to our local rural transportation projects. Thank you.
That's great news. Thank you, Councilmembers Salas. With that, we are down to agenda item 8A. This is the consideration of appointments for the Transportation Commission. And beginning with is Councilmember Shimonie's.
All right, let me try to do this without messing it up. I'd like to make an appointment. First, I want to thank all the applicants. This is such an important commission, and I so appreciate the great pool of applicants we have to choose from. Without further ado, I'd like to make an appointment of Matthew Akoff to a term ending in July 2025. And that's all.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is my turn, and I would like to appoint Kate Morley for the appointment to a term for a NAHTA representative seat expiring November 2025.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Next is Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just might mention that I'm the liaison councilperson to the Transportation Commission, and all of the applicants were excellent, and I just want to thank all of them. I would like to make one appointment for a term expiring in July of 2023 for Erica Maza.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Next is Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to appoint Justin DiNardi to a term for an FUSD representative seat expiring November 2025.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. We are now down to agenda item 8B. This is the Commission on Diversity Awareness Appointments. And just pulling up the list here of who's appointing. And we will begin with Councilmember Shimonie again.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and appoint Carolyn Kidd to a position, a term expiring September 2025.
I second. Oh, go for it.
I'll second. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember House. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Next is Councilmember Aslan.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to appoint Sarah Jarvis. And if you could remind me what's available on the year.
There's a 2020, one 2023 appointment, and then two appointments for 2025 available right now.
Um, yeah, let's go with the 2025 one, if you're all amenable to it. Thank you.
You guys second that?
I'll second.
Beat ya. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make one appointment for a term expiring September 2025 for Bethany Kemp.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. And last but not least, Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to nominate Kaiden Akers-Montana for a term expiring September 2023.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Moving right along. We are down to agenda item nine. This is our liquor license public hearing. And this is the consideration action on liquor license application for Andrea Lekwitz on GoPuff 2001 East Huntington Drive, Suite 1, Series 10 Beer &amp; Wine Store, new license. I am hereby opening the public hearing, and if we have any staff presentation or words on this?
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. I'm Sergeant Staff Flagstaff PD. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about this application. There were not any derogatory remarks noted through that, through this.
Thank you. And did Andrea Lekwitz request any public participation or just here for questions?
Mayor, we have a representative from Andrea Lekwitz's law firm, Amy Schworf, online. She has not requested to speak, but she is here to answer any questions.
Okay, sounds good. Counsel, do we have any questions to staff of the applicant? Councilmember McCarthy?
Two items. One is, I note that on the packet, the location is incorrect. It's off by one street. Minor. I don't think that'll affect my vote anyway, but I just thought I'd mention that. The other thing I thought is, my understanding is that in retail establishments that sell liquor, that they have to portray a warning to women that might be pregnant, that it can be a health issue to consume alcohol.
Counsel, do we have any questions to staff of that?
Sounds like we're getting the 30-second delay plan here.
Anyway, I'll continue. So when we buy liquor in a store, there's a warning for pregnant women that they should be careful about drinking alcohol. Now, GoPuff, of course, delivers to people's homes. So I would suggest that it be a requirement that they deliver a handwritten notice to people that are buying at their home, you know, through this delivery service, of the same warning that they would see if they were in a store. Other than that, I don't have any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. With that, any further questions or comments from counsel before we close and move on to vote? Not seeing this time, I'm closing the public hearing and moved forward the application of the state with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy?
I'd like to make an amendment. And the amendment would be that the pregnancy warning be included as part of the recommendation to the state liquor board, so that they can consider that idea. That's my motion, my amendment.
City Attorney of, yeah, just...
Yeah, the amendment would require a second, and then there would be a vote on the motion and amendment together.
Actually, shouldn't the vote be on the amendment separately and then on the basic motion?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that is correct.
See?
It'd be on the amendment to see if it's part of the motion, then the motion...
Can I be the assistant attorney for the week?
Absolutely. Too bad.
So the question is, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Council House, and I just want to clarify that that would be based on what the state approves and wants to do. That's not our prerogative as a city to dictate such a thing.
Correct, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, the amendment is to add this warning. It's simply a recommendation that the state include that. They don't have to, so...
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
And I realize that the ultimate decision is up to the state board. We're just making a recommendation.
Great. Yep, just wanted to clarify that for everyone. We do have a second by Councilmember House. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious to give the applicant a chance to weigh in on this. I'm just curious as to their thoughts about the recommendation.
Representative of Ms. Lekwitz, online?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Amy Schworf, we are making you a presenter right now. If you could please turn on your camera and your microphone. And Ms. Schworf, you are ready to go ahead.
And while we're working on the...
Amy, could you indicate in the chat if you were able to unmute yourself?
If you could provide some clarification, City Attorney, now that the public hearing has closed...
Yes, Mayor.
Rather than have an applicant now, it's still okay to be...
That's correct.
If you could please turn on your camera and your microphone? Can you hear me?
Yes, Amy, could you please turn off the streaming that you have on and just be on this meeting?
And Ms. Schworf, you are ready to go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Amy, could you indicate in the chat if you were able to unmute yourself?
If you could provide some clarification, City Attorney, now that the public hearing has closed...
Yes.
Déjà vu.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, Amy, could you please turn off the streaming that you have on and just be on this meeting?
And Ms. Schworf, you are ready to go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Oh, can you hear me now? Amy, could you indicate in the chat if you were able to unmute yourself?
May I take back my question?
All right. Question withdrawn. Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. We do have a motion on the table, seconded by Councilmember House.
On the amendment, correct.
On the amendment. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. All right. We are down to...
Mayor, now we need the motion, or the vote on the original motion that you made forward to the state with the recommendation for approval.
All right. I motioned to forward the application to the state for approval.
It's already been moved and seconded. We just need to call for the vote. That's all.
All right, let's vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now we're moving right along. All right, down to our consent items. I know there's a couple that will want to pull out here. But I would like to approve, just making sure we're checking here the correct ones. I think Councilmember Shimonie has one he wants to pull out. All right. Then I would like to approve all of the consent items, aside from 10B, which we have public comment on, which is the consideration approval of letter of support Save Oak Flats. But I moved to approve consent items A and then C through H. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Mayor, could I make a quick clarification? I apologize. I wanted to note that item 10F has been pulled from the agenda by staff, so that would not be included in that motion.
Right. Thank you. Yes, 10F, which is the Cooperative Purchase Contract with 72 Hours LLC National Auto Fleet Group with purchase of one new used Ford Expedition, the amount of, all of that has been removed from the agenda before the, before our council meeting. So, thank you. But we do have a couple speaker requests on agenda item 10B regarding the letter for Save Oak Flats. So I would like to call Boss Pike to the podium.
[speaking Spanish] Hi, my name is Bossy Pike. I'm a student at Northern Arizona University, and my clan is in St. Naya, and my band is Bedonkehay. I am Cherakal Apache, enrolled into the St. Carlos Apache Tribe. So I'm here for Oak Flat, and I'm a part of the member of Apache Stronghold, which helps lead the fight for this Oak Flat. And, thank you. And I'm just very grateful that the City of Flagstaff has at least put this on their agenda and hopefully approve on it. And I just want to thank you for your support and help with Oak Flat. And this fight has not been very easy. My grandpa has been fighting for this for more than 10 decades, Apache Stronghold, and people across the country who help support this fight. And this fight is a, is a difficult one, and it's a hard one, and we've been battling this for a very long time. And knowing that the City of Flagstaff wants to help, that, that means so much from us and from the Apache Stronghold members, I just want to say thank you. And I want to say thank you to Paul, who's been here speaking on Oak Flat, from what I understand. And, yeah, and I'm just hoping that since you guys are showing unity with Oak Flat, that soon you can show unity with the Sacred Mountains, San Francisco Peaks, with Snowball. Thank you. I hear you.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Paul Harrell?
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council members, staff. Yeah, I'm just so grateful for you doing this for, you know, this letter to support and save Sacred Oak Flat. It's personal to me. I mentioned before, as my grandfather, Angel Otto, died at the age of 48 from black lung. My dad, he worked 29 and a half years in the mill, raising his own siblings after his died dad, after his dad died at 21. When he was 21, he started raising his own siblings. So it's like, he's had a rough life, and he passed away a couple of years ago. But my dad, you know, he, he knew, along with other retired miners, that this was a bad deal. You know, they saw that this is another foreign mining corporation, you know, to deplete our precious resources, you know, all the natural resources, and just mostly profit. Well, you know, robots are going to be doing a destructive blockade mining method that's, you know, just not natural, because we usually use backfill and didn't, didn't do that kind of destruction to subside all the land and use so much water, especially in the middle of a mega drought. So it's, when you see the bigger picture of things, it's just so corrupt and evil. To this, to me, this is like good against evil. That mine is like death to me and the people around there because of all the toxic mess it's always left behind. The, you know, the smelter that was there, the toxic tailings, we lived by them. It's just heavy metals in there. We couldn't even breathe, the smelter. It was across our school, it burned our lungs. It was just, I have relatives died of cancer, friends dying of cancer now, autoimmune problems. Just, you can't imagine. It's all documented, but this is real. And, you know, people my age are dying, you know, of this right now. So it's like, they're dying too young. And this is something that needs to be addressed, this corruption, the state, you know, we're one of the biggest corrupted states in the Union. But Jesus, it's like, we got to get rid of it. You know, this election, pray to God, people see the facts and let their conscience be their guide, because this is a big, important election. And you want, I want my politicians in this state and around the country to honor their oaths just as much as the veterans honor their oaths, you know, to do the right thing. So I just want everyone to do the right thing this particular time and pray for Oak Flat. You know, it's, we really want your prayers, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and I really appreciate your advocacy and bringing this information to council that brought this letter here today. With that, I move to approve the letter of support for Save Oak Flats.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Shimonie?
Can I add a comment?
Oh, yeah. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the council and staff that worked on this. I want to thank Paul and those who are in support of this. I did get that, I did get a chance to go down to Oak Flat years ago, and I was there with Jane Sanders, Bernie's wife, and maybe you were there. I think Vanessa was there, and it was, it was wonderful. So I heard that you came up here for school and that you're here at NAU, so welcome. Glad you're in our community. And, you know, we can't do much as the City of Flagstaff, but this is the least we can do, and I'm grateful that we're doing it. So thank you, council, for supporting this, and thank you to the community who brought this forward, especially Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously, thank you. We are now down to our public hearing items, agenda item 11, and this is the consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2022-28, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code, Title 10 Flagstaff Zoning Code, Section 10-90.40.030, Rural Flood Plane Map, to change the map designation of approximately 7.76 acres of real property from rural floodplain to urban floodplain on eight parcels of land, located generally between West Forest Avenue and North San Francisco Street, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Ms. Antol.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, Tiffany Antol, zoning code manager, and today I am here to present a zoning code text amendment to amend the rural floodplain map as just described. So this started as a property owner initiated request, and specifically, it was for parcel number 10128005H, which is a 3.35 acre parcel. After reviewing the application, staff suggests that if the rural floodplain is modified as requested for the subject property, that the remaining parcels designated as rural floodplain also be modified, and includes the seven remainder parcels, and of course, I'll show you a map here real soon, so you'll understand why. Staff did notice this request for all of the parcels, and it is council's decision to choose the one or all affiliated with this text amendment. So just talking about what the rural floodplain is, we have a resource protection overlay as part of the zoning code, and the subject property, as well as the others surrounding it, are located within that resource protection overlay, which identifies floodplanes, both urban and rural, as the highest priority resource to be protected on a site. The zoning code also includes specific provisions for forest and slope resources that can be disturbed on a site as well within the resource protection overlay. But there are very specific parameters built in for both slope and tree resources, but there are no specific preservation rates provided for either the urban or the rural floodplanes, except these two very specific descriptions. So this is the first, this is an urban floodplain, and I would have you know that this urban and rural are very distinctive terms to the City of Flagstaff, these are not FEMA designated terms, this is something very specific to our own zoning code, and there are other jurisdictions who do not have these categories. So urban floodplanes are all watercourses and associated floodplanes, not defined as rural floodplanes. Urban floodplanes are typically located in urbanized areas and have typically been altered from their natural state by channelization. Urban floodplanes may be altered to address conveyance and erosion concerns, provided that all necessary requirements of the city's stormwater regulations as administered by the stormwater manager are addressed. However, certain urban floodplanes that have characteristics conducive to water quality, wildlife habitat, and stream ecology should be preserved. Proposals for any disturbance of these watercourses shall be reviewed by the stormwater manager and must address these attributes and provide for mitigation if necessary. Undergrounding of urban floodplanes is strongly discouraged, and a justification must be provided prior to any approval of undergrounding. So here's the definition of rural floodplain. Rural floodplanes are natural, undisturbed, open spaces that are unsuitable for development purposes due to periodic flood inundation, and the need to preserve the stream corridor for beneficial uses such as the preservation of important ecological resources. Rural floodplanes are delineated by the floodplain, rural floodplain map, which is proposed to be amended here tonight, and defined as areas of delineated 100-year floodplain that cannot be disturbed or developed except for roadway and utility crossings. Rural floodplanes cannot be altered through a floodplain map amendment or revision, and must remain undisturbed. The extension of rural floodplanes beyond the limits of the delineated floodplain, both upstream and laterally, may be required based on more current or extended floodplain studies, master plan documents or other studies or documents related to hydrology, hydraulic stream, stream geomorphology, wildlife habitat, or wildlife concerns. It's not the case in this particular instance, in this case, the rural floodplain matches the FEMA delineated floodplain. So here is the current rural floodplain map, and you can just see at the top, as across north of forest, there's a little bit of blue, sort of the continuation of the floodplain up here that's blue, this is the urban floodplain. This section of the floodplain is rural, and then as you cross turquoise, it goes back to being urban. So this is the only area, this is why staff suggested it doesn't make sense to pull one particular parcel, because the description is about this entire channel from forest all the way down to the roundabout, it doesn't make sense to pull one parcel individually out of the rural floodplain, because that channel in and of itself should be considered as a whole. This is also the current FEMA floodplain map. There are a lot of terms in regards to floodplain, and I often bemuddle them up myself, so I'll try to be really clear about what I mean by floodway, or floodplain, is the area that's delineated in blue, the area that's hatched on this map is the floodway, floodway is the area of highest hazard. In terms of development, development is extremely limited within a floodway, again, that is the area that is hatched on this map. The area that is blue outside of the hatching, because you can see for most part, on the northern end of this, the channel, the floodplain and the floodway are exactly the same. As you travel further south, including the parcel that initiated this request, the floodplain, or the flood fringe, which is the area that's in the floodplain but outside of the floodway, expands much further outside, and grows quite larger, and takes up a significant portion of that particular parcel. So just to let you know, there's floodway, again, whether it's urban or rural, floodway is already a very heavily restricted area of development. The flood fringe is where development can occur if that development meets the requirements of the stormwater manager and the stormwater regulations.
Yeah.
Before you go away from that, Tiffany, could you point out the parcels on which the YMCA is and where the hospice is?
Sure, and I can delineate who the owner is of all of these parcels, but the YMCA is located here, almost dead center into the site. Northern Arizona Healthcare owns the property directly to the north, which is vacant, and this is the parcel that has the bridge that accesses to the YMCA. Just to the south of the YMCA is the project, or is the property that was initiated this request. There are two vacant lots, additional, and then at the end, just right north of the roundabout, is the hospice, Northland Hospice Site.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Very welcome. So this is the proposed rural floodplain map, it's not very exciting, it just changes the color from green to blue so that all areas would be identified the same. So let's talk about the findings for a zoning code text amendment, the first is, the proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the objectives and policies of the general plan. So this first finding about the general plan, the regional plan, which serves as our general plan, does not specifically address rural or urban floodplanes as described in the zoning code. Floodplanes in general are considered environmentally sensitive lands, which are covered in the regional plan, which does state that these areas contain critical resources and require special consideration in the development, design, and review process. And as is true with our codes and requirements, we have codes that deal with the special development and design of properties that may develop within a flood fringe of a floodplain. Development in floodplanes is regulated by Title 12 of the city code. So the proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the objectives and policies of the general plan. The environmental planning and conservation chapter of the regional plan does include two maps that help identify concentration of natural resources. So it's important to rely on these maps, the first map is map seven, which identifies significant natural resources. So what you can see here, this, this green swath is going through that area of floodplain, it's much wider than that floodplain itself. And what this green swath means on this map is, and the, the map that I'm using is from the website rather than the actual paper regional plan, which is the official document. The official paper document identifies potential, it has the word potential in here, riparian vegetation. So these are areas that may have potential riparian vegetation. From visiting the site, the site is heavy grasslands with ponderosa pine, which are not typical riparian vegetation. And next up is Flagstaff Regional Plan Map Eight, which is the concentration of natural resources. When you look at this map citywide, you can see that a lot of the city has some level of this green layer on it. So the darker the layer, the higher the concentration of natural resources, the lighter the layer, the lower, the level of, lower, the lower concentration. This is in about the mid-range of concentration for natural resources. There are no designated or identifiable watchable wildlife in terms of the regional plan identified here, although lots of people report enjoying the wildlife that, that visit this site, and anybody who lives in this area is well aware, or travels, or visits the site is well aware of the wildlife that does occupy this particular area in Flagstaff. So in terms of those two maps, neither of them specifically call out that this is a place that needs to be preserved because of a significant amount of resources. Finding number two, the proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, inconvenience, or welfare of the city. So the proposed amendment is not anticipated to be detrimental to the public health, safety, this amendment is intended to resolve a conflict on the rural floodplain map. And again, any development within the floodplain has to be mitigated by being compliant with our stormwater regulations, and there is development throughout the city that does occur within floodplanes. And finding number three, that the proposed amendment is internally consistent with other applicable provisions of the zoning code. So the current indicated area is inconsistent with the description of rural floodplanes, rural floodplanes are described as natural, undisturbed, open spaces that are unsuitable for development purposes due to periodic flood inundation and the need to preserve the stream corridor for beneficial uses, such as the preservation of important ecological resources. The zoning code describes the urban floodplain as watercourses in urbanized areas that have typically been altered from their natural state by channelization. The applicant provided a biological evaluation of the Switzer Wash in the subject area prepared by Natural Channel Design in 2003. The report states the following, "The primary limiting factors to the biological and physical functions of Switzer Creek are direct manipulations of the channel and floodplain during past construction and surrounding roads, utility pipelines, and other infrastructure." I would note that within a rural floodplain, all of these types of disturbances are permitted, but they're not necessarily permitted to alter or divert or change the shape of the channel itself. "In several places, the channel and floodplain have been significantly narrowed and/or completely realigned. Large rock has been added to the banks and channel presumably to minimize erosion. Extensive spoil piles limit access to the active floodplain. Steep road embankments contribute to increased sediment supplies. Channel realignments have pushed the channel into dense thickets of ponderosa pine. The cumulative impact of these modifications limits the function of the riparian system. The proposed amendments enhance the zoning code's internal consistency by resolving a conflict on the rural floodplain map pertaining to the subject property." And I wanted to state that because this was a request by a, an individual property owner, that a citizen participation plan was required, the applicant was required to go out and hold a neighborhood meeting that was held earlier this year. Additionally, there was a work session before the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing before the Public Commission, and now we're here before you. The Planning and Zoning Commission, in accordance with the findings, did make a recommendation for approval of the zoning code text amendment by a vote of four to one. I will say that the Planning and Zoning Commission did struggle with this application overall as a whole, but it's hard to understand the difference between that rural and urban floodplain characteristic. And lastly, if you have any questions, we're here to try to answer those, we do have stormwater management folks here, if you have additional questions in regards to those requirements.
Thank you. We do have some public participants, but I'll open it up to just questions right now, if you have anything for Ms. Antol. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tiffany, just want to summarize kind of my understanding of this, is that if we, if we don't rezone, currently, we're, as a city, not able to engage in flooding mitigation on this parcel, but if we do rezone, it's the opposite, we are able, as a city, to engage in flooding mitigation, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Shimonie, this is, I just want to clarify, this is not a rezoning, this is a zoning code text amendment, so we're simply amending a map in the zoning code. But when a property is within the rural floodplain designation, it does limit both what we could do as a city within that area if additional mitigation or restoration were necessary within this area, I would also note that this is, for the most part, there is a portion of this that is owned by the City of Flagstaff, but for the most part, this is also private property, and just because a property is in a floodplain doesn't necessarily give the city authority to use somebody's property without their permission as well, so I just want to add that on there. But yes, the rural floodplain does place additional burdens if a property owner should be willing, and the city in partnership wanted to help, or that property owner wanted to do restoration of the floodplain to make it a more beneficial use in an event, yes.
Great, and then my follow-up question is just that, there's a lot of public comment we've received referring to this parcel as open space, can you just address that really quick?
Sure, this parcel is zoned high-density residential, it has been zoned that for many years. The rural floodplain designation relates to that resource protection overlay, but the point of this amendment is, is whether or not it, the floodplain that is on this site meets the definition of the rural floodplain, or if it meets the definition of the urban floodplain, and to date, the information that has been provided to staff by the applicant and has been reviewed by our inter-division staff review team, is, is that this floodplain has been altered, that it is no longer considered an undisturbed rural floodplain.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Tiffany, if we make this change, I presume that that would make it easier for it to be channelized, in other words, it could have a concrete bottom, concrete sides, et cetera, as opposed to if we don't make this change, it would be limited to pretty much keeping it the way it is, is that correct?
Council, Mayor and Councilmember McCarthy, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember House.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, Tiffany, I'm just wondering, what would denial of this change do in terms of development? Because we've seen a lot of comments saying that we, we should not allow the development to happen, but does this change impact the ability for that area to be developed?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember House, there is a portion of this property that is outside of the rural floodplain and would absolutely allow for development of the site. Where the applicant, and I'm not trying to get too far into the development proposal, but the site is, is fairly well impacted by that rural floodplain, as well as some slope from, which is man-made slope from Switzer Canyon. So it limits that footprint, the high-density residential zone has a building height of 60 feet. So what it does is it would encourage a property owner to build up taller in order to accommodate their minimum density, because again- to accommodate their minimum density, because again, remember, we have minimum as well as maximum densities. The proposals that I have seen for this property have only included the minimum density and were three-story buildings lower in height than could potentially be done with a smaller footprint. So those are the sort of differentials. Smaller footprint usually means going up higher. Doesn't necessarily mean that that will be the case, but this doesn't prohibit all development.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify too, this is not a rezoning. And this, this real discussion is about whether this fits a definition of rural versus an urban floodplain. That's the real discussion. But we do have public comments, and I would like to get to them unless we do have a, was there a, a presentation request from the applicant at all? Or available for questions as needed?
Available for questions as, as needed.
Okay.
Yep.
Just wanted to check based on the process here. With that, we will move on to public comment.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tiffany. Catherine Simmons?
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Thank you so much for letting me speak to you today. I'm CEO for Northland Hospice, and we own Olivia White Hospice House, which is at the end of the property that all this is, decision is going to be over. I did provide you guys with some pictures of the Olivia White and the area around there, and some of you have been kind enough to take me off of my offer and come do a tour. My concern isn't so much the change from the floodplain. My concern is what is going to happen with the area next to Olivia White. We were gifted that property. We have our hospice home there. It is a beautiful, beautiful area, and I beg to argue that animals do use it and cross through it quite often, and come all the way down to our building that's down across from the dealership. So anyone that's been there can see the beauty. My concern is what's going to happen to that area? I understand developers need to develop. I, I get that. But what can we do as a community to keep part of that environment intact? So for our patients and their families that are there enjoying Olivia White, they don't look out the window and see a building. So I think as a community, we need to figure out what we can do. We've donated property to the Footst Trail so that we have that beautiful area there. We have, we'll never build on the other side of our property. We will keep that intact for the community use. Putting a garden in there. So I guess my concern is what can we do to benefit that area, whether we vote for the floodplain or not, I mean, for rural or urban area? What can we do to keep that as intact as we can? Because I do think it's important for that community there, and especially for Northland Hospice and Hospice Home. Do you guys have any questions for me at all?
Yeah. Council, Councilmember Shumani.
Hi there. Good evening. Thanks for being with us.
And you were so kind to come out and look. Thank you very much.
It's nice to see you in, in person and not just over the phone. I, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, to talk about what you and, and Steve, I believe, talked about.
Yeah. Steve and I did talk about the, development will happen in that area. So my goal was how could we, as landowners and, and developers, create a community garden area to put a little less impact in there? And I think that would be helpful for the whole community, even for the Y. The kids at the Y could come down and participate in that. We'd have a little bit more green space, maybe leave some more trees and not cut as many of those down, but how we could even make pathways so that people could utilize it from Olivia White and be able to, I would love to put a bridge over to the other side of our property, which would mean that we'd have to change that designation so that our hospice patients and families could use the other side. But my goal would be to, to make it, preserve it as much as we can for the wildlife, to keep it a semi corridor, even though it's not supposed to be, and then have less impact. But, you know, to the area, we don't see the buildings so much. And Steve and I have talked about that with, and hopefully get that support to do a community garden.
Thank you. Just checking here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, very much.
Christine Colletti?
Hello. I'm Nurse Christine. I work for Northland Hospice. I'm also here for Olivia White. And I'm just wondering, have any of you ever walked along our Olivia White Hospice Gardens? It's our city's only island habitat between Schweitzer and turquoise. A three-story condo is planned to be built next to our Olivia White Hospice Home. And it is situated naturally within the Green Belt Nature Area, which should be preserved to maintain its ecosystem, to enhance the quality of life for all. I'm seeking consideration for extended green belt between our properties, is all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Holloway?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I just wanted to come introduce myself. I'm Stephen Holloway. I'd like to thank the city staff for working with us throughout this process. It's been very educational for me. I'd like to thank Kathy for inviting me over to the Olivia White Hospice House if you haven't been, and I don't know if they're open for tours or not, but it's an incredible place. And, and I, and I really appreciate her vision and what she's, you know, proposing as far as, you know, a, a community space. The, the parcel is, you know, it's a challenge with the, with the minimum densities in there and, and, you know, we do look forward to having an opportunity to find a way that we can create, you know, a bit of more of a win for the community out there and still be able to develop inside of our limitations. And I was just, I'm seriously grateful for her inviting me over for the discussion. Really, I'm here tonight just to represent the owner of the parcel, and if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer those for you.
Thank you, Stephen. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor, and Stephen, thank you for being with us and, and having us the other day at the parcel. How tall are the three, the three-story buildings? What's the height? Do you know?
I can pull that up. It may take me a moment. Oh, no, I'm thinking of a slightly different one with building. Do you have it, Tiffany? Oh, you took it off? I don't, I, I apologize, Adam. I don't have the height thing on me. I can absolutely get back to you on it.
I'm glad to hear it's not five or six stories, so that's, that's a step in the right direction, I think, for the neighbors. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Can you speak to the, the, the density requirements and, you know, what, what, if this is not a rural versus an urban, how might that affect the density requirements and the height of the building, as Zantel was mentioning?
So the, the density requirement doesn't change urban to rural, but it is a minimum of 20 units per acre. The, the concept that we are currently working in, which is in its conceptual phase, we're looking at 34 units, and we have about three, just a little over 3.5 acres of land there. Of course, a lot of it exists inside of the flood fringe. The floodway is in there as well. So it would, it would allow for a little bit more of a creative use right along the fringe of the floodway. There are specific building requirements that have to be met to make sure that, you know, what sits on the initial level is vented properly and garage space, things of that nature. But it does open up the possibility for us to meet the minimum density requirements without having to reach all the way up to the peaks and back to do it in height.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Claire Lise?
Speaking is not my thing, so. I live in Schweitzer Canyon.
Sorry, if you might be able to lower the mic just so everyone on the line can hear you. Thank you.
And I think I'm concerned, and I did sign the petition that I think you guys got maybe a week or two ago, just about preserving the open space. And, you know, I think the rural floodplain does the best job of doing that. Building a bridge doesn't violate that, and a lot of the reasonings that have been provided are roadways, utilities, flood mitigation, things like that. And so I think it's just keeping that in mind. And then the last study that was done was in 2003. It's now 2022, so how accurate is that? And then a lot of these things get parsed out, rural floodplains. Part of that says and defined as areas of delineated 100-year floodplain. As you start chunking out different definitions, it looks different. And so same with, from the 2003 study, it says, after all of what Tiffany had read, in spite of these impacts, this reach of Schweitzer Wash still remain, maintains its riparian function and much of its wild nature. So I think it's just, yeah. It does, it is still pretty wild. The only new addition since then is the YMCA, which is primarily outside of the rural floodplain. Additionally, Cheshire has a rural floodplain near the park, and above it is urban, as is below, so this is not that different from there. And so I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's about preserving the open space, I think, for us, which I do like the sounds of community gardens, things like that. But, yeah, I think the other part is flooding. Sounds like flood mitigation is not possible in the urban floodplain, although I did see Cheshire, there was equipment in the wash, you know, during the flooding. But it seems like there's currently nothing in there that floods, so it'd either be above there or below there if the top of the watershed ever did happen to burn. So, right, the top of that would be like Hospital Hill or below down near Route 66. But anyways, I think it's just, what is the definition? What is it? And can we preserve that open space? And I would hate to see that part of the urban trail have a concrete wash instead of trees and rocks and things like that, because I run it every day.
Thank you, Claire. Barbara Phillips?
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is the first time I've spoken before a group like this, so. I am a biologist, a botanist, that's worked in this area for over 45 years, and I've spent a lot of time wandering around in different drainages. I am currently on the Friends of the Rio Board. I do not represent them necessarily here, but I just wanted to let you know that. In my experience of this Schweitzer Valley drainage, I have encountered tremendous overflow waters coming down it, especially in the 80s and 90s of rain on snow events that have been so deep that I was walking with hip boots and would not walk into the water because it would have been up over the level of my hip boots. This is up in the vicinity of the south end of Locket Estates Ranches, and that whole valley was covered. It killed the prairie dogs that were in there, so they were wiped out for many generations of prairie dogs, and they're just barely coming back in that whole valley. The water flows off the sides of the hills. As you will notice, the density that is there in Locket Estate is a lot of, they're five and six-acre parcels, so there's very few houses there, and they are out of the floodplain in that area. To the south of that, there is also the floodplain designation before you get, it's within the city, but it gets down more channelized as it comes into the city. And this is above forest where you, you have not seen it on the maps. So I want to say that, that this is just normal winter rain on snow in that habitat. And I'm concerned about the fact that we have since then had major fires, often dry lake hills, and the pipeline fire down Schultz Creek, which has caused extensive damage, both in East Flagstaff and, you know, down through that area, and also in Coconino Estates and that area. The Schweitzer drainage is between those two areas that have burned, and it hasn't burned up there yet. So I'm just concerned that we might see the same kind of impacts you're seeing below the pipeline fire and the museum fire down Schweitzer Drainage. You have not seen that yet, and so be aware that you could have a lot of impacts and have, again, to remediate all the impacts from that in anything that is developed in this narrower channel down this area.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone online at this time? Just to make sure.
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right. With that, do we have any further questions of staff? Or comments from council? Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only comment at this point is just, you know, understanding that it's not necessarily part of the agendized item on this, but I do want to make sure that whichever way we go with this, and understanding that development can happen in either case, I would like to see the mitigation planning that happens in terms of this development, both in terms of flooding and the concerns regarding the hospice in the neighborhood, be brought to the table in, in those conversations, and ensure that those are, are part of that planning process. That, I think, is, is the most important part of this to me, because either way, I think those voices need to be heard in that development process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember McCarthy, and then we'll go Councilmember Shumani.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. I went online and viewed the Planning and Zoning Meeting on this very subject, and I did note that one of the commissioners voted no on it, and that some of the commissioners, at least one, that voted to approve it, recommending for council to approve it, that they had serious reservations. So because of that, I went out and walked it. So I walked from the roundabout up to the bridge pass, which is, of course, north of the YMCA, and then I walked back down it. And so I walked it twice, and yes, there has been some changes. There's a sewer line that goes through there, but my conclusion was that it was substantially natural, and it was largely untouched by development. Also note that the YMCA was able to build, and they, they, the only impact they had on this was to put a bridge across, which is minimal, and the hospice was able to build. And so, and I think we know that this developer will be able to build in a slightly different way. So considering that it is, in my opinion, substantially natural, I am not in support of making this change. So if we get a motion on this tonight, I will be a no vote. And if anybody has any further questions, here I am.
You, Councilmember. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points. I just want to express gratitude for the collaboration between the, the developer, the parcel owner, and the hospice team, and you all have a beautiful space. I really appreciate- I really appreciate it. It is loud at that space. If we think it's loud in parts of town by cars, I invite everyone to go to the hospice and witness how loud the cars traveling by is. It's pretty shocking. And I bet if we, anyways, I'll stop there before City Attorney checks me in line, because that's another conversation. But I appreciate the collaboration and the support and the teamwork. I also wanted just to plant a seed, kind of piggybacking Councilmember House to Tiffany and the team, because I think that this won't come back before council if there is a project being developed unless it needs something from us. But the developer is open to preventing short-term rentals, and they also want to work to allow for workforce housing to be part of their project. So not sure what we can do about that, but just wanted to plant that seed and see if we can hold you all accountable to that, because I think that's a great plan. But I think that this is a worthwhile request, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumani. Well, I'll just state that, you know, inevitably, I also watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and found that, you know, really what this does come down to is the definition. That's what we're here tonight about. It's not a lot of development agreement. It's not, you know, discussing add-ons for a DA, for a garden. This is, does this fit the definition? And all of the experts from our city staff, as well as once Planning and Zoning did look more thoroughly and better understand what truly their recommendation and what we're putting forward, was that this fits the definition of urban floodplain. I'm very concerned throughout the entire city about flooding in our community. And was mentioned, you know, we had the pipeline fire to the west of there, and the museum fire to the east. If something happens in between there and we can't actually get to dealing with mitigation efforts in that area, it's going to be a problem, and we have to look to the future on how this might impact not, and that would affect hospice, that would affect YMCA, that could affect the whole area. If we can't, if we had a situation where it was not designated as this, like we have with the pipeline fire west, where a fire happened, we got to work, we got the NRCS grant, got detention basins built in so quick a time, that would not be available if this is a rural floodplain designation. And given that that designation is really, it's just a definition, and the experts have shared exactly that that is the case, I will be voting in favor of this. And I am glad that they have, you all are in discussions, a community guarding, being good neighbors through this process is key, open lines of communication, discussing with each other concerns or how these are going to be built. Please, please continue that, because that provides the best option for you all, provides it for the community, and I was glad to hear about that. But with that, I will be placing a motion, but Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Antle, can you please display the slide that defines urban floodplain? There you go. So again, just bringing to the core of the question today is amending, amending the city code for this parcel from rural floodplain to rural, to urban floodplain, specific to this parcels of land. So we're not talking about any proposed development or concept and potential impact to the neighborhood, but I do appreciate that, you know, the developers here and the members of the communities here. And for full disclosure, that's my neighborhood. So I walk from my place on East Ponterosa Parkway pretty much on a regular basis when, so I'm very familiar with the area. So just keeping in mind, so the focus of discussion for today and with an intent to read the ordinance is, is a zoning, a zoning text map amendment from rural to urban floodplain. And this is the definition of rural floodplain. And I emphasize, you know, the requirements in the development process should that process take place, which means, you know, our city stormwater regulation will be in full force. So with that, I am ready to make a motion.
Actually, Mr. Mayor- I'll need to close the public hearing after comment, and then we can make the motion.
Correct, and I had a comment before that. I appreciate several of the comments from council, because this isn't a development-specific, from a legal perspective, this isn't development-specific, it's a floodplain question. And because many of the comments have been about that, I just wanted to note, obviously they're still allowed to build whatever the zoning code allows in either floodplain, whichever floodplain it is designated ultimately. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCarthy?
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilmember Salas for asking to put these words up on the screen. Just a second ago, it had a definition of a urban floodplain, and it said that it would be an area that has been altered from the natural state by channelization. There clearly has been no channelization in this area, and that it is, my opinion, that it is substantially, not absolutely, there's no absolutes here, but it's substantially in a natural state. That's why I think that it's imperative that we keep it the way it is, just based on the definition.
Thank you, my Councilwoman McCarthy. Any further comment before I close the public hearing?
Mayor, I'd like to weigh in.
Yes, Councilman Rasslin.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, I'm going to vote no on this change for the reasons that Councilmember McCarthy very well specified. And also, you know, I think different people can come to different conclusions about this in good faith, but I'm very concerned that at the behest of a development, we are considering a change to a floodplain. I understand that development can occur either way, and that that's not really the conversation we're having. I just think it sends the wrong message to our struggling city right now, as we're dealing with new flooding issues and exorbitant costs and stormwater fees conversations, that we are, that we'd be perceived as allowing a development in something that has been defined as a floodplain. And the only reason we're having this conversation is because of the development request. We don't need to be putting more units on more floodways. And so I understand that there's some complexity to this, and it gets a little bit more murky, as it were, and the future may still hold some development plans for the region. But for those reasons, I'm not in support of the change. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Any further comment? All right. The public hearing is now closed, and Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do offer this space and time to thank our Planning and Zoning Commission, who have volunteered their time and energy and dedication to come up with the recommendation, along with the gratitude to staff in studying this matter. And I do believe we are blessed to have highly qualified and professional staff in putting forth staff recommendation. Again, going back to this definition, on this screen, we have rural floodplain definition, going back to the urban floodplain definition. And I believe that, based on the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, I move to read ordinance number 2022-28 by title only for the first time.
We have a motion by Councilmember Salas. Do we have a second?
And I would like to just make a quick comment, if I can. Thank you to Steve. I did go out, I did a site tour. I have been to the Olivia White Hospice House before, and given all of the information and processing it, and Ms. Salas, thank you for bringing up the definition and really honing in on that. Staff, thank you. And the planning and zoning, I will second the motion.
A motion by Councilmember Salas, seconded by Vice Mayor Sweet. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries in a 5-2 vote. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code, Section 10-90.40.030, Rural Floodplain Map, to change the map designation of approximately 7.76 acres of real property from rural floodplain to urban floodplain on eight parcels of land, APNS 101-01-020A, located generally between West Forest Avenue and North San Francisco Street, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. That does bring us down to agenda item 11B. And after this, we will take a break, but I think we can get this one through. 11B is the consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2022-51 and the Ordinance Number 2022-27, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled PZ-19-00248 Updates to Zoning Code Outdoor Lighting Standards, and an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Coconino County, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code to modify the existing outdoor lighting standards. The public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am going to keep this presentation short in light of our most recent work session and the lack of issues identified at that work session. So again, just to go through and highlight, this has been several years in the works, working with a group of experts in the field on outdoor lighting and the preservation of dark skies in Flagstaff. The principal portion of this zoning code text amendment is to align our zoning code in accordance with the recommendation of the joint land use study. This is the Coconino County Joint Land Use Study in regards to several astronomical amenities in Flagstaff and the surrounds. The primary highlights are basically extending Lighting Zone 2 in Flagstaff to cover all of what is Lighting Zone 3. Lighting Zone 3 is the most of mostly East Flagstaff. Modernizing measurements of absolute lumens for LEDs, revising residential average use standards, and updating design standards to encourage overhanging or canopy-mounted lighting for outdoor lighting in Lighting Zone 1. And Lighting Zone 1 is the smallest area in the city, and it is basically from Woody Mountain Road West. So the primary development that is in Lighting Zone 1 is Timber Sky. So staff recommendation findings, we'll go through those really quickly. The first is that it's consistent with the general plan. The regional plan specifically supports the preservation of dark skies in Flagstaff. Dark skies have been a priority for Flagstaff for over three decades. This code amendment reflects recent planning efforts to preserve astronomical facilities in the Flagstaff region. And the proposed amendment will not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. A lot of time and consideration was put into this amendment, and the proposed amendment is not anticipated to be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or convenience. We are just updating and improving our standards overall as a whole. And again, this puts Flagstaff out there as a leader in dark sky preservation. And the proposed amendment is internally consistent with other applicable provisions. So the code has been vetted to make sure that it's internally consistent with these changes, including changes to maps and definitions, as well as provisions within the signed code. And the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was for approval. If you have any questions, comments, I'd be happy to try to deal with them.
Any questions? I know we've been over this a few times, but Councilwoman McCarthy?
Was the PNC recommendation unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you. I move to read Resolution Number 2022-51 by title only for the first time.
Mayor, could we close the public hearing?
Closing the public hearing first. Now I read Resolution Number 2022-51 by title only for the first time.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Rasslin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled PZ-19-00248 Outdoor Lighting Standards.
I move to read ordinance number 2022-27 by title only for the first time.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 10, Flagstaff Zoning Code, by adopting by reference that certain document entitled PZ-19-00248 Updates to Zoning Code Outdoor Lighting Standards, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
All right. With that, I think it's a good time to take a bit of a break before our regular agenda starts. So it is 4:49 now. Let's get back here at 5:15, take a good meal, because we might be going long this afternoon. Yeah, all right. Good to go? Excellent. We're down to agenda item 12A. This is the consideration approval of contract, approving the professional engineering services contract with Burgess and Napple Incorporated in the amount of $716,401 for the Butler Fourth Improvement Project. Jeremy, take us away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Degater. I'm a project manager in the capital improvement section here within the City Engineering Division. As you mentioned, I'm here to present on the Butler Fourth Improvements Engineering, Professional Engineering Services Contract. This project, formerly known as Butler Avenue Widening, is located centrally within the city limits. The project limits are generally located along the Butler Avenue and 4th Street corridor, extending from Little America and I-40 on the west side to the east, tying into Sonoma Heights, and starting just south of Sparrow Avenue on 4th Street, extending that complete street section down to the Butler intersection and through the intersection, tying into improvements related to the Canyon Del Rio development. The item before you today is the award of this contract, so we're asking for your consideration and approval of the contract to Burgess and Napple for their engineering design services. The staff's recommended action is that you approve this contract. I'm going to take a quick recap of the project background, what we plan to do once this award is granted. This project is funded by both the old transportation tax, which was originally passed back in 2000, and the new transportation tax, which passed in 2018. Preliminary work on this project was done back in the early 2000s, so between 2005 and 2008, did a preliminary corridor study that kind of outlined the footprint of what this project would look like. There was also an independent study done to investigate the addition of a roundabout at the Harold Ranch Road intersection. And this early work has served to guide private development, as it has occurred over the past decade and a half along this corridor. It helps coordination with these private developments. It serves to form the baseline for cash and lieu contributions where private development- to form the baseline for cash and lieu contributions, where a private development would choose to contribute money versus actually building improvements. And finally, it allows us to identify our right-of-way acquisition needs as they work their way through the entitlement process. You saw this back in March when we were here before. Our current proposed cross-section is a little bit different than you would see in our current engineering standards. We have taken the bike lanes off of the street and moved them onto the sides. So instead of a six-foot sidewalk, we will actually have an 11-foot wide multipurpose lane on each side of the street, which would be separated from the street traffic with a five-foot parkway, which is an important buffer and an important snow storage area. There's a lot with this project that we're going to consider. Certainly, if council will recall, we were back in front of you in March of this year. We kind of, before we advertised for this contract that we're awarding tonight, we got feedback on the intended scope and so on. That was incorporated in that RSOQ, or Request for Statement of Qualifications. Some of the high-level points are, a primary function of this project is going to be to redo the Butler Fourth Intersection. We will take a look at whether or not it's appropriate to use a roundabout at this intersection. We'll also be looking at the feasibility of a separated foot crossing. Should a roundabout not prove to be feasible and the intersection remains signalized, we will incorporate enhanced pedestrian bicycle facilities or protections such as a protected intersection. Harold Ranch Road, this is another focal point of this project. This is currently envisioned as a roundabout, and will also involve realignments of some of Little America's driveways. The roundabout is needed to allow large trucks that are blocked by a center median to turn right and actually make a U-turn at the roundabout to get back on the interstate. The project will incorporate ITS fiber conduits throughout the project limits. And a primary thing of this is also stormwater. So this Butler Fourth Intersection currently floods. It's downstream of the Spruce Avenue Wash watershed, which has been impacted by the museum flood back in 20, or museum fire back in 2019. We're all familiar with what's happened over the ensuing years. And so it'll be important for us to raise that intersection, to remove it out of the floodway and allow additional conveyance. We'll also be installing stormwater infrastructure along this corridor to tie into that and improve our infrastructure in general in that area. Upon the award of this design contract, we are going to be doing project refreshes, what we term it. So we'll be taking all of this previous work that was done. We'll be preparing some exhibits, taking a look at the feedback that we previously received from council and from public comment at our last meeting. And we'll be coming up with some conceptual designs, and we will be engaging with the public at that point. We will, we plan to hold two public town hall meetings. We'll be meeting with our internal and external stakeholders, such as ADOT, NATA, FUSD, and so on. And once we've worked through that more public portion of the program, we will transition to engaging with our commissions, Transportation Commission, Bicycle Advisory Commission, and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, ultimately culminating with us bringing back a preliminary or preferred alternative to city council. The idea being here that we would reach some level of consensus and direction moving forward on the project. If we received that at that time, we would move forward towards 30% design. I should note that the contract today is what we're calling Phase A. It only includes this outreach effort, preliminary design, and taking design to 30%. Phase B will take design from 30% through final design. And that will be accomplished by a contract modification at that time. So we will be back in front of council at that time to award that modification. We do plan to deliver this project by utilization of the Construction Manager at Risk Delivery Process, or CMAR, and that contract will be brought into the project around the 60% design level. That project, or that contract, that initial contract with the contractor will be awarded by council. And certainly, the guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, will also be reviewed and approved by council before construction actually begins. A high-level project schedule, we will be using the rest of this year to kind of do this project refresh. And early 2023, we anticipate being back in front of council, winter, spring of 2023, to hopefully get this direction and move the project fully into design. So 2023, 2024 will be focused primarily on design. With, if we're able to take advantage of some of the phasing advantages that the CMAR delivery process affords, we would start construction early. Either way, this is, we're looking at a multiple season project and looking to wrap up construction in 2025 to 2026. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have about the order of this design contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. I just want to note before the discussion that I spoke with the city attorney yesterday about this, and it was not agendized for discussion of the design. And therefore, we can't get heavily into that part of the conversation tonight. That will be for when it does come back to us after the public outreach and if this contract is approved this evening. So just wanted to be aware, so we're not getting too much into the weeds. But regardless, any questions from council? Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I have comments. I guess, city attorney, you ought to cut me off if I go off the rails a bit, because I do have comments about design. But so, city attorney, can you clarify what the parameters of this discussion are?
Yeah, the agenda item, the scope of the agenda item is approval of a contract, not for the details of the design. That will come later, obviously, when they begin that work, so.
And to follow up, so the contract is for, you know, this outreach and the public engagement. In regards to the design, am I able to offer some overarching comments about the design as they go about the public outreach?
That would, that would be for the public outreach portion, appropriate for there. Tonight, it's just about whether or not the contract will be approved to move forward. That's, that's the, the agenda item is posted.
Okay, so that definitely cuts my comment down significantly. So, so Mayor and Council, I'll just share that, you know, this is, I want to thank Jeremy and the team for bringing this forward this way. I'm very much looking forward to this public outreach. As we were talking about during the break, this is not necessarily standard for projects to go this route, but I'm so grateful that we're doing it this way. So thank you and the team for entertaining more public outreach and engagement. I do support the contract. I think that this is good. I've been working on this design for four years. This is probably the first thing I worked on with Martin and Rick and Jeff and the team when I first got elected, is where those bike lanes should be. So I'll stop there. But I'm grateful for where this is at. Obviously, this is a 419 project. But, gosh, not being able to speak about design, that's really frustrating. But I guess I'll just say that I really hope that council conversations that we've had over the past year, two years, are really accounted in this process of this design, and that we look to see how we can best calm traffic through the width of the roads and the footprint that we have. Skipping different points. I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Councilmember McCarthy?
So the contract that we're hypothetically, or probably going to be awarding here in a minute, it won't commit to one approach or another. It's just very preliminary stuff. I guess I'm sympathetic to Mr. Shimon's idea that, you know, if we're going to start designing it, what are we going to start designing? So my question is, is this just real preliminary stuff, and it won't make a difference if we do the cross-section you showed, or something different? That, that stuff will be later.
So we will be guided on design of this project by our guiding documents, regional plan, active transportation master plan, engineering standards, and so on. Those will serve to form the basis of the designs that we present to the public and so on. We will be offering that opportunity for feedback, input, and so on. And we encourage both Councilmember Shimon and other interested members of the public to engage and stay tuned and engage in that process, and certainly track this project as it moves forward. The intent here is to really, to try and have these conversations upfront while we're in these preliminary designs, where we can make changes without having substantial impact to either project cost or schedule. And so, as I mentioned, this is a little bit off of what we would typically do, but understanding the requests that we've been receiving and the interest that particular, that this project has had, we felt that this was the thing to do, that we can work through this, engage with our community, our stakeholders, and make sure that we, we can come to some level of consensus, is the hope and direction from council to move forward. And that we've had those discussions early, rather later in design, when they have a much more severe impact, both cost and schedule.
All right. So we're going to discuss the options, and then hope, you know, go through the Transportation Commission, et cetera, and then get input from anybody that's interested, and then come back.
Correct, Councilmember.
Okay. Thank you for your response.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? I need to pick this up here. Councilmember Shimon.
Mayor, if there isn't any further comments, I'll go ahead and say that we should, I'd like to see us approve the Professional Engineering Service Contract with Burgess and Nipoll Incorporated in the amount of $716,401 for the Butler Fourth Improvements Project with a contract duration of 300 calendar days, and to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
I second that.
So just a clarification, that was a formal motion? Okay, thank you.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
That brings us down to agenda item 12B. This is consideration adoption of ordinance number 2022-30, an ordinance amending city code to align city code and industrial discharge permits with the Language and Environmental Protection Agency, EPA 40, and Code of Federal Regulation, CFR 403.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jolene Montoya. I am the Industrial Pretreatment Supervisor for Water Services. As a researcher from last year, the pretreatment section monitors all the businesses and industries in town to protect our wastewater collection system and water reclamation plants. So what I'm proposing today is three changes to our language found in our sewer use ordinance. On June 7th, a company called PG Environmental, who is a contractor for 80Q, who was hired by ADQ, visited Flagstaff to conduct a pretreatment compliance inspection. This entailed a records review of the pretreatment program. During his inspection, he found three pieces of code and permit language that did not match the EPA language. So these changes will align our city code as well as industrial discharge permits with EPA. So what does this affect? These are our current permanent industrial users, and this, these changes will also affect any industries that come in that need to be permitted. So the first of the changes, this one will affect the permissions the most, which is actually only a minimal change. Currently in their permits and in code, we require them to resample for any exceedances of constituents that are in their permits within 30 days. The EPA language says they have to resample and report back to the city within 30 days instead. The second is adding. We have already a code and permit language that says they have to keep sampling records and records retention of three years. I guess in EPA language, there's also a caveat that says it can be, the retention period can be extended if there is unresolved litigation, or if the state director EPA deems that there needs to be a longer retention period. The third is a signatory requirement change. Right now, our manager definition is from like the 1980s. They updated the manager definition in like 2013. This will just say who is able to sign the documents that we need to receive for permitting, reporting, and compliance. So what we've done up until this point, we did a 30-day public outreach plan. We went to the Water Commission on September 15th, gave them the same presentation, told them what we were moving forward with. We also drafted and sent out a letter to the permanent industries we have in town currently, to tell them of the change that was going to be happening, coming before council. And we also offered a meeting. Nobody decided they want to have a meeting, or I did not receive any other questions from the permanent industries. We also put information on Water Services website. And so now we are here before you for our first read. With that, are there any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any questions, council? With that, I move to read ordinance number 2022-30 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
We're gonna have to do rock, paper, scissors here.
I'll second that.
Fourth it. I'm going for Kara. Councilmember House, sorry. Councilmember, seconded by Councilmember House. Any further discussion? Oh, city manager.
Please follow through with your action, and I'll comment afterward. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. City Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending city code 7, Health and Sanitation, Chapter 02-001-0010, Industrial Self-Monitoring, and Chapter 02-001-0012, Signatory Requirements, Providing for Severability, Authority for Clerical Corrections, and Establishing an Effective Date.
All right, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council. A little bit off the topic, but somewhat related. Next week, we'll be introducing a couple of new members to our leadership team, to the council in person. We're excited about that. Tonight, we're also seeing one of our colleagues getting ready to exit the organization, and that would be Steve Camp, who is on the verge of a very well-deserved retirement. That will bring him closer to his family. We're all quite happy for him. And Steve, I'm so sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm good at that. But this is, I think, his last FaceTime with this council, so I thought it might be good to invite him up to the podium and embarrass him in any way you seek appropriate.
Absolutely. I'm all for embarrassment.
Hey, thanks so much. I don't have anything to say. I mean, it's like I'm retiring, like Greg said, on Thursday. So Jolene is going to be filling in for me in the interim when I leave, so.
Wonderful. How many years altogether?
So I worked for ADQ for 22 years, been with the city for eight.
Well, thank you so much for your service. Are you staying in Flagstaff, or?
Well, my wife wants to move down to the valley. All my kids moved down to the valley, so, a grandson down there, so my wife wants to go down there. We're empty nesters up here with all of our kids down there, so.
Excellent. Well, I wish you very well on your new adventure in retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager. All right. We are down to agenda item 12C, consideration adoption of Resolution Number 2022-50, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the Active Transportation Master Plan. Sorry, I know this is the boring one for you, Shimon. All right, Martin. Take us away.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. My name is Martin Intz. I'm the Multimodal Transportation Planner for the City of Flagstaff. The item before you tonight is consideration of a resolution. If you adopt that resolution, it will adopt the city's Active Transportation Master Plan, which henceforward I shall refer to as the ATMP for brevity. So the ATMP is a, is a guide for the city to enhance walking and biking in Flagstaff. And by enhance, we mean what I have listed here, which is to make it more functional, attractive, convenient, safe, and comfortable. And over the years, a number of plans, beginning with the city's regional plan and the regional plan before it, have highlighted the importance of walking and biking, and asked to support it in a number of ways. Those plans tend to be kind of high-level and aspirational, so they don't get into a whole lot of detail. The ATMP, on the other hand, will help implement those, the goals envisioned that are expressed in the regional plan, and provide some of those details for us to become more walk-and-bike friendly as we move forward. Here I've got listed, there are eight chapters in the ATMP. I'll go through each one of them and just pull out a few highlights as we go through this discussion. First, like any good introduction, it lays, sets the stage for the rest of the document. Here we talk about the overall intent of the ATMP, its policy context relative to the regional plan and other policy documents, and then work our way down through some guiding principles and our approach. principles and our approach, not just to walking and biking, but transportation planning more generally. Here are some details on the intent, as included in the ATMP. We want to include more detailed policy guidance for walking and biking, as I mentioned, to help implement the goals and the vision that are already indicated in the regional plan. We describe some specific goals and strategies and actions, so get into some of the details of things that we can do to support walking and biking. We identify where we need or are missing ped and bike infrastructure and then prioritize those projects. We describe planning considerations and design guidance relative to walking and biking to help move us forward. And finally, we facilitate a change in our overall approach to transportation planning, an item that we have referred to for the last year or so as the big shift in transportation. Guiding principles are kind of foundational and describe what we expect or what we believe relative to walking and biking. First principle here is that walking and biking are important to Flagstaff, not just important in and of themselves, but they also help us meet some of our other goals and objectives, including providing better mobility, promoting equity and inclusivity, public health and safety, sustainability, community character, quality of life, and economic vitality. Second principle is that Flagstaff has a significant opportunity to enhance walking and biking. We're really fortunate in that there's a great upside to this, but it does take an effort on our part. These things don't happen all of themselves. We need to make an effort to make them happen. But we know when we make that effort, we make walking and biking more comfortable and convenient, that more people will choose to walk and bike as a form of transportation. This has not only been, excuse me, our experience over the years, but we have the experience of a number of other of our peer communities as well. Fourth point here, walking and biking and transit as well are not extra or optional or wouldn't it be nice, but they need to be integral parts of our transportation planning and transportation options as we move forward. And then finally, the last guiding principle is that walking and biking are part of a larger context of land use and community character and street design, in that walking and biking both affect these things and are affected by that context significantly. The approach described in the plan and summarized for you here in these five bullet points is really reflective in a description of what we refer to as the big shift in transportation. So some of the points are, first, that we be more transformational than incremental. So this is the time for bold action and big steps. Second, that we emphasize pedestrians and bicyclists and don't overbuild for cars. So we know based on experience that when we plan for cars and parking, we get cars and parking. And on the other hand, when we plan for people and places, we end up with people and places. Third point in the approach is to take a well-rounded approach to transportation and consider multiple community objectives. And here I refer back to what I called up in the previous slide. Our other objectives or other values include inclusivity, equity, community character, quality of life, and all those things that we want to promote as part of the transportation system and more generally. Fourth point is that we pursue a wide range of solutions for transportation, and that means providing people with multiple options for getting around. We're really at a stage in our development as a city, Flagstaff is where one or two solutions for transportation just won't work for us anymore. We need to, we need to have multiple approaches and try everything that we can to pursue our transportation objectives. And the final point here under approach is to use travel demand management, or TDM, as one of our guiding principles. And TDM, at its core, simply means that we seek to decrease the demand for single occupancy vehicles as a transportation mode and increase the capacity and the demand for more sustainable modes like walking and biking and transit. Chapter 2 describes current conditions in Flagstaff and starts with an outline of our status for walking and biking according to a number of different measures. It moves on to describe some of the challenges that we face. This is largely based on what we've heard over the last couple of years from the public and in-person meetings and one-on-one conversations and surveys. And then it describes the opportunity in Flagstaff as well in it. We know that we have a number of challenges that we face, but we also know, as I mentioned before, that there's a tremendous upside. We have a great potential in Flagstaff to improve and promote and make walking and biking a bigger part of our community. Chapter 3 includes 13 goals, 32 policies, and 143 different strategies. The strategies are where we get into the kind of, all the details, the to-do list, a long to-do list of what we can do to support walking and biking. The 13 goals are really derived from the regional plan, and they're specific to walking and biking and provide more detail for it, but they relate back to the vision and the goals and the policies already established in the regional plan for transportation. The 32 policies are organized around six different topics that you see listed here. Outcomes indicators and targets make up Chapter 4. Outcomes are the things that we expect to happen or what we want to see as a result of implementation of the plan. So I included here a very basic example. We want this plan to result in more people walking and biking. Indicators are how we know if that's happening or not. So we know if our mode share for walking and biking is increasing, that more people are walking and biking. And finally, targets are very specific numeric milestones that we want to hit within a specific timeframe. So our target for mode share is to increase walking and biking mode share by 50% by the year 2027. And on the topic of targets, we've divided it into three different areas: mode share, safety, and recognition, and we've spread it over three different timeframes: present, five years from now, and 20 years from now. Chapter 5 talks about implementation and all the things that we can do to make the plan happen with the idea that we don't miss any opportunities that present themselves over the next few years. There are 13 priority actions highlighted in this chapter. Those 13 actions are drawn from Chapter 3, Goals and Policies. The 13 are further divided into four that we can do in the first year or immediately or as soon as we can get to them, as well as nine that we can space out over the next five years, but are still priorities, but we want to hit them fairly soon. This chapter closes with a short discussion about some of the resources in terms of funding and staff that we have available and that we might need for the future as a way of being kind of realistic about expectations and how we roll out this plan and how we implement Chapter 6 covers planning considerations. These are divided into two different sections, one on transportation planning and one on land use and urban form. And I won't go into detail about each bullet point, you can kind of see the range of topics that are covered under each. That second column for land use and urban form is really reflective and in some ways derivative of discussions that are already included about land use and urban form in the regional plan. But what we wanted to do in this document is to draw a direct line between land use and urban form and how that takes place and how that affects walking and biking and vice versa. So it's very explicit in a way that the regional plan is more general. Chapter 7 is design guidance, and this is based on the idea that in planning for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, it's all about getting the details right. So this chapter describes what walking and ped and bike facilities and streets as well ought to look like or how they should function to be supportive of walking and biking. Chapter 8 includes infrastructure recommendations, and here we have a long inventory of where we need new or enhanced facilities for walking and biking. We also prioritize them to make sure that what we're building first is the projects that are most needed and will provide the most benefit. And as part of the infrastructure recommendations, this allows us to figure out what we will build over the next 20 years with the money that we have available primarily through the transportation sales tax and the first mile, last mile grant. Between the two, those two sources, it adds up to about $34.5 million over the next 20 years. Not a bad sum of money. We can do a lot with that, but we want to make sure that we spend it wisely and reflect what the community needs or wants. It also helps us every year, as the city moves through its capital improvement process, to identify the projects that we want to build next year and the year after, to get really detailed about how we implement that infrastructure. I could add a bullet point here that talks about grants and how the Chapter 8 about infrastructure really sets us up to pursue grants and has our priorities identified and projects identified, so we're that much closer to being able to apply for the grants that are applicable. So that's kind of the end of my detailed description about what's in the plan. I did want to close by taking a few moments to describe who this plan is, who in this community this plan is for, who we think this will benefit, because it feels like that that's an important thing to talk about. And really, it's for anyone who wants to reduce their carbon footprint by driving less. I think there's a lot of energy in Flagstaff, a lot of support for carbon neutrality. It's for people who are motivated to improve their health by exercising more. I can speak from personal experience that walking or biking to work or on errands is a great way to sneak in exercise when nobody is noticing, even yourself. For moms and dads who enjoy the time that they spend walking or biking with their kids to school, I know a number of people who do that. For individuals with mobility challenges who might be able to walk or bike to nearby destinations or even to transit stops as a way of improving their mobility and reducing their reliance on mountain lift, paratransit. Still more people, service workers who walk or bicycles because even owning a basic car is unaffordable to them or because transit doesn't serve the hours that they need. Kids who become more independent when they can transport themselves instead of having to rely on their parents to get to places. Some seniors who might no longer drive but could walk or bike to nearby destinations or even to transit stops. And finally, families that find that the housing in Flagstaff could be more attainable if they can drive less or even get rid of a car and reduce the spending that they have on transportation. I think that the groups and the people, individuals, the groups in this list, really speak to two different segments of our community, of our population in Flagstaff. The first one is the 60% that we've talked about before, which we call the Interested But Concerned part of the population. These are people in Flagstaff who would be interested in walking or biking more for transportation, for recreation, but they need to feel safe and we need to provide for them comfortable facilities to kind of get them over that hump and allow them to do that. And the second group that I think it speaks to is all the people in our community who don't drive for a variety of reasons, some by choice, some not so much by choice. But for them, a good part of their mobility is reliant on options other than driving or getting rides, and I think providing better options through walking and biking and transit will enhance their mobility and their ability to get around for their daily needs. So that's all I have on that topic. I look forward to your deliberations, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have in the meantime.
Thank you, Martin. Shmoni doesn't have anything to say, so anyone else? I'll open up the floor to Councilmember Shmoni.
I'll just keep my fingers crossed that council supports it tonight. I think, do we have public comment, Mayor?
Well, we do, yes. So you can have questions, but we'll have the discussion part afterward. So any questions at this time? Not seeing any here. Oh, yep, go for it.
One quick question. Martin, how long have you been working on the ATMP? How many decades?
Is pleading the fifth an option here? It's been, I think we started it kind of in a soft way in 2014.
Thank you.
It's been a few years.
When he rode his first bicycle, that's when he started. Any questions?
Thank you, Martin. I am supportive, but I do have one question. It seems that now that electric motorbikes are becoming very common and their speed is substantially faster than a pedal bicycle, at least that's what I've seen around town, do you have any concerns or does this plan have anything that addresses the, what might be considered incompatibility of very fast-moving bikes on sidewalks and footstrails and paths that previously were pedal bikes, which are fairly slow, and pedestrians? There's a big difference in speed between pedestrians and electric motorbikes.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember McCarthy, the plan talks about it kind of in general terms, about micromobility, meaning different forms of transportation from e-bikes to scooters to skateboards to hoverboards that are typically powered electrically. And so what it talks about is being open to the opportunity that they present in terms of improving mobility for people in a way that doesn't involve having to drive a vehicle around, but also being sensitive to existing walkers and bikers and the compatibilities that you mentioned. And it describes a little bit about how space is allocated for different uses, from vehicles to pets and bikes. And I think part of the reason that we have concerns is that in some respects, we think of the space that's allocated for walking and biking as not always adequate, even under current conditions. And so for being asked to share with additional users who may, you know, have different needs or travel at different speeds or operate in a different way, it becomes kind of a difficult conversation. So I can't say that we provide a lot of good answers, but it raises those questions and asks us to kind of keep an open mind and move forward with walking and biking and embracing micromobility, but making sure that it is compatible with other walking and biking.
Right, so I have read the plan, and I guess my only point is that in the future, we may have to get a little more involved in that detail. For now, I think we're fine, but in the future, that's something that may create the need for modifications, but.
I think that's true.
You'll be ready to do that, I'm sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis, did you? Please go ahead.
Well, first of all, much gratitude to your work and leadership on this process. I know it's been a long process and with highly involved community and engagement. So my question is, how is the ATMP interface with the MetroPlan stride forward, which is also in the process of being a finalization and I think with additional studies and a public outreach, because the stride forward has also the travel demand strategies as on the upward, the upward strategies which promote work and less driving. However, so far, in the last presentation to MetroPlan, the proposal so far will involve $53 million in terms of quadrupling bicyclists and pedestrian facilities, and that is on top of $419, which is $29 million plus the $5 million from first mile, last mile grant. So I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud here in terms of how is ATMP going to be interfaced with the MetroPlan stride forward? And also, I'm also looking forward for it to be integrated with the regional plan update, which is in process as well.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilmember Solis. The two, we have been sharing information, and I think that will be reflected, that's reflected in the draft ATMP before you, and I think it will be reflected in the final draft of MetroPlan stride forward document. So for example, we provided them with all of our infrastructure recommendations and digital data that goes along with that, so they can use that as part of their planning. We provide some of the information about goals and policies and the details for walking and biking that I think will be reflected in stride forward in one of the, hopefully both of the scenarios, but at least in the second one. They can help provide a little bit of detail that we just hint at in the ATMP. For example, you mentioned the travel demand management, so they get into more detail about what that means or what that might look like for Flagstaff, as we don't get into as much detail. So we've been. So we've been sharing ideas and sharing data and kind of cooperating, and I expect that that the stride forward document will include a lot of the same discussion. To take that a step further, I think a lot of the information or the policies or the goals or the objectives will be reflected in the regional plan update as well. Regional plan is going to cover a lot of ground, you know, a lot more than transportation. So I think some of it will be with less detail, but I think the overall theme should be reflected there.
Thank you. Any other questions? With that, we can go to public participation, and I have Kate Morley here. Our newly reappointed Transportation Commissioner as of today. Chair, well, appointed.
Mayor, Council, thank you for reappointing me today. I appreciate that. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of Mountain Line in support of the ATMP. We're very excited to see this plan hopefully be adopted tonight and move forward. We are grateful for the level of involvement the Mountain Line has had in the development of the plan. We've been invited to participate along the way. We're also grateful for the consideration of transit and the prioritization of the improvements that are in the plan, and we really commend the extensive public outreach that has gone into this. And so we just wanted to show tonight and make sure that council knew that we were very supportive of this and that all transit riders really start on bike, bikes or on foot. And so this pedestrian and bike network is very important to the success of Mountain Line, and we're grateful to see it implemented or we're hopeful to see it implemented in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. I have Susan Lefter.
Good evening to Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Susan Heffley. I live in Coconino Estates for almost 30 years. I am the Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Commission, but I am speaking tonight on my own behalf. Wow. Finally, we have completed the ATMP. We've been working on it since I can't remember when, as long as I've been on the Bike Advisory Commission. But here we are, and after a fiery and floody summer that has devastated so much of flagstaff, the ATMP has never been needed more. When the City Council passed the Emergency Climate Declaration and our Carbon Neutrality Goals in 2020, I thought, this is it. An incredible opportunity to help flag meet its goals and to enlist an eager community of flag citizen cyclists who want to bike more for their own and flags' physical, mental, and fiscal health, their sustainability, and security. It bears repeating that most communities include 60% of the public that are interested in biking more if they felt safer and more protected. Most folks already own bikes. Many communities have the same challenges as flagstaff: snowy winters, challenging weather, a demanding car-centric history, and an infrastructure that wasn't originally planned for bicycles. But they have priorities prioritized bike friendliness over the never demanding demands of cars, and thus we have places like Boulder, Portland, and Amsterdam to aspire to. Let flagstaff be the pinnacle of cycling to safety for all of Arizona and the Southwest. We have worked so hard for this day, and I believe the ATMP has good support from the council. But approving this plan is only the beginning. I beg the council to be actively supporting this plan. Don't let it rest on the shelves, but begin implementing our carefully thought-out plans as quickly as you can. So many folks are waiting for their streets and paths to safely get them to their destination. Building infrastructure is only one aspect of our plan. Build it, and the cyclists will come. Educate them, and more cyclists will come. Maintain it, and they will stay. Every person we get out of a car and onto a bike or their feet creates a cascading sequence of benefits for our precious town. Thank you. I also want to thank Councilman Shmoni and McCarthy for attending many of our bike advisory meetings, and huge thanks go to Martin for leading this thing for so many years. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Susan. And we have online participants.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have one for online public comment. Michelle, you can go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Great. Hello, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. I'm very excited about tonight and just want to let you guys know that Friends of Flagstaff's Future fully supports this Active Transportation Management Plan. And the vision and desire have long been in place for flagstaff to provide safe, accessible, and connected pathways for walking and biking. Implementing this vision has been difficult and disjointed without a citywide analysis and the development of specific details and priorities. The ATMP provides these necessary details and priorities for the infrastructure flagstaff needs to become more pedestrian and bike-friendly. The ATMP promotes and supports the big shift outlined in the Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan, and the ATMP will be a guide for best practices when pedestrian bicycle facilities are included as part of city capital projects such as roadways and intersections. This is a critical component of transportation planning and will flip the status quo to prioritizing pedestrians, bicycles, and other wheeled transport, along with public transportation. FQ would like to commend the work of Martin Ince, who led this multi-year effort. I didn't realize how how multi-year it was there, Martin. The Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and everyone else who assisted in writing the plan. And we support the AMTP and encourage council to adopt the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And I see that's our last public participant, so happy to open it up to discussion for council. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Martin, thank you so much for the work on this. It's amazing, and to hear how long this has been in the works is really, really impressive. The other thing that really stood out to me is is really impressive in the drafting and development of this plan was the variety of commissions and groups that this went before. I think that's a really important thing to call forward because as we're talking about increasing inclusivity and equity and supporting the diversity of our community, to see these different groups that this went before, it includes the Beautification and Public Art Commission, the Commission on Diversity Awareness, the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living, the Housing Commission, Open Spaces Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning and Zoning, Sustainability, and Tourism Commissions. That's impressive, and that's really, really important, I think, for the conversations that we're having in developing Flagstaff's future, to ensure that this is a place that is truly enhancing and protecting the quality of life for all in this community. So thank you for this work. Thank you to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committees for their work, and I look forward to the rest of our council discussion on this. Thanks.
You, Councilmember House, Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Shmoni.
Beat you to it. I also wanted to thank Martin and everyone involved in this and just give you all a personal perspective. For me, I've lived here almost 30 years. I have an electric bike. I ride it almost every day. I have not had any issues, Mr. McCarthy, not yet anyway. And, you know, our town has changed, but I think we're in the right direction, and I I just thank you for helping us stay that way. And not only am I biking, but I'm also running on our streets now. I'm training for a half marathon, all two of them, and I feel I feel safe. And I look forward to watching this this progress and future developments, and I I just am excited. I'm excited for Flagstaff. Like, we are going in the right direction, and thank you.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shmoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, I don't know if I feel safe on the roads, but I'm glad you do. You know, I'm so grateful, Martin, to you and the different committees and the commissions and all the different partners and community members that have been involved with this over the years. Jeff, thank you for your support in all this, too. I know that Martin's got a strong team behind him, supporting him and cheering him on, Nicole, Jenny. I mean, we can continue to list off the many, many staff members and community members, but this has been a long time coming. You know, I see our former mayor in the back of the room, Coral Evans, is in the house. And I remember my first year on council, and I think Councilmember McCarthy will appreciate this and Salas, you know, I was up here flailing, trying to adjust things and fix things. And I remember in my one-on-ones with Coral, she'd say, Adam, you got to see that ATMP through. And I said, okay. I met with Martin. We talked about it. And and she said, well, can you see if you can get it through before summer break? And I was like, yeah, sure, no problem. Summer break came and went, next year came and went, next summer break came and went. And and I kind of was like, you know, the city's accommodating the ATMP. Jeff and the team are looking at those recommendations and running with them. But it is so good to be here tonight, and I am so excited that this is being achieved by us tonight. So really grateful to the current mayor and council for your support and 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 really to staff and Martin for working so hard on this. This has been many, many years in the making. So we have had, as as others mentioned, others mentioned, we've had many planning documents like this in the past dating back to 1980, and and they've sat on the shelf and they haven't been implemented. So I'm really hoping with the ATMP that's not the case and that history won't repeat itself with this. And so how do we do that? How do we make sure that this isn't just something that is just put on the shelf? You know, ultimately, it's going to come down to funding. And so I do want to take a moment just to plant a seed for this next council's funding discussions of of the budget. You know, I was talking to Jeremy DeGater during the break, and he goes, we need 10 Martins. And I was like, yes, we do. And so I want to plant a seed and say, you know, maybe not 10 right away, but two to five, I think, is what we should be working towards, council, in the next five years, starting immediately. And so, you know, two to five full-time employees who can work as travel demand management individuals and also planners to help Martin divide and conquer the work that he and the team need to do. You know, the Transportation Commission and Jeff, I know that you've talked about the need to grow our team and Martin's team. And so I really want to make a call to the council and the community that this upcoming budget cycle, let's let's do that. Let's expand from one to three or one to four and then slowly build up, right? And the other component of the funding is just the Vision Zero that we recently talked about. As we know, that's going to be very costly, so and I think that money can come out of 419. So I'm hoping that council will have those discussions during the budget. I'll be here as a member of the public, and I really hope that we can at least see those two things through: Vision Zero and additional support for full-time employees. Last 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 question is, Martin, where's the party at? Thank you, and and really looking forward to this getting seen through tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmoni. Councilmember House, and then McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very enthusiastic about this plan. I believe this, the ATMP will be the mind, body, and soul of a fully integrated multimodal transportation system. I really do. Let's get this approved.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, I've sat through a lot of meetings on this subject, and I just want to thank everyone over the years, staff and members of commissions and committees, for all the hard work that went into this, and I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, the hard part's done. Now, the easy part for you, Martin, is just finding $200 million, so it's all it's all easy skating from here. And while we're getting a cloning device for Martin, if we could take care of that front row altogether right there, that would be great. So anyways, a lot of amazing employees that have worked really hard on this and provided the support, and I'm very appreciative. So with that, I'm going to pass the torch to the man who needs to make the motion.
Wow, I feel so honored. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to read Resolution Number 2022-50 by title only.
Well, as the representative to the Transportation Commission and as a City Council member, I second that.
Motion by Councilmember Shmoni, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Councilmember Salas.
And as Vice Chair of the Statewide Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, I am your person in bringing state and federal dollars to this plan.
Thirded by Councilmember Salas. Any further discussion?
I want to put Regina in charge of getting us some funding.
Sounds good. It's going to take all our efforts on that front. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Excellent.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, you got to read.
I'll need to read it.
All right, go for it.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council adopting the Active Transportation Master Plan.
May I remove that we adopt Resolution Number 2022-50?
I second that motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilmember Shmoni, followed, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Excellent. We are now down to Agenda Item 12D. This is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2022-52. Resolution of the Flagstaff City Council requiring that new construction and major renovation of all city-owned non-housing section occupied facilities achieve emissions-neutral operations, and that these same facilities shall be designed to support one or more functions of a community resilience hub, to support vulnerable community members during disruptive events, and that in the event that a city-owned building or property is being vacated by the city, that the housing section first have the opportunity to evaluate the property and determine the feasibility of repurposing or developing in a manner that supports increasing the number of available and affordable housing units in repealing Resolution Number 2014-09.
That is a mouthful when you say it.
Yeah, we'll see if myself or Salzberg can read it faster. Oh, it's wigging out.
No problem.
Ramon, if you can try again to share that. That looks good.
Yep, please proceed.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Ramon V.C. Alatori, climate analyst here, once again to present the revisions to the Sustainable Building Resolution, which today is available for consideration for adoption. As this topic was on the agenda two weeks ago and the amendments made since then are relatively minor, my intention today is to be quite brief. Here you will see the agenda. After a single background slide, I will summarize the revisions and additions, as well as highlight the changes made since I was last here on October 18th. It will then be up to council to discuss and consider the matter for adoption. The Sustainable Building Resolution was first adopted in 2008. Since then, it has served as a policy document that outlines the performance standards that the city will adhere to as an organization when commissioning the construction of new occupied buildings or undertaking major renovations of existing occupied buildings. The Sustainable Building Resolution has always set an organizational standard that is beyond code. It has always contained language that explicitly recognizes and values the role of municipal leadership. The Sustainable Building Resolution has been revised once in 2014. Today, following months-long process with an interdepartmental crew that included representation from community development, facilities, housing, real estate, sustainability, the Sustainable Building Resolution has been updated for the first time in eight years to improve alignment with recently adopted policies, plans, and other documents. This slide highlights the policies and documents that guided the revisions to the Sustainable Building Resolution. Once again, they are listed here in the order that they were adopted by council. This week, I will not re-highlight the specific connections to each of these. I will simply reemphasize that updating policy documents such as the Sustainable Building Resolution is exactly the kind of action envisioned by the adoption of these resolutions and documents. This slide summarizes the three main goals of the proposed revisions and updates. These I will unpack in the next three slides. The first goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from city buildings. This is accomplished by the trifecta of energy efficiency, clean electricity, and appropriate building electrification. The updated Sustainability Building Resolution maintains the same minimum certification and/or performance pathways as the starting point in terms of providing guidance for the envelope, insulation, materials used, and things of that nature. In addition, in most cases, it is expected that an all-electric design will be a viable approach. It is acknowledged that depending on the building type and function, there may there may be some highly energy-intensive processes that are currently incompatible with all-electric operation. However, low-grade space heating is not expected to be one of these incompatible processes. Finally, the Sustainable Building Resolution both defines and calls for emissions-neutral operations and notes that all-electric designs will adhere to this standard so long as the city continues to participate in the Green Power Partners Program with APS. These updates are captured in Sections 1, 2, and 3 of the Be It Resolved section of the red-lined Sustainable Building Resolution. The second goal is to increase community resilience by ensuring that new buildings include amenities to support vulnerable residents during disruptive weather or other extreme events. Buildings with these supporting amenities are described as resilience hubs or as having resilience hub functionality. Some illustrative examples of what might constitute resilience hub functionality are listed on the slide. As previously mentioned, it was noted by the steering committee and multiple commissions that many existing municipal buildings could be great resilience hub candidates, however, they are not covered by the Sustainable Building Resolution due to the resolution's focus on major building and property lifecycle touchpoints, those being new construction, major renovation, as well as now vacating of the site. This does not mean that the city shouldn't consider making these types of investments in community resilience outside of these lifestyle touchpoints. However, it was determined that keeping the scope of the Sustainable Building Resolution focused on these touchpoints was the appropriate course of action. These updates are captured in Section 4 of the Be It Resolved section. And the third goal is to support increasing the number of available and affordable housing units in the city. Section 5 of the Be It Resolved describes a process that directs the housing section to evaluate buildings and properties being vacated by the city to determine the feasibility of repurposing or developing in a manner that supports this goal. The Sustainable Building Resolution lists a few specific strategies to consider, though this should not be considered exhaustive. By prioritizing this process, the housing section, in coordination with real estate and other departments, will be able to consider any number of creative options, as well as unique restrictions that may arise with each building or property. This penultimate slide highlights the changes that have been made to the red-line document since I presented on October 18th. Both changes occur in the whereas section. No changes were made to the enactment section. We discussed the changes to whereas number seven last time. Councilmember McCarthy had provided guidance on simplifying language and reducing redundancy. Now these changes are formally reflected in the red-line document as well as the final document. Whereas number 12 is an addition that has been made based on Councilmember Salas's comments and her recognition of the alignment between Economic Vitality's Adaptive Reuse Program and the Sustainable Building Resolution, specifically the inherent sustainability of repurposing existing buildings. With that, I will bring the presentation to a conclusion. Thank you again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Be happy to hand this over to you all for the next steps, and I'm available for any questions or clarifications.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Or up for discussion? We don't have any participation cards, so.
Good. I just want to thank you for working with me on simplifying the language without changing the intent in the slightest way. Thank you very much. I am supportive, of course.
Thank you for your support.
Councilmember Salas.
I echo the gratitude to staff in corroborating my suggestion. The last time we had this discussion about interfacing with our adaptive reuse program, this program with our Economic Vitality team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to entertain a motion at this point. Or I'm going to do it. Better someone better jump on. Councilmember House.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to read Resolution Number 2022-52 by title only.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. City Clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council requiring that new construction and major renovation of all city-owned non-housing section occupied facilities achieve emissions-neutral operations, and that these same facilities shall be designed to support one or more functions of a community resilience hub, to support vulnerable community members during disruptive events, and that in the event that a city-owned building or property is being vacated by the city, that the housing section first have the opportunity to evaluate the property and determine the feasibility of repurposing or developing in a manner that supports increasing the number of available and affordable units, affordable housing units, and repealing Resolution Number 2014-09.
Thank you, City Clerk. I said it faster, but Councilmember House.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-52.
I second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sustainability Team. All right. We are now down to Agenda Item 12E. Consideration and adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-29. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, mending Section 1-07-001-0005 salaries of the Flagstaff City Code and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just pulling up my presentation. Thank you for the brief pause. Shannon Anderson, your senior deputy city manager. And for this particular purpose, I was also serving as your human resources director. That's the position that supports this work with the Commission on Council Salaries. So to start with a little bit of background, the City Code on Council Salaries outlines the current compensation and the process for requesting a change in council salaries. Current compensation for our mayor is a salary of $38,500 in this code, and it also includes a $250 per month or $3,000 per year routine travel and meal stipend. There's also an option of the mayor choosing a car that's insured and maintained by the city, and then this stipend is reduced to $150 per month or $1,800 per year. The current compensation for council members, which does include the vice mayor, is a salary of $25,500 and $166 per month or $1,0992 per year routine travel and meal stipend. Mayor and council members are also eligible to participate in the employ and dependent insurance on the same terms and conditions as a city employee. This includes our health, dental, life, and state retirement system. On January 7th of 2020, Ordinance 2019-39 was adopted by council. And this means that salaries would be reviewed upon the request of the majority of council rather than a process that would be endured every four years. In February of the same year, a request was made by the majority of council, so city staff began outreach to fill this Commission on Council Salaries. There was a struggle to add the four additional community members, two at large and one that is specific to the human resources profession. So upon receiving enough applications, we brought those forward so that council could appoint the four community members. This occurred in April of 2022. Between June and August of the same year, we met with the Planning and Zoning, Parks and Recreation, Tourism, Water, and Transportation Commissions to appoint their members to serve on the Citizen Commission of Council Salaries, in addition to those four community members that you appointed. The Commission held its first meeting in September and met four times to consider the information and form their recommendation. The commissioners were provided an example of work for both mayor and council. This was information that's described in our city charter, our city code, along with other roles such as the Commission Council Liaison, as well as participation in partner agency meetings. In addition, they considered data such as the municipal and county benchmarks, consumer price index from August of 2022, what's minimum wage here in our community, the cost of living, and living wage data. In order to inform the community about the process and invite them to share their feedback, a specific webpage was created. A form was added to support written input, and a press release was provided on October 3rd. The Commission's recommendations include a salary increase for the mayor from $38,500 to $54,340 following the election this year, and a second increase from that same $54,340 to $70,180 effective in December of 2024. For council members, and again, including the vice mayor, the recommended increase following the election is going from $25,500 to $44,650, and then $63,800 effective December of 2024. The purpose of doing two increases was to phase these increases in over time rather than having a large jump at once. The stipend recommendations include a $50 per month increase for the mayor for, again, the routine travel and meal stipend that's included in the city code, and a $34 per month for the council stipends. The commissioners are recommending the retention of the vehicle option for the position of mayor. This slide articulates the reasons for the recommendations provided by the commissioners. The Commission recognized the irregular schedule of council members with Tuesday meetings, retreats, and events throughout the year, and support to commissions and other agencies, and how difficult it may be to fit this in with a normal work schedule. These recommended salaries also compensate council members for their time spent fulfilling their duties to meet community expectations. It recognizes the role, their responsibility, and the impact of council decisions. This provides a sustainable wage that has the ability to attract quality and diverse candidates to serve on council. The salaries being recommended align council salaries closer to the County Board of Supervisors, which are elected officials within the same area, and these rates are set in Arizona Revised Statute 11-419. The recommendation continues the differential between council members and the mayor, but it is less given the Board of Supervisors and Chair of the Board of Supervisors earn the same wage under that same state statute. So that's the presentation I have for you today. Certainly, I'm able to attempt to answer your questions best I can based on the conversations that the commissioners had during those meetings.
Well, actually, let's do public participation first, and then we'll do questions, because on this one, I think it's going to be a little mixed from questions to discussion. So, thank you, Shannon, and we'll start with Jeffrey McCurl.
Highly strategic note system here. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you all for your service to this beautiful community. Thank you for allowing me to share here tonight. I'm here to advocate for the increase in this. And I was just sitting back there thinking, how awkward do you all must feel having somebody just talk about how much you get paid, right, in a room full of people? But anyway, I look at these numbers, and I've been neglectful. I didn't even realize they were what they were until recently. And I see numbers that do not create a place for diversity in the type of people that can run for these positions. These don't feel like livable wages to me. As I look at them, as I talk with friends, as I consider other professional positions, I've had, these numbers are not commensurate with those numbers. And, you know, I believe that increasing these wages will create a space where we can have a more diverse council. I think, as I look at council today, it's very diverse, and I love that. But the cost of living in Flagstaff is not going down, as far as I've seen. And I believe it's going to eventually create a situation where unless you're retired, unless you own a business, unless you're independently wealthy, or unless you're willing to do the Flagstaff four-job side hustle, how are you going to be able, how's a single mother going to be able to run for one of these positions and feel comfortable that she's going to be able to provide a life for herself and her child? I just look at all of these, and I wonder how it's gone on so far. And I just would ask you to consider that this is not just about you and your position, but future councils, future mayorships. And as we continue to see cost of living go up and up and up, I feel like these numbers, you know, I heard kind of a whistle when someone said $70,180. Professional positions of commensurate responsibility are well within that number. You know, the mayor of Flagstaff oversees the needs and wants of 80,000 people, and I don't think that a number like that, we've done so much hard work in this city to work towards livable wages, including increasing the minimum wage. I know there's been recent increases to staff salaries here in the city. And I fully believe that this will be a positive movement for creating diversity and creating more opportunity for people.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thanks.
Kyle Nitschke.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff. My name's Kyle Nitschke. Thank you so much for the opportunity to have me speak today. Actually, had the opportunity to serve on the council for commission salaries. I just wanted to take the time to, one, like, highlight the experience. The first commission I ever sat on was an incredible experience, really, to see how much work that city staff does put into support all the work that the commissions and city council do. And then just to see city government play out. I don't know. It was fun. It was fun as well, too. It was a good time. But let me get back to what I wanted to say. I'm really, really supportive of the direction that we kind of ended up with. I want to address kind of a couple of concerns that I'd seen online. One is that we're kind of voting on our own salaries and stuff, and this is for the future as well. And the reason we kind of split it up into two bits. One was touched on. But the other bit is that our folks who were elected in 2020 are going to be making that current $25,000 salary through their full term. They won't get this initial raise, is my understanding. So I think that was part of the reason that it was split up as well, too. We got touched on, like, the professional standard of living is at that wage. But we know that some city staff, that our teachers, are not making that amount. They need a raise, too. But there's no reason that you guys also shouldn't get a raise. We do need more professional city council. We need more qualified candidates. I think we see that this year. I mean, I think you can point out a couple of different things as some reasons why we don't have a full slate on our ballot this year. But I think the salary is one of those huge reasons. I wanted to touch on kind of where we are statewide here. I'm very nervous about where our statewide politics are going. We've got, really, where our state legislature is going. And so we really, really need a strong city council and mayor over this next decade, for sure. One, to stand up to state government potentially in some situations, but also to be liaisons to the federal government. You know, I think our senators and congressmen aren't going to want to meet with our crazy state house and state senate representatives. We're going to need a strong mayor and strong city council. And so we need folks who are prepared to do the job. And I think this raise is going to make it so that we have more qualified candidates. Thanks so much for the time.
Thank you, Kyle. I have a couple of questions here. Councilmember McCarthy and then Councilmember Shmoni.
Thank you, Kyle. We got from the Assistant City Manager a list of 17 cities and what they're paying their mayors and council. I was curious if you know, and if you don't, I'll go to Shannon. What does the legislature pay, just for?
Yeah, legislature doesn't pay any, I mean, it pays the same as city council here, $24,000 a year. And I think that's some of the reason we see so much corruption at our state legislature. And then also, like, you know, if we pay too much, are we going to have these legislators on for forever and ever? You know, we have currently at $24,000 at the state legislature. These guys hang on to power for years and years and years, even with term limits.
You answered my question, well. Thank you.
Councilmember Shmoni.
Thank you, Mayor. And Kyle, thank you for being here and your service on that commission. Really appreciate that. So Kyle, I know that you all met four times and had lots of discussion and debate about the job, the salary, what should be. Can you speak a little bit as to why you all came to the numbers you came to and not $45,000 or $50,000? Why $63,800, and why did you feel, as a commission? I know you can't Why, why sixty-three eight, and why did you feel, as a commission, I know you can't speak on behalf of the commission, but from your perspective, that that was appropriate for council members? You know, I know we're not necessarily getting ahead or buying a home, but that's a significant jump from where we're at today.
Absolutely. So we did look at all the city wages, the different municipalities and stuff like that, and that was something we considered, but what we wanted to really tie it to was the city county supervisors. We talked a lot about the work that you guys both do, and we were like, city council and county supervisors do a pretty similar job, just city council gets a lot more flack. You guys deal with a lot more crap in public, and also, I want to note that county supervisors are getting a raise in twenty-four to get up to, I don't know if it's eighty or ninety thousand, but they will be making more than you. Don't, don't worry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Cool. Thank you all.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council members, city manager and staff. Appreciate you having me this evening. This topic is very important to me. As you know, you may remember me from Habitat for Humanity, but I'm not wearing that hat tonight. So housing's always number one, public schools is number two, democracy for me is number three. So what I want to see happen is, I want to instill the, or take away, the fear of giving yourselves a raise. You deserve it. You should get a raise. I don't know the last time that you guys got a raise, but it was probably at least fifteen years ago. So if you look at our minimum wage compared to our, then compared to now, I think it might be an appropriate ratio. The importance of paying our elected officials, especially for all of you at the diocese, a living wage, or at least an appropriate wage, is simply due to the fact that we need a greater representation of people on council. We're now talking about exclusion, equity, and diversity. Yes, we have some diversity on this council, and that's fantastic, but I don't see economic diversity on this council, and that's what we need more of. We have a lot of impoverished people in Flagstaff, they don't have a voice. I question you, how many of you have nine-to-five shift jobs, where you cannot leave your work except for when your supervisor gives you that break? You can't, right? This is what I'm talking about. You deserve more money. You're making important decisions for all of us, and it, and it really should come from a diverse background of people, those that are affected negatively, and those are affected positively in Flagstaff. We were talking about statewide compensation and things like that. I believe that's part of our problems in our politics statewide. We need more diversification. We need less gray hair. We need youth, and that's very, very important. In order to do that, you need to have compensation to be able to afford your family, afford your gas, and everything else that comes with it. I also want to make one other comment. It's known that the minimum wage, you cannot buy a house in Flagstaff. You guys are making less than minimum wage. How are you guys going to buy a house in Flagstaff, right? Only one person's shaking his head because he doesn't own a house in Flagstaff. So, you can see there's a big disparity here. My recommendation, vote with your gut, know that you've got a new council coming forward soon, and you should vote with the expectations you want to see them in your seats for the last two or four years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Lots of smiling faces when Coral comes down.
Mayor, vice mayor, council, city leadership, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this particular topic tonight. Leadership, true leadership, recognizes the importance of and the need for diversity. And they also recognize that diversity is more than skin color or gender. Diversity means a diversity of interest, thoughts, ideas, values, cultures, backgrounds, skill sets, lived experience, education, and work history. The job of a public servant requires tremendous dedication and time. In my humble opinion, it is a noble one, and one that the compensation needs to reflect the value of the work that is being done, the decisions being made, and the skill set that this community has come to expect. For me, it was an absolute honor and privilege to have been an elected official here in the community that I grew up in. With the exception of very few individuals, myself being one, historically, our city, for someone to have the ability to serve in the leadership role, you would have had to come from privilege. You would have had to come from wealth. You either came from wealth, had wealth, or had access to wealth. I would like for you to consider the following as you weigh your decision tonight. Is it equitable for only those who have privilege, those who either come from wealth, have wealth, or have access to wealth? Is it equitable that those people, those people should be the only ones in our city to have the privilege and honor of serving on council or as mayor? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Oh, councilmember Schmoni has a question for you.
Coral, I do have a question for you. Thank you for being here with us. If you care to share, you know, I, I know that you personally, in your service, had to work multiple jobs. Would you mind sharing what your reality was to, to serve as a council member for the city, and then as our mayor for two terms?
It was absolutely an honor and a privilege for me to be not only on council, but mayor here in the city of Flagstaff. And I want to make sure that I over, that you overstand that. I would also say, as your mayor, I worked a total of four jobs. One job, many of you may know, I worked in a bar as a DJ. The reason why I worked in the bar as a DJ is because most people didn't need a mayor from nine o'clock at night to sometimes three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning. Often, I would leave the bar, go home, you know, take a quick nap, and then be here at city hall at eight o'clock in the morning. I was fortunate enough to find an employer and a job that fit that schedule. Not everybody has that opportunity. I will tell you in previous councils, you had people who almost lost jobs because of the council schedule that they were required to attend. You know, when you have things like budget hearings that take three days, at some point, you run out of vacation time.
Thank you. Next is Mackenzie Jones.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mackenzie Jones, twenty-one twenty-one North Talkington Drive. Mayor Evans is a tough act to follow, but I'm here tonight because I served on the commission for council salaries. And first, I just wanted to thank Shannon Anderson for all of her work as our staff liaison to the commission. We, we gave her a lot of tough questions and a lot of research, and she really supported us as we were trying to figure out what a fair and equitable wage would be for city council. I do know that this conversation sometimes gets framed as you all voting on your own salaries, but as everyone has said, and I'm going to say again, it's voting on future council salaries, and that's quite literally why you had a citizens' commission, was so that we could have that conversation, and that we could do that research, and that we, as, as residents of this community, could think through those difficult questions. Because I realize it is awkward for you, and so this decision isn't about you, though, right? So we've been framing it as about you, it's not about you, it's about the people who can't be up here and who can't serve on the city council, because they can't make it work financially on the current salary. So I think that you have the opportunity tonight to shape future councils for decades, and it takes a little bit of political courage, which is a weird thing to say to people when you're telling them to give themselves a raise, but it does, right? It takes a little bit of political courage to think about all the people who aren't in the room tonight. So I believe in you. I believe you can do this, and I'm super excited to see the work that you're going to continue to do in shaping this diverse community. So thank you for all of your work, and good luck with your decision.
Thank you, Mackenzie. And we have online participants.
Mayor and council, I have four people on for public comment tonight. Our first commenter is Anthony Garcia. Anthony, you can go ahead and address mayor and council.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Anthony Garcia. Twenty twelve Center, Center Street. Forgive me, but I didn't realize that this conversation was going to stir up so much emotion in me, but I'm not speaking from an emotional place, it just kind of solidified where I'm at in my life and where I'd like to be. I live paycheck to paycheck. I represent the blue collar worker, and I, in the last year, have had some struggles. And because of those struggles, I had to choose, you know, a better-paying job, one that wouldn't allow me to be as committed to the community as I want to be. And, and the, I really wanted to run for city council, but there was no way possible that I could stay living in Flagstaff and commit one hundred percent of myself as a full-time city council person, and that's the reason why I did it. And that was really hard for me, and those of you who know me, it, you know that that was a difficult choice to make, to choose simply, you know, living and having a place to live, as opposed to, you know, serving the community and, and being homeless, basically. You know, when you, when you are in the situation that I'm in, living paycheck to paycheck as a blue collar, for lack of a better term, worker. So I just wanted to add my personal perspective on that, and again, forgive me for the emotions, I did not know it was going to affect me, but I'm glad the conversation did, because it means something. I also wanted to, to, to mention that you guys don't do a part-time job, you know, at, at bare, at the bare minimum, you guys work full-time, but I know many of you work even more than that. I hope that you keep this conversation, you know, in the, in the equity and inclusivity, you know, portion, instead of just purely economics, because you're not voting on your salary, like many people have said, you're voting on the opportunity for other folks like myself, who, you know, have to work and, and live paycheck to paycheck. You're voting on giving a whole other demographic voice, a very important voice, an opportunity to have a seat at the table. And I think, I think Coral mentioned it earlier, we always look at diversity, you know, when it comes to like ethnicity and orientation, but we also need to think of socioeconomic diversity. There are some very important voices that need to be at those tables that are right now serving tables, instead of sitting at the table. So thank you for having this conversation. I also wanted to quickly mention, if I have time.
Real quick, councilmember Schmoni has a question, and I'm sure you can roll it into that, but procedurally.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Schmoni.
Anthony, thank you so much for taking the time to call in and your service to our commissions, to our community, and to your efforts running for office. We appreciate it, I appreciate it, and I, I so appreciate your emotions and your passion for Flagstaff. Anthony, I'm curious, from your perspective, as someone who's run for council and is so engaged, what do you think, if council were to adopt this recommendation, and the salary were to go to sixty-three eight hundred for council members, for, for you personally as a, as a candidate of recent, and also for the community at large, what do you think that would do? Would, when you, when you think of a council salary of sixty-three eight hundred, would, would that seem more reasonable to you as a member of the community, living paycheck to paycheck? And what do you think that our community and our workforce, how, will they respond to that opportunity?
Well, I can't speak necessarily to how they would respond to that opportunity, but it's having a livable wage, having, being able to transition from a, a position where currently that's about what I make, and I, and I'm able to make it here, and to be able to transition directly to the same wage would be perfect, you know, you know, in a perfect world. I also wanted to kind of touch on some of the pushback, and the pushback is that people are going to want to just be council members for the money. And anybody who has run for office, all you guys know this, I know it myself, there, I mean, I dedicated fifteen months prior to the process, hundreds, if not a thousand hours of volunteer time before the process. People, if they're looking for just the money, they're going to be weeded out throughout the process itself, in just how much time it takes and how much commitment it takes, and then eventually, the voters are going to be the ones who decide, and they're going to choose the, the, the person that put in the most work and who that they feel is going to represent them best. So on the side of maybe this is too much money, or people are going to be chasing a buck, we could, I feel like we can eliminate that argument because of how much time you have to put into the process just to get elected. It would, it, it would mean the world to, to be able to have a seamless transition where you can actually afford to pay your bills and still be a, a, a council member, and it'd give you the opportunity to be a full-time council member, as opposed to, oh, that was my struggle, I, I couldn't, with a, with a clear conscience and a, in a good heart, dedicate myself to being a part-time council member, and that broke my heart. Thank you for the question, Adam, and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Next participant?
Our next commenter is Heather Marcy. Heather, you may go ahead and address mayor and council.
Good evening, mayor, council, vice mayor, city manager and staff. Thank you for having me. I'm Heather Marcy, here as a private citizen. I do want to thank Dr. Evans and Anthony for sharing your stories, they're so impactful, and just shine this perspective, I think, on this topic specifically. So I wrote you all a letter, I'm going to try and keep it shorter tonight, but I, I felt it was important to share my thoughts publicly, because I know asking for a raise and considering approving a raise for yourself comes with some really big interpersonal challenges, and so I wanted to match that with just some public support for how, how difficult that can be. You all have very important jobs, and you make big decisions in a relatively quick amount of time. Additionally, you all are everywhere, you work early, you work late, you work weekends, many of you are working during the last council break, I see you at every community event that I attend, and then I see how many others you attend through social media. You truly have a never-ending job. So tonight, I want you to think about the issue as if you were reviewing a job description, and, and if that job description listed all of your duties and commitments and came with a salary of twenty-five-five, I think we would all agree that's not enough. I completely believe that this is a diversity, equity, and inclusion issue, and I think you're really going to see a more diverse candidate pool, should you adopt the commission's recommendations. And my last thought to share with you tonight is that I, I think it makes sense for voters to decide who sits in the seat, and I think it makes sense for the unbiased commission to make an evidence-based decision on what the rate is for the people sitting in the seat. You are worthy, you work hard, you deserve the amount recommended by the commission, and so do the folks that will serve after you. Thank you all, be safe, and take good care.
Thank you, Heather. Next participant?
Next, I have Michelle James. Michelle, you can go ahead and address mayor and council.
Great. Turn on my camera here. Yeah, there it goes. So hello, mayor, vice mayor, and council, I'm Michelle James, executive director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. I want to tell you that the Board of Friends, Friend of, excuse me, the Board of Friends of Flagstaff's Future fully supports the proposed ordinance to increase the yearly salaries of the mayor and council members to the full amount recommended by the citizens, citizen on council salaries, the commission. The citizens' commission was formed to consider pertinent information in relation to the topic of increasing these salaries. Their recommendations included and considered, among other things, municipal and county benchmark data, the responsibilities of council members, their critical role they play, and the impact of their decisions on our community. Flagstaff should be paying for our top decision-makers to make a wage reflective of the job they are doing. Importantly, the commission-recommended salary increases provide a wage that will allow a law- Importantly, the commission-recommended salary increases provide a wage that will allow a larger number of qualified and diverse community members to afford to serve as council members. I think that was said so well by Anthony Garcia. The current low council salaries are a significant limitation for those living in Flagstaff with its high cost of living. This situation can result in limiting the individuals who are able to serve as council members to those with access to a second income, such as another job, et cetera. This ordinance will result in increased equity and representation on the dais. The current issues the city is dealing with, the housing emergency, the climate emergency, to name two, are very complex and important to the future of our community. These issues deserve to be addressed by council members who are able to dedicate themselves fully to the Flagstaff community or full-time, as other speakers have said. You guys work really hard, and I know because I'm watching you every week. And it's, it's a big job, and you should be able to be paid a, a living wage to do it full-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Our next commenter for tonight is Tyler Denham. Tyler, you can go ahead and address Mayor and Council. Tyler, you can go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Uh, yes, I wasn't able to unmute until now. Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council members. I am speaking today on only my own behalf to support the ordinance to increase mayoral and council member salaries. I read over the minutes and materials from the Citizen Committee assembled to review the issue, and I found the following three arguments particularly persuasive. First, a higher salary would attract more candidates and from more diverse backgrounds. The current level, which is quite low compared to area median income and cost of living, necessitates a financial sacrifice that dissuades many from running. This argument is particularly relevant in light of the difficulties in getting enough official candidates on the 2022 ballot for City Council. Second, the salary should be higher because the positions of Mayor and Council member are a much greater time commitment than a typical part-time job. And the hours worked are often irregular, such as, case in point, past 7:03 PM on a Tuesday. Third, the proposed salary increases are quite modest. Seventy thousand for the Mayor and 63,000 for council members is still below the area median income for a three-person family, and the disparity is even greater for larger families. Those salaries won't phase in until 2024, and there's a good chance cost of living will be even higher. So in summary, I am supportive of the ordinance and hope you adopt it. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Tyler. All right, that seems to be our last public participant, so we are ready to open up for questions and discussion. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I took some notes here, and I'll kind of go down the list. First of all, just for the record, I have no vested interest in this. I won't get this raise. I've got two more years in council, and, under the rules, I won't get a penny of an increase. So I'll try to make a rational decision, not based on anything that'll affect me personally. Since I've been on council, we did get a raise from 24,000 to 25,500. And that was based on the recommendations of a very similar committee. And they suggested that what came out to a 6% raise increase. I am supportive of a significant increase. I think 6%, like we did last time, is too small. But the proposal is to raise the salary of the City Council and similar numbers for the Mayor, but I just ran the numbers for City Council at 250% over two years. That's kind of a little bit of a sticker shock to me. Just telling you my gut reaction. If we got that, of the 17 people that Shannon sent us comps for, we would be, let's see, of the 17, there would only be one city that would be paid more than that, and that would be the city of Phoenix. Right now, the salary we make is 25,500 is more than the majority of the list that we were given. It's more than Tucson, it's more than Prescott. So even what we make now is high compared to the comps. Now, I don't think we should make our decision based on that, but I think it's kind of a an interesting point. I do support some kind of compromise. If we just did the, the first part of it, which would go to 44,650, we would be paid higher than every city except Phoenix. And I might have misspoken a second ago. The, the salary we make now, and I'll say it again just to make sure I got it straight, is higher than a majority of the, the comps, including Tucson and Prescott. If we get 44,650, we would be paid higher than every city except Phoenix out of the, the comps, which may be good. Again, I don't think we should base it on what other comps are, but it's something to kind of keep in mind. One point I'd like to make is that regardless of what we pay a councilperson, when they run, they don't get paid anything. And I ran three times before I got elected. And the last time I got elected, I walked neighborhoods every day for about a year. Not all day, but a few hours every day and almost all day on Saturday and Sunday. So I guess where I'm coming from is I don't have a position, so to speak. I want to hear a discussion with the other council members. But my gut reaction is 63,800 is probably a little too far to go in a two-year period. Maybe a suggestion would be, and I'll just toss this out, I'm only one of seven here, we need to talk about this. Maybe go with the increase to 44,600 and, uh, and not do the, the increase two years later. So Adam's rolling his eyes like, I don't understand. You understand what I'm saying, or you don't understand why I support it?
I was just asking why, I was just wondering why.
Well, I guess my gut reaction is that a 250% increase in two years is sticker shock, a little too much. I do support a substantial increase. I'm, I'm not thinking of like, you know, 5% or 6%. I'm thinking of something significant. If we go from 25,500 to 44,650, that's 75% increase, just for the record. So I'll leave it at that for now, and I really want to hear what the other council members have to say, and the Mayor, of course. And then we can come back and have more discussion. But I thought I would just kind of start the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Shimonie, head, I see in the chat box, and then we'll go to.
Oh, Mayor, I think Councilmember Aslan was ahead of me.
Oh, my apologies. Councilmember House. Oh, Councilmember Aslan didn't have his in the chat box. Sorry, I'm looking up here rather than down here. So Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you very much. Let me turn off my hand. So just a little bit of context. I'm attending this council meeting from a hotel room in California where I'm spending the entire week and the next weekend representing the city of Flagstaff and Flagstaff's interests in my role as a councilperson. I'll also, I'm also happy to mention that I am the spouse, the husband of a wife who works full-time and very much supports our family first and foremost. If I was not in my marital situation, I would not be able to support this job, for sure. And it's doubly true when you consider benefits and medical and other coverage. So I'll just speak for a couple of minutes. I feel very strongly about this. I fully support the recommendations of the Citizens Commission on Council Salaries. And I think we should pass these recommendations as provided without any further tinkering. With regard to this matter, as with so many things in modern life, you get what you pay for. And paying our City Council members a professional wage is critical if we want to have a candidate pool this election, next election, election after election, that are both qualified and diverse. Over the years, Flagstaff has struggled with recruiting high-quality candidates to serve on council. And that's no slight to those of us who are currently served, myself included. It's merely a recognition that in order to achieve excellence over the long term, stability and sustainability are critical. Lasting, durable stability doesn't come cheap. So listen, you know, we've worked really hard since I've been on council to raise city pay, to offer, to, to pay off our pension debts, to acknowledge excellence and reward merit, to improve retention and recruitment, to address compaction, and to attract and keep quality leadership. And let's not forget to address a livable wage for all residents. We've gone to great lengths to right our ship. Adequately raising council and mayor's salary from a laughable stipend to a professional wage is another important piece of the puzzle. It will matter, and it will make a difference. It's important to acknowledge that this isn't a raise for the current council, and it's not a fist bump or a merit increase for the next one. Someone mentioned in their letter supporting the commission recommendation that this isn't for us, it's for the benefit of our system as a whole. It sends a message that all are welcome and that the diversity of our representatives must match that of our community as a whole. I heard several of those comments from the public speaking this, this evening as well. You know, this is the only path we have for ameliorating a problem we already live with and one we know will only get more exacerbate, exacerbated if it's delayed. I've been a part of three councils now. All of them have done an amazing job of not kicking cans down the road. This course correction is one of the remaining issues we've been hesitant to address. We've waited and waited and waited to do this. Other priorities have rightfully been placed ahead of this decision time and again. But this recommendation is finally coming before us through a separate, appropriate channel. Our council prides itself on taking our commission seriously. I strongly feel it's imperative for the health of the future of the city organization to vote to support this recommendation, too. It's not necessary for this decision to be deflected to the voters at some vague point down the road. I'm not even convinced that it's possible. The voters approve the city charter. The charter allows for council to determine its own pay. The voters have already provided council discretion on this matter. End of story. And as to the arguments which try to point out other municipalities as comparisons, I'm sorry, Councilmember McCarthy, but I find this highly flawed. Our council meets every Tuesday, often late into the night, other councils being pointed to do not. I don't need to enumerate all the reasons why this apples-and-oranges argument fails to meet the moment. That's largely beside the point. Ultimately, I would argue, why should we be pointing at other flawed compensation strategies to argue we should race to the bottom? Is that what we did with our carbon neutrality efforts? Is that what we did with our housing emergency or with our COVID mitigations? I don't remember anyone looking around the state during those conversations and concluding we shouldn't act because no one else paved the way. Flagstaff showed leadership. Our actions here tonight might finally provide other governments around the state to look at us as a reason for them to change, for them to be inspired. That's what leading looks like. I'm wrapping up here. You know, currently, the wages are so low that only people with a second source of income or a spouse can afford to take on the responsibility of making important decisions for Flagstaff. This limits the pool of people who decide to run for office. This is absolutely an issue of diversity and inclusion. Tonight's public comments, all of the letters to the Mayor and Council we've received recently, city leadership, and the Commission on Council Salary are all overwhelmingly supportive of finally correcting this long overdue deficiency. The reason the percentage increase is so high is because this hasn't been a stepwise process throughout the years in a continuous fashion. We need to make this jump because it hasn't been made before. And support for it has been universal. I think it's incumbent upon us to pass this recommendation tonight without any further delay and as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to allow out, Councilmember McCarthy had one quick response.
Yeah, just real briefly, I agreed with most everything that Mr. Aslan said. And I just want to clarify that even though I did kind of look at what, you know, the comps are at other cities, I also stated that that should not be our criterion. We should decide on our own. That's deep background, but that isn't a driving force in my mind. We should make a rational decision, what makes sense for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
You're duly noted. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimonie is next.
Thank you, Mayor. If I, if I were, you know, this is, this is such a big topic for, for us, council. And, and it makes me emotional, too. This is probably the biggest topic I've had the opportunity to weigh in in four years. And I've been working on this topic for four years. I remember when I first got elected, talking to Coral and saying, oh, my gosh, this work is so crucial. Our work is so important. It's full-time, it's non-stop. You can't leave the house without getting bombarded, right? And, and we're full-time. And what jobs complement this work? Literally close to none. You know, we can look around the table at what we do, and we're the select few that make this work. But we don't do it without great sacrifice. And, and it's a privilege to serve, it really is. But we have such an opportunity with this discussion this evening to correct such a wrong that's systemically set up this way for so many, so many years, so many municipalities across the state and the nation. And it's humbling that we have that opportunity to do something so big for Flagstaff and our community and, and to lead the state and in the nation. This began by the previous council, and I want to express gratitude to the previous Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council for, for getting this process going. I want to express gratitude to the commission and the, and the staff, and specifically Deputy City Manager Anderson, for your leadership in getting this done. And I want to express gratitude to this Mayor and Council and Vice Mayor for, for hopefully seeing this through. Again, this is extremely humbling to be a part of and also nerve-wracking, not knowing how we're going to vote. Our city is growing, and our, our community expects us to be full-time and on-call 24/7. Honestly, there is not a day that goes by that I'm not working on city business, and I'm sure that's true for everyone here. The budget is growing, over half a billion dollars currently. Our leadership at the city is excellent and gets paid in a competitive manner, often around the $200,000 price points. Our staff is, is incredibly important, and, and we are continuously working to, to raise their salaries and raise their voices and address their needs and concerns as our cost of living increases. Emergencies are, are increasing in our community, and our meetings are non-stop. Other councils across the state, you know, when I go to Arizona League of Cities events and I talk to them about our workload, they're shocked at the amount of time we put in and how long our meetings are, and that we have executive sessions weekly, often. And, and they just don't believe the amount of work we put in in terms of these long hours. Look, look at today's meeting, this is nuts. I don't think it's fair to compare us to other communities across the state. I just don't see that argument being valid. And to Councilmember Aslan's comments, thank you. We have always been a leader, and we've always charted our own path and not followed Phoenix or Glendale or whatever community. We have led in the state, and I'm proud of Flagstaff. This is about power and who has access to power. That's what this conversation is about. That's it. Everyone should have the opportunity to serve on council. I feel adamantly about that, and I know that today's situation is not reflective of that, that, that statement I just made. Everyone should have the opportunity to serve on council. Our community expects full-time council members, and we're always on-call. I recall when I first got elected, yeah, I mentioned this part, but, you know, someone asked me how many hours a week I put in, and I think on average it's 20 to 60 hours. And I would not be surprised if that was. And I would not be surprised if that was true across the board. And that's at this, this current wage. I promise you, if I was, if we were making 63.8, I'd be even putting in more. But, but we, we have so much work to do. And similar to Anthony, you know, personally, I am paycheck to paycheck with the salary. But I'm willing to make that sacrifice for the community. It's, it's so worth it. The work we do is so rewarding and our community deserves full-time employees as councilmembers. I want to see singles, single moms run for office. I want to see teachers run for office. I want to see firefighters and, and, and police department personnel run for office. I want to see people who work in our service industry run for office. I want to see more representation of our diverse population in, in, in these seats that we have up here. I can tell you firsthand that I've had multiple people approach me over these years and say, Adam, I want to run for office. I love this work. I feel passionate. But how do you do it for that price? I want to raise a family. I want to buy a home. And I say, yeah, you can't without making a serious sacrifice on your life and your well-being. And, and they say, yeah, maybe when I retire. And that's a shame. That's a loss for Flagstaff. That's a loss for this community in those voices that are not being able to, to get to this point. Let's not just represent these fine citizens. Let's have representation from these citizens. 63,800 is, is, is much better than what we're making today. And I would argue if the next council decides that they don't want to see that second portion implemented, they can decide to make that decision. We don't need to decide that today. Seriously, you know, the cost of living is going up. On 63,800, you can't buy a home, you can't get ahead. But at least you're not necessarily paycheck to paycheck, right? I think there's a big difference there. We, we want specialists and experts to run for office. But often, these folks aren't willing to take a pay cut to, to serve. And they're making 80 upwards of $100,000. So 63.8 is really not that much to be considering for our community. We have two people on the ballot this election cycle. Honestly, council, that's embarrassing. That's really embarrassing. It really is. For a growing community like Flagstaff with the needs we have and the engaged community we have, for two people to make it on the ballot, I'm really embarrassed for Flagstaff. But I can promise you, if we adopt the commission's recommendations as they stand, that will never be the case moving forward. We will see competition. We will see new people, fresh blood, great, great diversity coming forward. And that is something I'm extremely excited about. For me personally, when I ran for office and getting involved in politics, it's always been about creating a culture of engagement. And that's what led me to run myself. And I believe that there's nothing greater that we could do than to raise our salaries to create a culture of engagement. I really do. I think that will really be a game changer. I'm almost done. Represent, representation is so important, as we know. Equity, diversity, inclusion. We talk about it all the time. Here's a chance to really invest in the future of Flagstaff. I am hopeful that this council can get behind this commission's recommendation or at least four of us, because that's what we need, is four people on council to do that. And, and that we can really lead the state in how to correct a wrong that's been systemically unjust for so many decades. Our systemic issues run deep. And Mayor, I'm looking at you because I know you really understand that, especially in this region. And I think that if we do this, we will see so much more diversity and so much more correction of those injustices moving forward in the years to come. So, this isn't, this isn't an investment in us, but an investment in our community. So, council, let's do it. Let's do it with full force. Let's be proud of our actions. And, and let's really get behind a future that is truly sustainable and resilient for our community. The charter gives us the ability to do so. We do not need to go out to the voters. And the voters will decide who it is that gets to fill our seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon. Vice Mayor and then Councilmember House.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon, and to the commission for the recommendations. And I guess I'll start with a couple of personal stories. I don't know, Adam, if you remember, but when I was coming to all of the meetings, before I even announced I was running, you talked to me about this. And I said, well, I would do this for free. I don't, you know. However, I'm, I'm lucky and I am humbled today by saying I'm a small business owner. I have been able to hire a manager. She does a great job of taking care of my business so that I can do this full-time. And I put my heart and soul into my position here and I'm very fortunate to be able to do that. My other story is that I saw Anthony Garcia the other day at the BPAC meeting. And it was the first time I had seen him in person in a while. And he, he just looked like a shell of himself. And I asked what was going on and he just, he misses being able to serve our community and he can't do it because he needs to work full-time at FedEx. So, you know, I didn't know where I was going to go tonight on this decision. And I, I guess I still don't know exactly where I land. But I can tell you, I think we're going in the right direction. I believe in diversity, equity, inclusion. And I think this vote is going to be crucial in ensuring that we have that for our community. This is a big job. We do deserve a raise. And not everyone is, is lucky like I am. And I want to make sure that our community as a whole can have this opportunity. And that's what I'm going to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember House and then Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I often say I'm going to be brief in my comments. And tonight, I, I must acknowledge, I'm going to be brief because this is a very emotional topic, I think. I am incredibly moved by the stories of Dr. Evans and Anthony Garcia. When I ran for the appointment to city council, I said that I wanted to be a representative for those who often go unseen and unheard in our community. And this is one of those conversations. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is not all about race, skin color, those sorts of things that we often talk about. There's also a level of economic equity that we need to talk about. The fact that there are so many voices in our community that go unheard, unseen, and unable to speak into the matters that mean significant change for our community and the future of Flagstaff because they cannot afford to make the sacrifice that's required to be in a position like this not only breaks my heart, but tells me that we need to do something to make a change in that area. This is a hard conversation. And I thank those that came and spoke to us tonight, who acknowledged and spoke out about the fact that this is not for us. This is not for me on council. This is for the future of Flagstaff. This is for the future of our community. It's for bringing voices to this table that otherwise cannot afford to be here, both philosophically and literally, cannot afford to be at this day. We have an opportunity to make meaningful change for our community in that regard. At the same time, I want to acknowledge that there are voices that are contributing to this conversation, who I had an opportunity to speak to in, in some cases and heard about conversations that were happening where there is a, a level of, I'll just say that there are other voices that are, that have contributed to this who maybe are not represented in the conversation tonight. And at the very least, I want to say that I cannot overstate and I do not want to understate the value of those contributions to the conversation. I value the input that I was able to receive in other conversations that I had about this. And really, for me, this is a conversation that is about the equity and the inclusion of different voices for our community, in our community, for the future of Flagstaff. I support this. I acknowledge that it is an uncomfortable conversation. I acknowledge that it is a, a strange conversation for me to be having at this point in my service to Flagstaff City Council. However, I, I, I feel strongly that I have an obligation to put it on the line for that future. So, I thank the commission who spoke into this. I thank the people of Flagstaff who poured into our email inboxes to express their viewpoints on this, no matter how they, they came down on it. And I hope that people will understand that if we make this move forward, you are bringing other voices to the table who can speak into this meaningfully, who also deserve to be here. So, that's all I'm going to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Salas.
Wow. It is truly an emotional conversation. But before I, I make my comment, I'd like to ask the city, oh, Deputy City Manager, in terms of the financial impact. Because it says in the financial impact, this will be accounted for during the budget process. However, December 1st, or, you know, when the new council is seated, that's mid fiscal year. So, do we have the financial ability to implement this?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, I appreciate everyone's words and perspective that have been well articulated tonight and especially to Dr. Evans. When I made the decision to run for office in 2018, I had prepared myself to make a vow of poverty. It was a huge pay cut for me. My business was fledgling. However, I have, since I was elected, I have always put my responsibility, council role first. I have turned down a lot of projects due to time availability. I have turned down a lot of clients. And I am just thankful that I have my family, I have a huge family, who I can lean on when I could not make rent. And I'm also thankful that I have properties in the Philippines that I'm renting out that help me with rent here. And it's been a struggle financially for me, especially in the last year. Because, you know, I'm not the spring chicken. There's some medical bills that need to be paid and, you know, my, my boys are, are, my, I have college kid and, yeah. And I keep saying, I am on a fixed income. But I have always been dedicated to this work. And for me, serving on council has never been about the salary. Or I always call it stipend because it doesn't even pay my rent. So, and I'm very thankful for all the voices that says, okay, this is not about me. This is about taking responsibility for the future council and taking action now. We have heard about diversity, equity, inclusion. But I also want to add a voice of access to access and providing the opportunity for future council candidates to not be discouraged of the vow of poverty that comes with the position. So for that, I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. I guess it's my turn to chime in here now before we talk through it. And I will just note that it has been difficult. Let me just say that if the student loan debt wasn't frozen right now, I would not be in a good position. Last year, I did have to leave my job at NAU because of fires and flooding that I was working 70, 80 hours a week out there in the field, constant calls all night, checking the rain gauges at 1:00 in the morning and then when I wake up at 2:30 and then when I wake up at 3:30. And it was a point where my PTO was burned through and I had to make a hard decision. So, I get it. I think we all have faced a lot of that issue here on council. I do think council deserves to get an increase. The question for me is by how much and who should decide? And that has been a big thing that I've been wrestling with and thinking about through this process. So, let me get out my notes. First off, I think my position, just in general, is very similar to Councilmember McCarthy's. In terms of, well, we do need to have some points taken from some of the market analysis. We do need to take some pointers from the fact that we're not the county board of supervisors. And we do have, and the other cities do have a lot of work. I mean, we're, we're talking here, raising a council member's salary above that of Phoenix that serves 1.68 million people. Their job is not small. And I know we do have long meetings. But they are representing and being out there and having to go to a lot more requests, a lot more events than we do here in Flagstaff. That's an important note. One of the other things that's been concerning me is I got, I've gotten a lot of phone calls and emails to my personal email from current and former city staff who felt this was a real slap in the face while they're receiving a 3% raise. And that made, really made me thinking about this. Because, you know what? They have to sit through all these meetings too, late into the night. They're there and they have to get their salary based on that market analysis sheet as well from other cities. And when I think about it and look at what we need to do, yes, it needs to be raised. But just like staff have to go and any normal person needs to go to their boss to really ask for a raise, I feel we are already going to a special election next fall to change the city charter specifically, to deal with signature count requirements that are dealing with, that are the primary reason people didn't get on the ballot this year when 10 people did pull papers. We're going to have other city charter amendments on there as well. And it's not uncommon. This is Phoenix. It's in their city charter. Tucson, Glendale, Yuma. It's the city charter that actually sets their wages and they have to go back to the voters for it. Now, honestly, that's where, an idea I wanted to throw out, though I am not saying I'm absolutely doing this and I'm not going to vote for it or anything like that. But to me, going to a normal person's position, I would like to see us raise it a decent amount for this next term. But if we go to a special election in the fall, then that can reset it for this next council too. Because it's not this council voting for this council. So, that being said, I will also mention that, you know, they did do studies previously from looking at council's workload. And here locally, when it's got assessed, they've also looked at it in other cities, which I know, yes, we're different. But there was a high variance in, historically, in the number of hours worked as a council member. Some work 10, some work 40, some work 50, some work 25. And, you know, when we're talking these level of salary increases, yeah, you could get voted out in four years if people are paying attention enough. But we're, we're really talking here, salaries, that if somebody was, wanted to just work 10 hours a week, they'd be making a greater hourly wage than the city manager to do the base-based responsibilities of the job. So, I'm just throwing a lot of thoughts out there because this is what in my research I did look at and did find. And I will also note that in those market analyses, the ratio of the council to mayor pay is about 60% typically, throughout all those market analyses. Throughout the entire country, it's actually about half to less. Because the workload for mayor is more than council. And when I looked at these rates, I was like, well, so mayor is going to get a lower average hourly rate than a council member. And that's what the market analysis shows. So, when we're talking this, I'm, I'm good with talking big numbers. But we also need to think about the additional responsibilities the mayor's seat has for the future. Because honestly, if I looked at that four years ago, I would have been like, why would I go for mayor if I could go for council at much less responsibilities at 90% the pay? I just don't think county board of supervisors is the appropriate comparison group when we're looking at this either. And we can say, city, other cities, not either, but it's, we're a different model of government. So, those are just some of my thoughts. Happy to discuss further, but we'll bounce off to the back. but we'll bounce off to the back and forth at this point. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you. I think that was an extremely fruitful discussion. I heard very strong points on every side. I'm going to make a proposal, and everybody can say yes or no. My proposal is that what's on the view graph for mayor, 38.5 to 54.350, we would keep that. In two years, we would increase it from 54.350 to the number on the view graph, which is 71.80. For council members, we would increase it from 25.5 to 44.650, just like on the view graph. But the second year, we would go 44.650 to 50,000. So 50,000 instead of 63.800. That's the proposal. I'd be interested if anyone else thinks that kind of is a good compromise between all the viewpoints that we've heard here. Enough said.
I'll hear from, okay, Council, where are we at here? Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you have a hard time keeping track of things when someone's off-screen or off-grid there. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for throwing out some thoughts. I would still really like us personally to see us support full recommendation. But I had a question. First question is for the city attorney. I'm currently not aware of any process or vehicle under our city code, charter, or even state law to send a question like this about salaries to the voters. I'm wondering if you could corroborate that or set that straight in any way? Just curious. It's a process question. And then I'm also, I would love to hear from our city manager if he would like to speak up on the subject or has any thoughts to share. I wanted to provide a space for him to do so, should he so choose.
Mayor, Councilmember Aslan, and council, I'm not aware of anything in our city code or city charter that provides a vehicle to send, excuse me, the question of council member salaries to the voters. It would require a charter amendment. The mayor referenced several other cities around the state that have that in their charter, that it goes to the voters. That charter amendment would have to be approved. And then after it's approved, it could go to the voters. So that, right now, I'm not aware of anything in city code, state law, or our charter that would allow that. To the contrary, our city code outlines the process, which is the citizens committee, the recommendation you've received, and your approval via ordinance.
And just to clarify, that's what I was suggesting, was a change to the city charter.
Right.
That the voters would put in forth.
Well, I don't know if the city manager is going to take me up on my offer or not, but just to quickly respond to that, I, you know, I just, I'm very, I, I think it would be a real, I camel through the eye of a needle thing for us to try to do this through a charter process, voters involved. Others spoke to it more eloquently than I did earlier. I don't think that the, that this needs to be kicked over to voters. I think a lot of the, these big questions are not something that we divert back to residents, because residents don't necessarily always have the full totality of information in front of them, and nor the ability to keep emotion out of their conversations. So I don't want to go too far into that, just some food for thought. And then I can't see city manager's body language or eye contact, so I don't know what his plan is at this point, but I'll step back.
At your pleasure, Mayor. I'm glad to respond if you'd like.
If you'd like to.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan, for bouncing it my way. I have stated often that this is one of the, these topics that come up that clearly falls within the council, the council sphere as policymakers, and not one that involves administration, other than what has happened. And so appreciative to Shannon Anderson for taking the helm on this. We should inform the discussion, we, you know, help with the assembly of the commission, and then this discussion. So we are here to inform and to assist. It's a very difficult discussion that council has, and we appreciate the thoughtfulness and the emotion, frankly, that is coming about. We also appreciate the fact that so many people have weighed in in terms of public participation. I will try to frame my comments in the most objective way, which I need to do, without weighing in or advocating where council should go on this. My first comment is I think it's been a good process, and an objective process. And we've had a lot of those of late. The Citizen Bond Committee and things like that have been very inclusive and very representative processes. Second, there's been a lot of comments about comparables or comparisons to other governments. So I'll offer this up. Much falls upon local government these days in terms of responsibility and expectations, demands for service and representation, frankly. It is not to diminish the importance of our state legislators or others, but in the structure of governance, the action happens at the local level. It clearly does. The last, the events of just the last year have showed that over and over again. The emergency responses, the many, many meetings. Getting through the global pandemic, the ups and downs of our economy. All of this falls squarely on local government. And you as council are representative leaders to this community, and you answer that call. We have, through the decades, seen more expectations filter down to local government than what was the case, you know, 30 or 40 years ago. And the evolution is continuing in that direction. So there's no easy lift in this position. It is, it is an arduous position. And when that demands a lot of your time. We've often stated it's a personal choice as to how much time you want to put into this, but I think it's also a very safe statement to say you can't not devote a lot of time to this position. Our meetings are weekly. They go long sometimes. Between the meetings, there are other meetings, there are retreats, there are functions, very important get-togethers, like meeting with the federal agency last week to talk about the Rio de Flag project, like the budget retreats that we just gave you a schedule for. That will demand of your time, two-day retreats three times next year, and that's just going through the budget. That's not taking it beyond that. The commission liaison, we hear these reports every, every other week about your attendance at commission meetings. We have 26 commissions, and many of them are quite active. So council is active with those commissions. It is a daunting endeavor. So the, I just want to make that note, if it's not already obvious, that this job demands a lot from council. You occupy an office upstairs, the mayor has his office, and the council has a meeting room, and you all have lockers in that meeting room, and you have your materials. And your presence in city hall is rather continuous. More so than what I've seen in my career. This is an engaged council that is representing an engaged community. And that's the reality in Flagstaff. And it's a good thing. So I think it's an important discussion you're having. We've heard very heartfelt comments coming in from the public. And I think without advocating, I feel comfortable in going so far as to say this job expects, actually demands, a lot from our elected body. We're here to serve at your pleasure, but we know what you're devoting to this community. We see it firsthand. Our packets going into these meetings are not a few pages. They're several hundred pages. And many of you read these packets thoroughly. So I can go on and on about the rigors of this position, but I think enough has been said. Glad to answer any other questions that you may have. And thank you, Councilmember Aslan, for inviting my perspective here.
Thank you so much for your response.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank my colleagues for your passion, your emotions, your thought and attention to this moment. And before I go into my comments, City Manager, I'm going to pass it back to you. I'm curious to have you speak to some of the things we've done for our staff. You know, Mayor, you brought up staff and not being fair to staff, what we're doing today. I, I think we've been doing an amazing job to elevate the needs and desires of staff to better respect their professionalism and keep them working for Team Flag. But, but City Manager, if you can speak a little bit to some of the efforts that you've been a part of just in the past few years, I'd really appreciate that.
Sure. I'll try to be brief. Mayor, can I go ahead and respond to that?
Yeah, just if we could be brief, though.
Yes. We implemented the compensation plan, actually, three years ago, but it really became effective in terms of compensate, rate adjustments and re-prior, or re-categorizing our employees. That started about two years ago, but the plan has been underway for three years now. We're two years into a merit-based compensation regiment. Thank you to the council for that. When we were not able to do that, we did implement a 2% cost of living adjustment that was back during the recession. So two years into a 3% merit increase per annum, so that's 3% per annum. And we have that merit increase now of 3% projected out for the next five years. So we're, we've made great progress there. As noted earlier, we financed the full payment of our unfunded pension liability three years ago. This last year, we made notable changes in terms of compression adjustments, minimum wage, of course. But we implemented the minimum wage early, if you recall, by six months, to help our employees and to better prepare ourselves for January. So compression adjustments, market rate adjustments, a new pay structure, and providing more equity throughout our organization. Now, we have two pay regimens rather than four. Step plan, that's, that applies to our cops and to our firefighters, and to our water service personnel, and then the regular merit-based system for the rest of us. So we're well on our way here, moving forward, with a system that I think so far is very good to our employees. The last thing I'll mention is there's been some other things we've done as well. We revisited our health coverage this last year, went to an extra tier, if you will, that greatly benefits our employees. And some other things along the way, but those are the notable ones. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just note, because I think what you're getting at with some of my comments, which is we've done a lot of really great work, really great work for the morale of our, of our employees. And I just don't want to see that bat clawed by a decision from us. We do amazing things. Our city manager, Jeanne Gallagher, with the compensation package. But I know what it was like being in an organization where I got a 3% raise in three years and watched the head bosses' income double and hire administration. And that was definitely a hit to morale, being a normal, everyday worker at a government institution. And I just, I just want to refrain from feeling like I'm doing what I didn't like when I was a government employee.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm just going to say my comments really briefly. Mayor, to your point about Phoenix, Phoenix is districted, they're a district, and their workload is very different than ours, and their meetings are very different than ours. My friend who's the vice, or used to be the former Vice Mayor of Tempe, was shocked by our workload. I think that's more comparable. I think staff salaries are competitive and are being addressed on an ongoing fair process. And I don't think it's fair to compare them to what we're doing here today. 10-hour work week, we're putting in more than 10 hours today. And that's not even talking about the prep we need to do for a council meeting. So I don't know who's doing 10 hours, but that's definitely not me. And I don't think that's most of us. The city charter gives us the ability to do this. And, and I don't think that we should be talking about changing the city charter as part of this conversation. I think we need to stay focused on the hard work that's gone into this discussion tonight. We can talk about adjustments to the city charter at a later date. I'm not here to compromise at the moment, unless we're going upward, council. And, and I think that there's a majority support for this commission recommendation. This process has been great, to the city manager's point. It's been many years in the making. This commission was not easy to establish. And our staff has worked hard to get us to this point. And our commission is, is, has a lot of credibility, and I respect their work tremendously. And, and lastly, we are first in line when it comes to representation. All politics are local, and we set the tone. So with that, Mayor, I'm ready to call the vote. And I recommend we do a roll call, roll call vote. And if that were to fail, then we can talk about compromise and negotiations, but...
I think I'd rather build consensus over this than jump the gun to go to a majority decision.
So, okay.
Councilmember McCarthy did provide a proposal previously, and I'd like to vet that a little bit more thoroughly, because this isn't the only option.
Mayor, before we do any kind of compromising proposals, I think we should get a headcount on this current recommendation from this commission. And if that fails, then we can talk about your...
You can, you're welcome to make a motion, but...
Well, can I, can I speak before we do anything?
I think it would be respectful, given the difficulty of this conversation, for us to look at another option that would make us more comfortable. And you may not want to do that, but I think we have the right to see if other council members might be...
I respectfully request that I at least get to give that an idea. In my proposal, I'm going to withdraw my previous proposal and make one slightly different. And then...
If I, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is this a motion? You keep talking about it in terms of...
This is not a motion.
Okay, thank you.
This is clearly not a motion. What I'm suggesting is that we can unofficially, not a motion, let me say the first thing. I don't think there is a consensus to put a thing before the voters, to change the charter, to have the voters approve that. So I think that's off the table. So what I would like to do is, one proposal is the commission's proposal. And we can go around the table and very informally give a thumbs up to that, or a thumbs up to my proposal. All right, so my revised proposal, and you may want to write this down, because... So I'll go through it slowly. And the current council salary is 25,500. So I'm going to propose a number that's slightly smaller than the suggestion, that's halfway between the 50,000 that I want to end up at for council. And bear in mind, if I vote on this, I don't get this. But also bear in mind that certain people that are sitting here tonight will be running, and they will get it. So they are, they will get it in about a month.
Just one point of clarification on that. Whether they're running or not does not guarantee the seat. That's one of the key portions of the city code. Nobody has a vested interest in this on this board, or this council, excuse me. You have to win your seat back before anybody will see any benefit from...
But we are making a second vote on November 15th, which is after Election Day, so...
I agree with that, but just to clarify, if someone that's sitting up here right now gets re-elected next week in December, they would get the raise. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so anyway, that's just kind of a side point. But here's my, my proposal is we go from 25.5, which is where we're at now, to 37,750. And then in two years, it goes to 50,000. So that's the same point. So everybody got those numbers written down? So everybody got those numbers written down? I was just saying, we get 25,500, 37,750, 50,000. And then for mayor, go from 38,500, which it is now, to 54,250, and then end up in two years at 70,000 even. All right, so what I would ask is, and anybody can make a motion, but what I suggest is we go around, first of all, does anybody have any alternate proposals? Hopefully not. And we can give a thumbs up and say, I'm for the, this is an unofficial vote, and then after we do the unofficial vote, we can do a formal motion. Anyway, the two options on the table, the way I see it, is my option and the one that came from the commission. I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the rules of procedure, as well as state open meeting law, don't really allow us an opportunity to go around and poll the council before the vote. There's an opportunity to make a motion, a second, to see where that goes, but polling for a consensus prior to the vote wouldn't be appropriate under open meeting law.
So I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm not going to argue about it. So I'm going to make a motion that we...
Point of order, I'm sorry, Councilman McCarthy.
Go ahead.
I believe I was attempting to make a motion prior.
Yeah, but the motion hadn't been made yet, so...
So I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
He's in the middle of speaking.
So Councilman McCarthy, I would ask that you let me make my motion first, out of respect.
My concern is that, see, for me personally, I might vote for the full increase if the other motion fails, but I would really like to know that first, so...
And Councilmember, I would like to know first, I feel the same way, but in reverse. So if I can make a motion first and then see if there's support for the higher level, and if there isn't, then we can go to your level. I think that would be the right approach.
All right. I'm making a motion that council salary goes from 25,500 to 50,000, and then the 38,500 to 70,000 with the halfway point.
Say that again.
What you had here.
Okay, so you're making a motion.
I'm not going to argue about who's going to make a motion. He was speaking, and it was interrupting. Let's move on. It is 50, motion that we would move to 50,000 to, in two years, for council, and 70,000 to mayor.
Would there be any...
Mr. Mayor, a point of order has been requested under Roberts' rules, even though we loosely operate under those, it is in the rules of procedure. Councilmember Shimonie has asked for a point of order.
Yeah, I believe I had requested to make a motion first. Mayor, and I really would appreciate you respecting that request.
Where are we at here, City Attorney?
Mayor is the chair. You ultimately are the one to make a decision about who is allowed to make a motion first. It is in the chat that Councilmember Shimonie, while Councilmember McCarthy was stating his proposal, did ask to make a motion. That said, it's ultimately your decision as the chair, and council ultimately has the opportunity to seek to overrule a decision of the chair, which is under Rule 8.01 of the rules of procedure.
Okay, well, until I find out about this, I'm going to have to vote no on that. So I will let, you can make the motion for the original proposal, but I'm kind of in McCarthy's position where I'll probably be voting no now to see what happens with this.
So one further clarification, Mayor, you did state that you were making a motion.
Motion withdrawn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. You know, I tried to make a motion, and I got interrupted partially way through, so I really respect and appreciate your support of allowing me to go first.
And I will say, I apologize, I didn't see that in the comments at the same time as all this was going on, so...
Right, no, totally. No worries. So I am enthused and excited to make a motion that we read ordinance number 2022-29 by title only for the first time, and I ask that we have a roll call vote. Thank you.
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Aslan.
So, question for the attorney. If this fails, and then my proposal, which I haven't made yet formally, fails, can we come back and revisit this?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to vote no on this for now, but that doesn't mean I'm against one of the options. All right, go ahead. Thank you. And sorry, this has been such a fiasco. Adam, go ahead. You made it.
Hate to suggest this, but did you ask for any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Salas.
Yes. I do appreciate Councilmember McCarthy's effort to come up with an alternative, but with all due respect to everyone involved in putting together this recommendation from city staff, from the commissioners who volunteered their time and energy and knowledge, and all the citizens who have wait, reached out to the commission, to staff, and to council, much gratitude. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Aslan? Councilmember Salas?
Aye.
Mayor Deasy?
No.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember House?
Yes.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Considering that there's already four yes votes, and this is going to pass, I will vote yes.
Councilmember Shimonie? Mayor, that motion passes.
Okay.
You would need to read...
City Clerk?
Sorry, I'm getting my notes here. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending Section 1-07-001-005 salaries of the Flagstaff City Code and establishing an effective date.
All right, now is a good time for a break, I think, right?
May I make a brief comment?
Yes, you may.
I just want to recognize that even though the mayor voted no on that, I believe that he was supportive of the general trend of this, and like me, probably would have voted yes if it hadn't already been decided.
That is correct.
Thank you. So in effect, the whole council agreed to this. Thank you.
Quick break?
Yeah. All right, it's time to talk about some snow plowing. Woo!
Okay, perfect. So, let's start with good morning, Mayor and Council. We're going to start fresh today. I know you guys had a long evening, so we're going to start fresh, and we're going to hit it hard. But we've got an important topic coming to you today, and it's timely. If you haven't checked the weather update, do so. We've got some really cool opportunities coming for some shovel activity here within the next couple of days, so I think people are going to be fairly excited about that. But what we want to do is give you an update on our operations, our readiness report, and what we're looking at coming into the season, and some of the expectations you can see or plan on seeing from both pros and from public works in this snow season. So we're going to go through our snow operations readiness report. Couple of items we're going to go over today or this morning are forecasting storms and preparations for streets winter operations, pros' winter operations, storm, post-storm operations, and then the community expectations and parking ordinance, which did and will come into effect today. Winter storm events. So for bigger events, as they come into the region or the Weather Service starts seeing those build, they set up a regional call. Those calls really help us scope our needs. For the most part, they give us pretty good indicators of what we're going to see. Could be a storm like we're going to see this week of three to seven inches that has been fluctuating a little bit each day, but we know roughly what that's going to be. Sometimes we get these bigger storms where they're 15, 16 inches. We'll start getting more detailed forecasts as we get closer. So our partnership with the Weather Service is key in helping us prep and understand what we're going to be deploying during a storm. The on-call supervisors for the watch, this isn't something that we just kind of hope that they're right and wait for Wednesday to come around, and then we'll go ahead and send everybody out. It just doesn't make fiscal sense to do that. So what we do is try and hone in and understand what's coming in, and then we have supervisors who are here tonight with us, and I wanted to make sure that we introduce a couple of the street supervisors here who oversee our snow operations on that side. So starting from your far right, coming across, we have Greg Cray, Richie Hearn, who's our streets manager, and Julian Milligan. We also have Mike Stress and Stephen Hill, who couldn't be with us tonight. But Stephen was here earlier, had to leave because he's our emergency on-call. So not only is he prepping for snow operations, he's also out fixing or working with PD on an emergency call-out. So it's a continuous operation, never ends. And as we get closer to these snow operations, these are the guys who are watching the weather. They're up every hour, every half hour, making sure that we stay ahead of whatever's coming in. Sometimes you win some, sometimes you lose some, but these guys right here, their judgment call 99% of the time, if not more, is spot-on. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw and recognized the people who are actually out there doing the work, overseeing the crews, and getting that work done for us. So thank you, guys, and I appreciate you being here tonight. All right, so for resource deployment, we kind of talked about that here. It really depends on the storm. Now, we can run more of a smaller skeleton crew and ramp up as needed. However, it all depends on shifts. We run different shifts, and you're going to hear that from Parks and Rec here, pros, as they run different shifts than we do. From 10:00 to 10:00, we have one shift. That's 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Then 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. is another shift. So 12 hours each shift, and then around the clock. Well, if you work a night shift, it's probably unrealistic that you're going to come in at your 6 o'clock shift in the morning if by the time you get home, it's 1 o'clock. So understanding how to balance those hours, making sure that we balance the resources each year and each storm in preparation for what might be coming. I think fortunately, we see this storm moving in. It'll be a really good warm-up for us this year, and then it clears out, leaves the weekend nice and cold and sunny, so it should be nice. Again, that's a big one right there. Most of you have lived here long enough to know that our snow season is a little bit different here. We aren't like North Dakota or Minnesota, where snow comes in and it's your friend, and that same snowflake stays until June of next year. It's usually gone in a few days, depending on the weather we get. However, we also have worries where we do see these storms that are going to move out pretty quickly. Well, what does that do? That means we're going to have some serious freeze thaw, which creates ice issues, which means these crews will have to continue to run far past the life of the storm where you actually see snow falling from the sky. So their shifts continue even past when you think that they have ended. Agency communications, and I'm going to bring Amy up here. I know I've been doing a lot of talking, but this is more than just internal communications, but it's with our partners, with the county, with ADOT, in understanding what their operations are. When we have a big storm, we already have a preemptive call scheduled for this week to meet in the morning at 5:15 and coordinate resources. Who's got what coverage? How is it looking for this storm? And then what is our expectation through those shifts? Are we running multiple shifts? Are we going to see extra resources come in from ADOT to support it? Do they need it? What kind of coverage are they going to have through the city here, and what are we going to have to pick up, understanding that we can't cover it all? With that, this is where I want to bring Amy in, just to kind of discuss that partnership and those agency coordinations. As you've probably noticed, our big trucks don't fit in downtown, so a lot of the places, Parks and Rec have to come in, and they do a phenomenal job, and I want them to, I want Amy to kind of speak to that.
Sure, absolutely. You want me to forward any slides here for you?
No, 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 just talk about coordination.
No slides? All right, we're going to talk about some coordination. So yeah, and these three individuals and the two others that Sam mentioned, it's key, that coordination between the parks team and the streets team. And, you know, the downtown operation, it's unique. We have the alleys, we have the roadways, and we have some parking spaces, and then we have Heritage Square. So there's a lot of coordinated efforts that occur specifically in our civic areas in downtown. And then there's even the most unique operation, I think we have a photo of it future here in our presentation, on when we haul the snow out of downtown, because there is nowhere to push it besides getting it into some vehicles and getting it the heck out of there. So that is probably one of our most unique things to communicate about. But a lot of our work between our multiple teams, it's adjacent to each other, so we need to have that high communication occurring and ensuring that we're doing the right thing for each group throughout the whole process.
And again, her teams are running the same thing. They're running 12-hour shifts, they run different hours, but it's continuous. I think one of the important things to note with Amy's teams in particular, they're not out there with big snow plows. They're out there doing some hand shoveling, like Councilman McCarthy was just talking about. It is laborious work, and it is continual work. So huge thank you to them and their team and all that they do. This here is a quick snapshot of what you can expect to see from streets this year, from equipment deployment. You can see that we have 20 10-wheel snow plows, four 6-wheel snow plows, 10 motor graders, five front-end loaders, two Bobcat tool cats, and one snow blower, which you can actually see in this picture here. You know, nothing crazy, something simple, modest, but gets the job done. This here gets split between two shifts. So as we work through these operations, the staffing in streets is about 20 people. So we have all this equipment, but we don't have enough bodies to fill all those pieces of equipment. So bringing in other divisions, such as solid waste, other partners throughout the city who have team members, who have commercial driver's license, come over and support us as temporary operators, even private sector, to help support those operations. Otherwise, we would just not be able to fill all the seats. So you'll see, we do have that position open right now as our snow temp, and we are looking to get as many people in as possible to try and help us fill some seats this year. This kind of walks you through the staffing that you'll see, and this is off by one number because I'm happy to say that we are up to 20 full-time operators, not 19. In the streets department in particular, the one piece that's left off of here is we do have a full-time streets manager, kind of runs as more of our operations section chief. For most of you who have been dealing with our response efforts this year, that's the way we kind of structure it. It was always structured that way, but that's the way that kind of breaks out. I think important to note on here, some people ask, well, why is the administrative specialist on here? Well, it turns out that when we get a lot of snow, a lot of people like to call people. And so we like to give a huge thanks to Bailey, who takes about 200 calls a storm. So for a single event, we can see, on average, about 200 calls, and those can vary from requests for service to simple, general information. However, that's innovative. That takes a lot of time to communicate with all those residents and to honestly pass that information out to the supervisors to give them a heads-up. There's a ton of coordination that has to happen in a very rapid timeframe. So just huge acknowledgement there for everybody who supports this. This does walk you through all the different operations here, and then that 6 to 12 on-call community CDL operators. Right now, it is 6 to 12. Moving forward, we'd like to see that as a base number of 12, and I think that'll really help our operations. It's just getting tougher and tougher to get people to apply for these, what honestly I like to call a really cool position of driving a snow plow. Priority routes versus secondary routes. Many of you understand and have dealt with these for years. However, main routes are similar to things like you see Milton Route 66. However, that's ADOT. So for us, those get prioritized by use, school buses, things like that, where the native bus routes, downtown area is one of those priority route areas. So our goal is to make sure we keep the core of our community traveling as safe as possible. And then as we work through and get into our secondary routes, is to get into those residential areas where we see a little less traffic, a little less congestion, and a lot less incidents or accidents in those areas. So we try and focus on those higher-volume areas to make sure that we keep up with those, mainly because we don't have enough equipment and staff to do everything. We will get there, but understanding that everybody has to, you know, wait your time, pick your moments when you're going to travel. As we see this storm coming in Wednesday and Thursday, traveling early Thursday morning for something you could probably do late Thursday afternoon, might be worth looking into. for something you could probably do late Thursday afternoon, might be worth looking into. So we always suggest that. Our expectation of all of our operators is for plowing and ice control. And that is the key for them to be out there, is to try and open up the roadways and then do everything they can do to get ahead of ice. And that includes lots of cinders, cinders which get left behind afterwards. And so they rotate many of the operators out of that snow shift operation mentality and right back into the sweeper operators. Those routes are actually 12-hour routes. So for those sweeper operators, they never really get a break. They go straight into snow, back out, and trying to clean up the community from the cinders that go down. For perspective, a single 10-wheel dump truck can put down about eight yards of cinders. A sweeper can pick up about a yard and a half of cinders. So for every one truck, we're making a lot of passes to try and get ahead of that. So it's a continual cycle there. It really took off. This one here is just a reminder of the snow impacts on Butler. Again, this year, we won't get into too many details, but this is one of the few roads where you're going to see us pile snow in the center of the road. That does create huge impacts for left-hand turns and any kind of crossover access anywhere where there isn't already a divided highway or divided roadway in there. And then after the snowstorm, after we get all of the secondary routes cleared up, we'll come back out after snow shift. The crews will work a night shift to pull all that snow out of the center median and haul it away. So it will extend their operations at least another day, if not two, to go back and clean these out as best they can, so people can use the road. Obviously, storing the snow in the middle of the road leads to a lot of bleed-off, which creates additional ice. So getting it out of there as soon as we can is our best option. But just a reminder for that snow impact. And then I'm going to hand it over to Amy and talk about her team and everything that they provide.
All right. So for the parks section, our readiness really mimics exactly what Streets and Public Works does with those predictions and those same resource analytics. Our staffing and our fleet has not changed from previous fiscal years. So when we're fully staffed, we would have 15 equipment operators and 10 hand shovellers. We're having some recruiting vacancies for well over 12 months at this point, and it's a struggle. So we're missing five FTEs, so five full-time employees on the park staff, and we're missing six temporary seasonal personnel that we would normally have on staff right now. It's going to be a difficult season, but I know that we've got the right folks to get through this. And we're also working with our other individuals in the Division of Pros. We've got recreation staff at our recreation centers, our open space partners, and events. So we're going to figure this out and continue to work with Public Works on it. You know, throughout each season, there's sometimes some added foot segments where we don't know who really is the responsible owner on that. So we're constantly reviewing that and making those adjustments. A lot of those circumstances pop up in some of our older subdivisions with maybe some older agreements. So we're constantly looking out for that to ensuring that we're creating those safe routes. We also have our courtesy berm relocation program and review and implementation of that. That's ongoing right now, right before the season begins. Although apparently, we're going to have a little snowstorm maybe on Wednesday night into Thursday morning. But in a lot of that coordination, even for the courtesy berm removal program, is when streets gets into that second priority in those residential routes and roadways. Just to quickly cover some of the parks' equipment, and there's a great photo of a large, I think that was a 32-plus-inch storm, one February in Heritage Square. So we have 10 plows that are on some of our trucks on our fleet. We have one tool cat, thank you, earlier this evening. We have another tool cat that will be on the way at some point. We have one cinder spreader. We have six tractors, backhoes, that's not 12 total, but six between tractors and backhoes that we use, and four snow throwers in many shelves. And that exclamation point is a joke I have for Mr. Overton from years ago to talk about some of our parks' operation. It's still a 24/7 with the 12-hour shifts. As Sam has mentioned, our shifts do differ from those in Public Works where our equipment operators will typically begin at 4:00 a.m. and our hand shovellers at 6:00 a.m. And depending on what that storm's doing, we may have what we call a day shift and a 9:00 a.m. Just really depends on what the accumulation and/or ice situation resembles. We do perform a 2:00 to a 3:00 a.m. hauling, when there is the downtown hauling operation that occurs, and for Heritage Square. The priorities of our routes have been pre-identified, and they are in an order. There's over 300 assignments that parks does manage. There's parking lots of city-owned buildings. There's 63 parking lots. There are all the city-owned sidewalks and/or the hard surface of our foots, of our urban trail system. So that'd be the concrete or asphalt sections. There's Heritage Square, which is delicate, and there's a lot of obstacles on the square. And we need to get that clear for any of the community and the business owners. There's the dedicated city alleys, majority of them downtown or in Townsite, and a few in Sunnyside. Then there's the later, the courtesy berm service. And while that's going on, there's still, as Sam mentioned, those mop-ups, we call them, when there's the freeze thaw, the ice conditions, the what-have-you. Later, what's kind of more in our secondary routes, once we can get those priorities accomplished, would be the entrances to foots. So if you're familiar, when there's an aggregate foots, a lot of times there might be the approach, and that will be concrete. So we attempt to clear those, and that berm may have been created from the street plowing on those. Then there's the parking lots within our park locations, because we want to get those clear, too. And then there's some of those finer touches, the stairways, the walkways, maybe benches downtown, skate tracks, skate parks if we can get to them, and the BMX track within our city parks. You know, some unique things we've been doing the last couple of seasons, and we've had some great success. We know what the expectations are, and we know how to manage those within and when we begin our operation and when we pull certain triggers on things, and how to operate in those shifts and with safety always in mind and with efficiencies as much as possible. Working with streets on when to start going out and hitting those courtesy berm locations that have been pre-approved. This has been our most valuable tool, honestly, in addition to just regular communication. It's a snow app that park staff, along with GIS staff, created in 2019. It gives us live, immediate data. We know exactly what assignments are complete and what is not complete. And if you're an operator or even a hand shoveler, and you're walking by, that tablet with you pings you to let you know maybe an assignment is not complete. It's been amazing. Or we can see where our coworkers are struggling, and we can send a different crew over to help them out and get it done quicker. It's truly been amazing. We have a couple individuals that love to view it as like kind of that command central. Post-storm operations, we've alluded to a little bit of it. I'm going to hand it back to Sam. That's one of my favorite photos of downtown at probably the 2:00 a.m. hour.
Yeah, we've got to give credit to Director Overton over here, as he was the photographer on this particular scene. But yeah, so when we get to that point where we start getting overloaded or inundated with snow, we've got to get back out there and clean that up. And we'll do that in many areas. We'll usually start in the downtown area. You're going to see it again on Butler. We also wind up in several of the communities where we see heavy inundation in one side of the street that sees a lot more shade than the other side. And we've got to get out there and try and support that as much as possible and split that up and get it hauled out of there. So it's an effort all in itself, and we are running out of space to store that snow. You'd think it'd be easy enough to find an open location, but it's one of those pieces that we have to constantly work through the process on. You also see here, we've got snow removal on the separated bike lanes. Again, it's going to be the same thing, as it'll be snow blown out of the bike lanes. We're going to have to capture that somehow, so it takes additional resources to capture that snow as it can't just be pushed off to the side. Same thing with cul-de-sacs. You're going to see that our policy is to stack it in the center. And as we can, we'll work our way back into that community if need be, and we'll get that hauled out of those cul-de-sacs, understanding that they do cause some inundation. However, it does allow for access without completely inundating all the driveways in those areas. One of the other pieces in here, and one of the supervisors for it, is signage. Signage is huge, and yeah, believe it or not, they get hit in the wintertime. They get pushed over in snowberms, cars slide off the road and hit them. Many of them have to be repaired within a timely manner. Some of them have to be repaired within an hour, two hours. Stop signs can't be down overnight. So that's one of those pieces, that sometimes you have to take a snow operator and figure out, how do we get that stop sign back up? Or we have some sort of weird outage with the signal. We've got to get a crew back out there to still continue some of our daily maintenance operations in addition to working on these snow pieces. So. Prolonged ice control and snow trouble spots, those are one of those pieces, especially hills. You see it on Forest Hill where it gets closed. Why? Because it is a continual issue. There's no sun that hits that hill very well in the wintertime, and it is just dangerous to have people on there until we can get it cleared and opened up, and we know that we have the ice under control in that area. And then it's right back into sweeping cinders. When you use all those cinders, especially in the hills, the best thing we can do is get those picked up after the storm to help reduce any kind of slippage, if you will, and get those out of the way for people to travel, whether it be bicycle or by vehicle or even by foot. Those are key items as we look at snow. So as the storm ramps down, these guys don't go home and go to bed. They'd love to, but they've got a good week ahead of them just to get cleaned up from a single event.
That's yours.
I was just trying to see if she'd take it. This one here is the most important one, and we hit on it a little bit earlier, is that public assistance. If we can get people to manage those expectations of when they need to go to the store, when do you actually need to travel? Pick your moments. If you open up the curtains in the morning and you have a remote option to work from home, that might be a great day to utilize that remote option. Same thing, if you were just going to go down to the gas station because you wanted to get a Big Gulp, I think they're still out there, maybe you wait a couple hours and let the trucks get out there and do their job. The more congestion that we have on the road, the slower it makes these operations. So if we can get the roads cleared out, the better off we are. We've got many of the areas, especially downtown, there's no room to pass one of those snow plows when they're passing down there. I know several of you had the opportunity to ride in our snow plows last year. Visibility seems like it would be awesome. It is not. It is less than awesome. So it's one of those pieces that if you can stay off the roadways, give them a little time to get them cleared out, that's the best possible thing you can do for us, and provide some extra distance. We had this talk today. This is going to be, you know, our first big, if it comes to fruition, this will be our biggest storm this year so far. But it's also our first storm. And the one thing everybody forgets is their stopping distance. It's the one reminder, we want to get out there, spread the word. If you've got a friend, remind them. Give it a little extra distance when you're worried about stopping or coming up to a street light or whatever it might be, because the odds of you sliding or skidding are going to increase. But this first one is always a really good wake-up call for everybody, but unfortunately, it does come with some damage sometimes. Parking ordinance, as of today. So we're going to start seeing that be an issue moving forward. Usually, there's some sort of a buffer window where people can go, oh, yeah, I've got to start parking in my driveway. However, with this storm on the heels of this ordinance, I hope that people are watching and find better parking solutions moving forward. That parking ordinance is from midnight to 7:00 a.m., no parking on city streets. And then the downtown area, it's at 3:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., allowing for the businesses to be able to support or get support from patrons and not be completely affected by this. However, it's important to know, this also changes the way we do some of our snow operations and cleanup operations. We'd love to get in there at midnight to start hauling snow out, but we know we can't until the cars clear out. So we have to schedule it for 3:00 or later to get into that downtown area, so that way we can get that snow out of there. So it does shorten our window, because we need to be out of there before we start seeing that influx of people trying to get to work at 7:00. So it puts them on a really tight time window in a really stressful environment. We still have some of these on here because there are impacts, so like museum flood area. That's on here because not a lot has changed there. The recommendation is to keep your mitigation in place, and yet that does affect the way we do snow operations in there. And we're going to stick with the same setup that we've used over the last couple of years until we have some better solutions moving forward. And again, if there's questions, you can always go to our website. It has been revamped. I want to give a huge thanks to Bailey, who's done a phenomenal job of getting that information updated on there and working with Sarah and her team to make sure we can get as much information out there as possible. Same thing with our winter ordinance that went out earlier this week in a public release, as well as our snow operations that went out in a public release. So that public information piece is key for us, so people understand what to expect in these times. With that, we'll leave it with a really good picture here of one of our motor graders moving around out there in a, you know, somewhat small storm, I'll call it. And if you've got questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, Sam and Amy. Any questions? Councilmember House.
Thank you both. Not a question, just a comment. I mean, thank you so much for the work that you guys are doing to clear our streets and take care of us in the winter. I mean, it's really, it's impressive to see the amount of thought and consideration and effort that goes into this process, and certainly to see just the demand that this is for your teams. Understanding that, you know, you're taking into consideration the businesses and the lives of our community members and working around that while also meeting that need, I think is really significant. So I just wanted to say thank you all for being part of that.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, Amy, supervisors, thank you all so much for being here this late and your service to our community. I know you all don't make many appearances here, so I appreciate you taking the time this evening to sit through our meeting and witness our work a little bit. But I did get to do a ride-along last year, and I got to appreciate some of the work you all do. So thank you all for your leadership and your efforts to keep our community moving, right? I really do respect and appreciate your work. You know, I do have a couple comments. Some of them are kind of questions, Sam and Amy, so you can kind of address them. But I may as well go through the list and let you address them. And I really want us to look through a lens of equity in our snow operations. I understand that, you know, there's a lot of moving cars that we're trying to keep moving. But often, you know, sidewalks along our higher priority travel routes don't get cleared and remain full of cinders into the spring, into the summer even. And so I'm wondering, you know, if the team can really look at maybe flipping the priorities a little bit further. I'm glad, I'm really glad to hear the progress on addressing bike lanes and pedestrian avenues. But just thinking of some of those corridors, I've seen so many people walking throughout the winter in the mud, in the snow, in the wet, and it's not a pretty sight, and I really feel for them, especially those that are trying to get to work or get home, and they're all wet, right? So, you know, through the lens of equity, obviously, this council's really talked about changing our priorities of how we move people in our engineering. The big shift, the AT&amp;P goals that were outlined earlier, I mean, there's a big goal in the big shift that Martin spoke to earlier. But you all play a critical role in all that and making that possible. Because if you don't clear the roads, they will not come. They will not walk. You know, only those that absolutely must will. So, you know, if we clear them, they will walk, right? But currently, I do appreciate, you know, and I'm looking at Scott, because I know you've shared that, you know, the numbers are not necessarily there to back what I'm saying. But I do believe if we start clearing and really doing that with a priority, the numbers might better reflect and really start working towards that big shift. So it's like, what comes first, right? The bike lanes, the bike pilots. And I'm just kind of saying this for the supervisors more than anyone else. I want to recognize that those are a pain, a big pain. And I hear the concern loud and clear, and I want to know, I feel for that. I recognize that that might have been a mistake, and that's one that the city council's looking to correct. That is not efficient and not a good use of your time, although I do see value in that work. But stick with it, keep doing it, and I think we'll fix it in the years to come, hopefully sooner than later, and make it a lot more of an efficient process. And Sam, thank you for all your support and conversations about how to do that. Okay, I'm almost done. Lastly, Sam, you spoke about hoping that people were tuning in currently to hear your message. I don't think that's the case. There might be a handful of people tuning in. But, you know, to the points you were making about communication and outreach, you know, I'm going to say, a video, right? A quality short video, talking about best practices. I can help you. We can do it together like we did last time, but Sarah and the team have money to make videos. They might not have the time or capacity, but they got the money. But best practices and winter readiness in terms of like, when's the best time to shop? shop, how the best, like everything you were saying, a quality short video, I think could really reach the masses, really much better than speaking here tonight. But I just wanna add that to your thoughts, but great presentation. Good luck this winter. Glad we got you another tool, Amy, earlier today, and thank you, Mayor and Council.
Time for the big heart. Yeah, I was hoping it would sing "Let It Snow." No, it's much gratitude, you know, it's the entire team Flagstaff, you know, we have streets, we have pros, but we also have, let me see, we have our winter, there's a reason why Flagstaff is designated as Arizona's winter wonderland, and we have, I think, we have a winter recreation map that was developed by our Discover Flagstaff team. Of course, this is in partnership with the county, because I remember when I worked for the county, when I covered the phones, often asked question are, where can we play? Where can we park? So just kinda to relieve the Bailey, the awesome Bailey from calls, there's the snowplay hotline for the snowplay map and the closures, conditions, and where are the designated snowplay areas, because that's the messaging we want our residents and visitors know, where they could play responsibly, not on, not on 180, not on major roadways. I also do wanna recognize that, because I remember Vice Mayor Sweden, her son plowed shoveling snow last year, and I think it's also a partnership with Downtown Business Alliance, and some of our business owners downtown and across the city, and helping clear sidewalks, and also just making it safe for everyone, especially for our staff and our customers. Also, I remember also last year, I saw our library staff, just kinda like, all hands on deck for Team Flagstaff and our community partners when it comes to snow operations, so that's why, be grateful hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just add real quick, I do appreciate all of your hard work. Go Team Flagstaff. And for the downtown, just a huge thank you from the business community. I've spent a lot of years shoveling, and I see you working hard and trying to figure out where to put the snow, and without you, we wouldn't be able to open our doors, so thank you.
Yeah, one question. So how many hundreds of miles do we have of roadway that you all have to shovel?
Oh, for shoveling? It's like twice what we have for plowing, so I'll give you that.
Or plowing, plowing. Let's do plowing. Yeah.
So on the roadway plowing, it's over 700 lane miles of roadway that gets plowed.
Yeah, I think that message hits home a lot of the time when I speak to residents who get upset about the snowplow, it's like, they got 700 miles and how many staff to deal with? So, no, I think that's just, it's good public information for them to realize the level of the tasks that you all are charged to do and do extremely well, given the very difficult situation that Mother Nature can do on certain days. So, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Councilmember House.
I want to go on record that I wanna write the Bobcat Tool Cat Toolie Move Snow.
For the record, it's a two-seater, so we can get you in there.
And I have a 13-year-old you guys can use if you want to, anytime you wanna help with downtown. Yeah, I'll send him to you.
I do have one response to what Councilmember Shimoni was referencing. There is one silent partner in this that we've neglected to mention, and that is co-compliance in that group, because some of those sidewalks that don't get cleared of cinders, they're private, and so then we lean on those partners to go, whether if it's door-to-door, or to get that message out to help us with that piece of the puzzle. They're big in this too, so we need to make sure that we congratulate them also on all their efforts.
Excellent.
Amy has asked that we stop driving the motor grader on the footstool, so I'm working on that piece, and then we'll figure that out.
Well, yeah, thank you both.
Thank you all. All right, we are down to Gen item 13B, discussion on stormwater credit manual revisions. Ed's here, it's time to party.
Hoping to keep this one simple. So, yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, see if this presentation opens. There we go. Okay, I'm here today to talk about our stormwater credit manual, some very exciting stuff. Discussion on potential revisions. To give you an overview of why we're here today, the purpose is to review and revise that stormwater credit manual to provide better equity and opportunities to receive credits. We'll go over a view of the existing 2015 credit manual, because I'm sure you don't know it by heart, neither do I, and then I'll go over proposed staff revisions to that manual. Feedback, I don't know why it says from Water Commission, should be from City Council, apologize for that. Discussion and next steps. So a review of that 2015 credit manual that was put into effect by resolution, that's 2015-17. The existing 2015 credit manual is a revision of the original credit manual in 2006. The intent, so why do we have this? The intent of the credit manual is to provide incentives for the community to go above and beyond current code in stormwater by providing a credit to their stormwater rate. Credits are applied by our customer service staff with review by our stormwater staff. Credits are continual, so it's not a one-time benefit, it is a benefit through the life of that account. I'm gonna move through this quickly, these are just snapshots of this existing resolution, 2015-17, our existing 2015 credit manual. Just gonna go through the different types of credits we have, and then I'll go into our recommended revisions of that. So just going through our existing manual, our first section is for detention basins. There's two different credits. One is for a credit for detention basins that meet our current standard, so our current stormwater design manual, which was designed in 2009, for the attenuation of the 100-year storm. There's a 20% credit for that. There is a smaller credit for detention basins that are constructed with the previous stormwater design code from 1990 to 2000, that is a credit for 25-year storm detention of a credit of 9%. There is also low-impact development, LID, inactive rainwater harvesting credits for non-residential parcels, and we'll go into, and that is for the one-inch stormwater for the 100-year 24-hour storm for four and a half inches, and that's a 10% credit. Conservation easements, if you have a conservation easement that's of 10 acres of contiguous acre, 10 contiguous acres that has a stormwater component to it, so there's a channel or basin that was within that acreage, you can get a 10% credit. Also, if you have development and implementation of a structured educational program, so this is mostly for NEU, other colleges, schools, et cetera, nonprofits, that have a stormwater rate, if they have an active structured program that goes into the benefits of stormwater, they also get a 20%, up to a 20% credit. And then for residential development, there is a 10% credit if you have rainwater barrels, so that is, if you have up to, or more than two, sorry, more than two 50-gallon barrels, you can get a 10% credit. So that's just a very quick, just running through our existing resolution. And I'll go through some of the proposed revisions and why we recommend these revisions. The first one's for stormwater detention, this is an equity issue. So the fact that we have a 9% credit for past code doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Essentially, we're giving a credit for failing our current code, and then we have a 10% or 20% credit for developments that meet our current code. So essentially, we are providing a credit for newer developments and newer subdivisions while penalizing older parts of the city. So we recommend removing both of the credits that are there, the 9% and the 20%, and putting in a new credit of 10% for detention basins that go above and beyond our current code. So that's really the purpose of credit manuals throughout the U.S., is to go above and beyond. So we do recommend changing this to meet the intent of the credit manual, provide a benefit to new development, HOAs, et cetera, that meet, or exceed, or not meet, that exceed our current code. The other one that we'd like to change, or another section we'd like to change, is that residential water harvesting. We recommend changing that credit, or still 10% credit, recommend changing it from a minimum of two rain barrels, which is 100 gallons, to a minimum of 300 gallons, and this is still a very small portion of what you see coming off the roofs. But this change is intended to show a real reduction in runoff, so at least a solid portion, it'd probably be up 10% to 15% of an average roof, while still being attainable. We don't wanna make it so difficult that nobody will apply for this credit. Also, this stacks with what the water conservation section already provides, they have an incentive for rainwater harvesting, a one-time incentive for houses that have up to 1,000, I think it's 1,000 gallons, I'll have to check on that. So we can stack this, this can be a benefit both from the stormwater side, and then also from the water conservation side, so we can provide this in a way that provides a little bit more incentive to have residential water harvesting. The conservation easement, there's not that many acreage, there's not many parcels out there in the city limits that have 10 contiguous acres of undeveloped land at the moment. We think that's pretty onerous, that's pretty hard to get to, so we recommend reducing that limit, and at the moment, we're thinking two contiguous acres, very open to discussion on that, but we wanna make sure that there's some, that there are some property owners out there that can actually meet this recommendation, still a 10% credit. We don't recommend any changes to the structured educational program, I think that's a very good section within there, and we do recommend a new credit, and this would be for floodproofing. So this is something we're really kinda starting to push for, is floodproofing of primary structures. So this would be either wet or dry floodproofing. Wet means you intentionally allow water to flow through your crawl space, or your first floor of whatever it might be, so you have it in a way, those are those garages that are open, if you will, and then you have stairs that go up to your finished floor. So wet floodproofing, you're really just letting the water go through your property. Dry floodproofing is what most people think of as floodproofing, that's where you're putting in sealants around your doors, windows, you're making sure that your siding is waterproof, so you're not allowing any water into that primary residence. Either one's great, and we strongly support people who floodproof their property, so we do recommend a new credit for that in the tune of roughly 10%. Some additional comments, we recommend grandfathering in any current credited accounts, we don't wanna penalize anybody if they already have a credit, so leaving all current credits in place. And then also recommend leaving a credit in place if a parcel changes hands, so essentially if you have new account holders, not trying to have staff go out there and figure out if they still meet that within that parcel. That's pretty onerous on our side, on the staff's side, and we definitely, if someone's just moving into the city, we don't, they obviously don't know about this credit manual, so we don't want them to lose out on that just because they don't know about the opportunities that are out there. So leaving a credit in place throughout the life of that parcel. As a reminder, credits are per month and not a one-time benefit, so these are continuous benefit, and at the moment, the impacts to stormwater fund are negligible with our current credit manual, and we expect with a revision, it would still remain fairly negligible. We don't have that many people who actually have applied for credits. Some feedback, we did meet with Water Commission in September, they did generally agree with moving forward with a revision for the credit manual, they did have some comments and questions about providing a slightly more nuanced approach for these different sections, so essentially having staff look more closely at pervious versus impervious surfaces, what type of rain barrels, et cetera. Very good conversation. We ended up not really moving forward with any of those discussion points, just for the fact that we don't really have the staffing to go out there and provide engineering assessments at that type of level. So it's very good feedback, but it's feedback that we don't think that we can move forward with in that, in this time, if that makes sense. And as I promised, this will be short, or as short as I can make it, so I did run through that very quickly, but this is open for discussion and questions, and then we're hoping at the next work session to bring forward a resolution if this, if council decides to move forward with it.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions from council right now, Councilmember House?
Thank you so much for the presentation, Ed. One question that I did have was just on the point, on one of the slides, it mentioned the credit remaining in place when and if the property changed hands, and I'm just wondering, is there an assessment that's done in terms of whether or not those mitigations or what they receive the credit for, basically, is actually still in place, to avoid risking, basically, them receiving a credit but no longer actively or actually participating in what they were getting credit for, if that makes sense?
Yeah, it totally makes sense, and at the moment, I'd probably defer either Rick Tatter for Customer Service, or Water Conservation, I don't know if Aaron Young or Tamara are on here, and the reason I defer to Water Conservation is they actually have aides that check the rainwater harvesting portion from their side, so we usually kinda piggyback on their efforts, since stormwater does tend to be a lot more on the technical and engineering side, we don't have more than one inspector, and that inspector's usually working in construction and development review.
Aaron is on the line, if you wanna chime in?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Aaron Young, Water Resources Manager. And, yeah, our rainwater harvesting rebate is a one-time, so we'll go out and inspect that at the time that we issue the rebate, but in terms of following up or assisting maybe with the stormwater side, it is something that we think we can incorporate into the work that our summer water conservation staff are doing with enforcing our watering code, if that helps.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other question is just about how, I guess, how utilized this is? Are we seeing a lot of utilization of this, and with the recommended changes, do you anticipate the utilization going up, or is there any potential for decline or anything like that? I assume that with the revisions, the goal is to increase the utilization of these incentives, but I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on that.
I'll definitely defer to Rick and Customer Service on the current utilization. I will say, one of the reasons we put in this floodproofing section in here is we are hoping to address that a little bit more aggressively in the future. We still haven't worked out exactly what that looks like, but we are hoping as a stormwater section, as a city, to provide a little bit more education, at a minimum, education on floodproofing, and that's really come about mostly through some of those post-fire events. You know, sandbags and barrier can only do so much, at a certain point, we really wanna work at longer-term mitigations, and some of that's obviously our capital improvement on the public side, but on the private side, there is an opportunity to protect your own property at a more grassroots level, if that makes sense, and this is one avenue at trying to provide that education and provide a benefit, provide an incentive, even though it's small, but provide an incentive to work towards that. So our hope is, yes, to have a little bit of an uptick in the use of this credit manual.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ed. A quick question, are there other strategies that should be considered that you have seen other communities to be added? other communities to be added to this incentive?
That's a great question. What is, what's been presented here before, so the 2006 credit manual, the 2015 ones, those were essentially structured at a high level. I'm not saying the actual details, but the high level of what types of pots of incentives and areas from other communities. Are there other strategies? I'm sure there are. I'm sure we're, you know, just one small little section here. Have I looked into them? I will be totally honest, I have not spent much time looking at other credit manuals. Most of them are just as hard to find as ours is. I mean, unless you're Googling it, it's buried pretty deep. Not by intention, but just due to the fact that it tends to be layered, you know, in the rate discussion and in other sections. So it's definitely, we're something we're open to, that's why we're here for discussion. But I don't know of anything large that is not included in this credit manual, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
A question. So how much does it cost for like major developments to apply to get the credit?
To my knowledge, the application is about two pages long, and it's a checklist. So it should not cost, to actually apply, it should not cost you anything. Now, to make sure that you have enough background information that we can verify that you have what's needed, it really depends on what credit you're applying for. So for example, the rainwater harvesting, it's easy, we can go out there, we can take a look at it. It should cost the applicant nothing. For something like detention basins, it may cost something if you don't already have your drainage study from whenever that development was created. The drainage study itself should have the information that we need to make a decision. So you have a drainage study as part of your development, you should be able to hand that over to Customer Service and Stormwater. We should be able to review that and have a determination.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't know how labor-intensive or we're charging new developments or something and big fee for the, for us to assess to get a credit that, you know, maybe it's not utilized because of certain fees associated or a new report they have to do. So thank you for that info. Anything else? Councilmember McCarthy?
I'll just say I'm supportive of the changes that you've presented.
Likewise. Can we get a third? So we move on.
I'm supportive.
All right, direction met.
Thank you.
Get that one done.
I'll see you guys next week.
All right, thanks, Ed. That brings us down to Agenda Item 13C, Discussion of Potential Holiday Display Policy.
Mayor and Council, Sterling Solomon, your City Attorney. As you are aware, we have had the thought of putting together a holiday display policy for some time for the display of items that during the holiday season are inclusive and allow the celebration of light, hope, joy, and love. That is something that we have before you for discussion tonight. We have had interest from several in the community, specifically from the Jewish community, that they wanted to display a menorah. That is something you can discuss tonight. That would be something that could be done, as long as it's inclusive of, you know, other faiths and others that want to display things that encourage that faith, hope, light, and love. You can go ahead and discuss what you would like to do with the policy on that. I can bring a resolution back to you on the 15th, but I'm sure each of the rabbis would like to address you as well. As you see, they've provided you, at least Rabbi Wolfman has provided you with the request from last year, and we appreciate their presence here. But the time is yours, Council, to discuss what you would like to direct.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with our rabbi guests, Rabbi Shpira, if you want to come up.
Esteemed Mayor, DC Vice Mayor Sweet, and members of council, and all the staff that are here tonight, it's great to see you all. And I know it's been a long meeting, so I appreciate your time. In the synagogue, it's well-known that many times when the rabbi speaks, everyone falls asleep. So there was one synagogue, one shabbat in services, and one guy starts snoring in the front aisle. So one of the other members comes over to him, and he shakes him, and he says, "Excuse me, you're disturbing all of us." And he says, "Listen, I pay membership here like all of you, and I could do what I want." He says, "I agree, but you're keeping us all up and awake, and we're all trying to sleep." So I appreciate that I only have three minutes, and I hope not to bore you. I know I have met most of you here tonight, but I would like to share a little bit about myself. My wife and I are the co-directors of Chabat HaFlagstaff and the Molly Bling Jewish Community Center. We moved here 16 years ago with a dream to give the Flagstaff Jewish community an open and welcoming center they could call their own, and to be welcoming of all people, no matter their faith, culture, and lifestyle. I am so grateful to live in Flagstaff, which is such a diverse, welcoming, friendly, and inclusive community. We believe that this positivity begins from the top, from the city. We appreciate the partnership we have had with the city over the past 16 years. For many years, we asked the city if we could put up a menorah outside City Hall during the eight days of Hanukkah. However, it's always been rejected. The City of Flagstaff does a wonderful job putting up decorations throughout Flagstaff during the holiday season. However, the festive times don't include the Jewish community, and the current decorations don't represent inclusivity the City of Flagstaff stands for. All we are asking is to feel a little bit more included in the holiday season. It's important to be aware of the Supreme Court ruling in favor of displaying the menorah on state and city-owned property in 1989. I would also just like to add that the message of the menorah, I think it's, I know there may, there's always a fear of, you know, you know, what may come if, you know, when you open it up, but I think it's important, just from the perspective of the Jewish community, is that the menorah, the message of the menorah is very, it's a universal message. It's, it's not a message of pushing religion down someone else's throat. It is a message of light over darkness. It's the universal message of freedom over oppression, and the message that love will over-trump over hate. And that's the message we always speak about over Hanukkah. It's the message of the menorah universally. It's, it goes back to the beginning, the first story of the menorah, how light will always dispel darkness. So we think it's reasonable to ask that there should be a public menorah outside City Hall during Hanukkah.
Thank you, Rabbi. Councilmember Shmuni?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Rabbi Dov, thank you for being here this late and for all you do in our community. My understanding is that there are menorahs up at city and state government buildings all across the Southwest. Are you familiar with those, and can you speak to some of those examples?
Yes. So if I could just answer, just first some personal stories and then my own research in this region. I grew up in Miami Beach, Florida, and we, there were city menorah lightings, public menorah lightings on city property throughout the state of Florida that I personally remember being a part of, a lot of them in the city of Miami Beach. I spent a year in Budapest, Hungary, where there were public menorah lightings by the, by, on city properties. It was also at the parliament and so on. Four years in France, and every year, I studied four years outside of Paris in a city called Brnois, and every year, we would go to Paris for the grand menorah lighting on Hanukkah right by the Eiffel Tower. And in DC, you have the menorah, the annual menorah lighting right outside opposite the White House, which is attended by dignitaries every year. And that's just, I mean, two years in New York, and wherever you go, there's public menorahs by every major circle, you know, traffic circle and city properties and throughout Manhattan and throughout the state. But more locally, I did research just to find out, you know, what is happening in Arizona, what is happening in states around, and this is just a sample. The Arizona State Capitol has a, has a, has a public menorah every year for over 30 years. The City of Chandler for over five years, City of Glendale over 10 years, City of Tucson since 1984, every year. The City of Santa Fe, New Mexico, 23 years of public menorah. City of Park City, Utah, over seven years. City of Vail, Colorado, 15 years. City of Aspen, Colorado, over 10 years, and the City of Breckenridge, Colorado, 15 years. And we are hoping Flagstaff can do the same.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rabbi Wolfman?
And while Rabbi Wolfman comes up, if I may, council, obviously, that's something that we could draft a policy for. I think the key is that there be some sort of policy in place, which has been the recommendation all along, so thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, city officials. My name is Rabbi Shneir Wolfman. I'm the Associate Rabbi at the Molly Bling Jewish Community Center. I want to express my tremendous gratitude for all that you do, all the hard work you do and put in for the City of Flagstaff. I know I'm very grateful personally, and our community is very thankful. So last year, the Jewish Community Center of Flagstaff officially put in a request by the city to display a public menorah on City Hall's lawn adjacent to Route 66, right near the Christmas tree. We placed this request because we heard from many community members that they feel like outsiders during the holiday season. They would say, "The City of Flagstaff is beautiful, there's so much, there's a lot of holiday displays and lights and Christmas trees, but there is no Jewish, Jewish representation." Last October, we reached out to the city manager and the city clerk, and Stacy Salzberg responded to us in a very nice email saying that, "The city will consider a policy for the display of many symbols of cultural and religious importance, signifying hope, light, peace, and belonging, including the menorah at City Hall next year." So that means that we would have, hopefully, next year, we'll have a menorah displayed in front of City Hall, people driving by could see, and if they're Jewish, they'll feel proud and also be part of the festivities. I just wanted to say, I was here for the past three hours, and I see the City of Flagstaff is a really shining example for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And every time you drive by City Hall on Route 66, you see the flagpole, it either represent, it either has a Native American flag, it'll have a flag representing the African-American community, or a pride flag during the month of June. So the Jewish people don't have a flag, per se, but we do have a holiday symbol which represents hope and love, and that's the Hanukkah menorah. So in light of Flagstaff's strong commitment to diversity and inclusion, we are hopeful that this year, the city will allow the Jewish community to display a menorah on City Hall's, on City Hall's lawn for the whole eight days of Hanukkah. And it's especially pertinent during these times when antisemitic rhetoric is on the rise. I think the best way, or one of the best ways that the city could show unified support to the Jewish community is by having a holiday display, a Jewish holiday display, which is the menorah. And I would say, in summary, the menorah, the menorah display will create a sense of affinity and belonging to the Jewish citizens of Flagstaff, and will definitely enhance the harmony amongst the many diverse groups that call Flagstaff home. Thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rabbi Wolfman. Any questions from council? I'm not seeing any at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, everything that was just stated by the rabbi is exactly how we remember it. We want to extend our appreciation to the Jewish community for allowing us a year to try to get this policy in front of you and formalize this arrangement. We're excited for it to happen. We're excited to show the inclusivity in these holiday displays and all the wonderful things that have been described. So, you know, I really appreciate the patience that's been exercised and the fact that we're able to have this discussion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. City Attorney, where you want?
Mayor and Council, if so directed, a resolution could be presented to you on November 15th, which is current, there's a placeholder currently there for that, excuse me. And at that time, you could approve that resolution, which would become effective immediately. I believe the Hanukkah holiday begins on December 18th this year, if I am correct, and it would be well, more than 30 days in advance, plenty of time for that to be displayed, as well as any other inclusive symbols of peace, freedom, hope, love, and joy. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here, because I enthusiastically support this move by us and appreciate the work and your patience with getting a proper policy in order. And I definitely would like to move forward with it. I know we've discussed previously, they're resembling to other cities that have had Supreme Court cases that have been victorious on behalf of the city and modeling it in that manner is best route, and all of the finer details of, it would need to be donated or done by the city, set up by the city, as opposed to, you know, volunteers bringing it on or taking it off, then I'm fully supportive of that move. So, Councilmember Shmuni?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I'll say thank you to both of you for spending the night with us and for all you do in our community. I am so proud of Flagstaff for being inclusive and accepting of all people, regardless of our differences. We have really set, we've really been a leader across the state and across the nation, and I know that people move here because of how inclusive we are. So I have a feeling where this council is going to land on this, and I just want to say thank you to all the leadership that we have at this table and then also amongst city leadership. So thank you for being inclusive. I have felt like an outsider here for 17 years, and I have experienced a lot of negativity towards me because of my faith. And it has not been, you know, not pleasant, I'm not going to go into that. But I think that we're going to correct something big tonight, and on the 15th of November with direction from council. So I fully support the resolution, policy that will come back to us on November 15th, and look forward to that in celebrating light, joy, and love with all of you this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmuni. Councilmember House, and then Councilmember Solis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for being here this evening and for presenting this. I'm also in support, and just briefly wanted to touch on, you know, one of the things that was shared in the conversation was the message of the menorah. I think that's a really important one, especially given our current climate. I'll leave it at that, but I think that that message of light and peace and justice is a very important one for us to share in, and so I thank you for bringing that forward.
Good, and Councilmember Solis?
May I share grateful hearts, rabbis?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so I would, I am in total support of a holiday policy, holiday display policy, especially when, when the universal message is about toward peace, joy, compassion, justice, and light, and harmony, and unity in diversity.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here, and I too support this moving forward, and what a beautiful way to end our evening. So thank you.
Yes. Well said. All right, well, with that, we do have proper direction. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, we absolutely have proper direction, and I want to thank the rabbis for coming tonight and talking about light and peace and justice. I mentioned that I've been to Israel a couple times and really enjoyed it, the culture of it, and learning all about it. Here comes the however statement. I don't think that it's appropriate for the government to unnecessarily get entangled in religion. And I'm not picking on the Jewish religion by any means. I, that would apply to, you know, anything from the Christian religion, the Muslim religion, or Zoroastrianism, whatever. I think that the government should stay out of the business of even looking like they're promoting a given religion. And I realize some of the limitations of this, it has to be in the context of one of many religions. But I personally, and I know I'm a very small minority on this, I don't think that we should get entangled in religious issues in general. And please don't think I'm picking on the Jewish religion, absolutely not. I would say the exact same thing if someone wanted to put a crucifix up on our lawn or whatever religious symbol. It's just inappropriate, in my opinion. And I realize that I'm a very small minority, but I accept that. I think it's my responsibility to say how I feel, if that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
And if I, if I may follow up, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify the statement you made, the dire- direction, and I think I understood this, was from council to develop a policy for the city of Flagstaff to erect the display of holiday symbols and such, of peace, light, love, hope, and joy.
That is correct.
I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure before I brought that resolution.
I'm seeing nodding heads and thumbs ups.
Inclusive in nature.
Yes. We're doing this through a policy, not just doing it. So let's make sure we get that, yeah, policy drafted, and we'll be able to be, have a lot more inclusive holiday season this year. All right. With that, it is past 9:30, so would have to take a motion for us to continue. Otherwise, I'm going to be adjourning.
Mayor, I'll move that we finish our meeting and continue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Shemoni, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. All those in favor? Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, I didn't catch all that. Maybe there's too many.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We shall continue, then. No public participation at this point, so we're moving on to the to-from section. I'll start at this end with Councilmember Soss.
Happy 29th birthday to my older son. He's watching. And I missed his call a few times, well, because I'm here. Thank you.
Councilmember Soss?
I'm good tonight. It can wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
I'm good tonight. Vice Mayor?
Great meeting. A quick reminder, Friday is Art Walk Downtown.
All right, council, I'm going to try to keep this quick, but I do have a couple things. I'm so sorry. Last week, we had the Arizona Storytellers Presents Finding a Home, and that was an amazing event. I think Councilmember House was there, and I'm so sorry to see your thunder. I'll leave it at that. Habitat had their open house last week, and I saw most of you there. That was incredible. And my little video with Hadessa from Rooftop has gone viral and has received over 100,000 reactions or reach across the globe. It's incredible. Never had anything like that. I know, Mayor, you do quite often, though. 50 Years Celebration for CCCNY, Coconial County, Coconial Children, was it, Coconial County Children and Youth. Thank you. I had their 50th celebration. That was a wonderful event. Saw most of you there. I went and met with Darrell, Mark's class, at Flag High yesterday, and had a great discussion with a wonderful group of high schoolers who are doing a tour of City Hall with me tomorrow. And city manager will be joining us. Looking forward to that. Coconial County Recovery Court graduation is tomorrow at noon, and I hope some of you will be attending that, because I will not. I'll be at the Indigenous Commission. I'm meeting with Duffy from the Townsite Community Land Trust this Friday to talk about potential land trust at the Thorpe Parque Annex and see if there's any room for partnership. Friday, the 2022 firefighter, firefighting department recruit graduation is occurring here at City Hall. And congrats to all the graduates that went through that program. Saturday, we have NAU's Homecoming, and I plan to be on a bicycle for that with my boombox. So that'll be great, and hope to see some of you there. Family Food Center is celebrating 30 years of hot food this Saturday as well. And then on Election Day, next Tuesday, Mountain Mine is offering free service all day. So, big shout out to Mountain Mine, and best of luck to all those in that election. Looking forward to seeing those results. And lastly, you know, Councilmember McCarthy and Mayor Deasy, I just want to express genuine, sincere appreciation for, for the respect you showed earlier and the conversation we had. I know that was heated and got intense, but really appreciate and respect everyone at this dais and the way that was handled. And allowing me to lead that really means a lot to me. So thank you both. Great meeting today. Good work, Team Flag. Have a great night.
Councilmember House?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
I did forget one thing that you reminded me. I'm actually playing with my father-in-law on First Friday Art Walk, mandolin and guitar, at Fire on the Mountain. So if you want to see Mayor and the cowboy, it's going to be fun. There's Disney songs to Bob Marley. Anyways, have a good night, everyone.